All right, it is six o'clock, twenty four May, two thousand and twenty-two. Go ahead and call us in council meeting to order. So, item one, roll call vote or roll call attendance?
Council agency authority members Sullivan?
Here.
Stockton?
Here.
Richie?
Here.
Silva?
Here.
Wiley?
Here.
Vice Mayor Vice Chair Roberts?
Here.
Mayor Chair Roulet.
Move on to item number two, moment of silence, followed by pledge of allegiance. Just go ahead and stand with me for a moment of silence. Councilmember Richie, do you like the lead, pledge of allegiance?
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public, to which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, that governeth the justice of all.
All right, item number three, approval of the agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. Just a couple of notes for tonight's agenda, because it is a rather large agenda. Item number nine C, as in Charlie, is a routine business item that we should have had on consent. So I'd like to move that to consent calendar, item six F. So that would be included as part of your consent approval tonight. And then item six D, as in David, for our fee schedule. We have a minor amendment in the resolution that we've provided to you and is on the dais with just a correction to the fee amount. So with that, that would conclude the amendments to the agenda for the consent calendar. And that is all we have tonight. We do have some other items that are on business or public hearing tonight that the presenters will talk about when those items come up before you.
Okay. Like may the motion prove the agenda?
A second.
All right, roll call. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All against say nay. Unanimous. Move on to item four, approval of minutes of regular meeting May tenth. That is going to be continued to the next scheduled council meeting. And moving on to item number five, a National Public Works Week presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, council. Last week was National Public Works Week, and tonight I'd like to take a brief moment considering the agenda and discuss your public works team and their efforts to make the city of Vacaville a special place to live. To begin, public works is comprised of four main components. Engineering services, which performs the project engineering, construction, inspection, land development, and regulatory compliance. Traffic engineering, which includes the engineering and management of the city's traffic system. Maintenance, which maintains and repairs the city's infrastructure. And administration, which coordinates the activities of those three units toward a unified effort in meeting the city council's goals. All four units are bound together by our mission statement, service is our business. Public Works is literally responsible for laying the foundations of much of the city, either through contract or by our direct staff resources. I like this graphic on the right because it's exactly that. Public Works is both under our feet, above our heads, and in this very room tonight. On the left, you can see the vastness of our infrastructure and responsibility. Thousands of streetlights, hundreds of miles of roadway sewer and water pipe, thousands of miles of open space, and hundreds of acres of parkland. It's quite an inventory to be response before. The theme of National Public Works Week this this year is ready and resilient, which exemplifies the public works aptitude for responding to emergencies and for being out there when things just stop working. To that end, like the postal service, the weather doesn't deter us. Fire, flood, high wind event, public works responds. Water main break, sewer break, traffic accident that takes down a light pole or a street signal, public works is out there. In summary, that's your public works team, your City of Vacaville public works team, ready and resilient. I'd like to conclude very quickly by saying to the Vice Mayor and all of council, from everyone in public works, we thank you for your support. We could not do our jobs without it. Thank you.
At that, we do have a proclamation for National Public Works Week. Whereas National Public Works Week is a celebration of men and women across the United States who provide and maintain the public infrastructure and services collectively known as public works. The theme of this year's sixty-second annual National Public Works Week is ready and resilient. Whereas it is in the interest of the public, for citizens and civic leaders, to better understand the integral role that public infrastructure plays in protecting the environment, improving public health and safety, contributing to the economic vitality, and enhancing the overall well-being of every community. Whereas the supportive understanding informed citizenry is vital to efficient operation of public work system, programs such as water, sewer, streets, parks, public buildings, mass transportation, recycling, and solid waste, solid waste collection. Whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are dependent upon the efforts and skill of the qualified public works professionals who serve our citizens with dedication and commitment to their communities. Now therefore be resolved, Ron Roulet, Mayor of the City of Vacaville, on behalf of the Vacaville City Council, do hereby proclaim May fifteenth through twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two, as National Public Works Week in the City of Vacaville, and commend the city's public work staff for the excellent service they provide every day to ensure the health, safety, comfort, and quality of life of the residents of Vacaville. All right, moving on to item six A, consent calendar. Would anybody from the public like to deploy items from the consent calendar? Moving on to the council, anybody from the council like to deploy items from consent calendar? Can we go to roll call vote for approval of the consent calendar?
I make a motion to approve it as amended with the other items added.
A second.
All right, roll call vote for consent? Oh, yeah, not doing roll call vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say nay. unanimous approval? Sorry, bringing the habit to the Zoom, Zoom Live the last two years. And moving on to item seven, business from the, from the floor. If anybody from the public would like to address the council, issues that are not currently on the agenda that are within the council's subject matter, please approach the mic. All right, good. Close item number seven. Item, item number eight, public hearings. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the city council. This first public hearing before you tonight is a resolution of the city council authorizing the levy and collection of assessments within the downtown Vacaville Business Improvement District. Tim Patton, our Economic Development Manager, is here with a brief presentation for the council.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor and council members. According to the Park and Business Improvement Area Law of nineteen eighty-nine, the city must renew its Business Improvement District bid ordinance on an annual basis. To initiate this process, a resolution of intention was prepared per the noticing requirements of the law. The purpose of the resolution is to announce the city's intention to renew the bid and levy the assessment, outline the activities and services to be funded by the assessment, and set the date for a formal hearing for tonight. A notice advertising the public hearing was placed in the Vacaville Reporter on May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Additionally, copies of the resolution of intention were mailed through the United States Postal Service on May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, to all businesses who pay assessment fees in downtown Vacaville. Tonight, the city council is being asked to consider a resolution confirming the annual levy and to collect of assessments within the downtown Vacaville Improvement District, otherwise known as downtown Vacaville, for two thousand and twenty-two. Please note that there is a revised resolution as part of tonight's action, and it is this revised resolution that staff seeks council approval. Additionally, staff is asking council to approve the management district plan and authorize the city manager to execute the management agreement and provide a fee for service in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars. For this evening's renewal, Pastor Dean Roberts, President of the Downtown Vacaville Board of Directors, will present the newly developed two thousand and twenty-two annual district plan, which has been drafted in alignment with the city's efforts to improve the downtown, and will briefly discuss a few tasks in the management agreement, which includes assisting the city in implementing the economic development activities related in the city council strategic plan, the COVID recovery strategy, and the downtown specific plan. This evening's recommendation by simple motion is threefold. One, approve the downtown Vacaville two thousand and twenty-two annual district plan. Second, adopt the revised subject resolution. Three, approve and authorize the city manager to execute the management agreement between the city and downtown Vacaville, and approve a fee for service in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars. At this point, I would like to turn over to the presentation to Pastor Dean Roberts, who is the head of the Board of Directors, for a brief presentation.
Man, I speak in front of people all the time, you guys make me nervous. Vice Mayor and city council, it's my pleasure to bring this report on behalf of the downtown Vacaville Business Improvement District. The downtown bid currently represents over six hundred members, businesses across many industries. Its mission is to work in close collaboration with its community stakeholders and city leaders to market, promote, and to advance economic retail development in town town Vacaville. The next one. What we advocate for is maintenance, and I'm not going to go down all of them, but maintenance, the parking and transportation, security, human services, and additional improvements to downtown, such as lighting and different aesthetic things. Need to give part of our responsibility is to give you a financial summary for two thousand and twenty-one, and so the next slide, Tim. So we have the expenses there, kind of made a graph for you, broken out with payroll, advertising, operations, facilities, programs, and events for our fiscal year, January through December of two thousand and twenty-one, that totaled two hundred and thirty-eight thousand six hundred dollars. And then our sources of income. Next slide. So we had events in two thousand and twenty-one, our programs, bid fees collected, the city contract, that totaled two hundred and fifty-five thousand, and that's without the additional seventy-five thousand that we received from the city and COVID relief funds and donations. So I wanted to let you know about the supplemental funding on, in addition to our annual fifty-five thousand dollar fee for service contract allotment approved in February of two thousand and twenty-one, the Vacaville City Council approved an additional seventy-five thousand on June fifth to help offset the losses incurred due to COVID-nineteen and to help launch additional economic recovery programs. Funds were earmarked to be spent in four categories. The first category was, is the branded downtown gift card program. And so the allocation amount was thirty thousand three twenty-five, spent to date, ten thousand four hundred and five, then budgeted for two thousand and twenty-two, thirteen thousand four twenty, and budgeted for two thousand and twenty-three, six thousand five hundred. Unfortunately, with the delays on things being shipped and printing and everything, we got the cards after the expected launch date, and so that was nothing that we could do at that point, but that program is getting ready to launch, and it's going to be a really great thing, especially through the holidays. Our second category is increased advertising and promotion. Allocation of twenty-two thousand nine hundred and ten was put towards that. Spent to date is eleven thousand four hundred and twenty-six, budgeted two thousand and twenty-two for another eleven thousand four eighty-four. You can see there the list of things that were used for advertising. One of the big things that really helped us this year was the website redesign. Ours was really antiquated. Now it's very user-friendly for not only the businesses to come online with us, but for us to put out invitations to events and all kinds of things, and so that was a big plus for us this year. Also, the third category is investing in new alternative events designed to bring people back to downtown safely. These included events like Black History Month, MLK Day of Service, Downtown Gives Back, Main Street Bazaar Movie Night, Pride in the Park, Vacaville de Mayo Winter Wonder Walk, and Relay for Life, and Dia de los Martes, I think. Probably didn't say that right, but that's right. And then the fourth most important thing was staffing. Like allocation of six thousand dollars, spent to date, thousand seven hundred and twenty, and the budget for two thousand and twenty-two is four thousand two hundred and eighty. Currently, we have one full-time interim executive director, one part-time farmers' market coordinator, and one part-time events assistant. But what's needed and what we're working towards is a full-time executive director, the search is underway, a full-time events coordinator, and a full-time administrative assistant. Helps to be more on it. But in two thousand and twenty-one, in spite of a year recovering from COVID-nineteen restrictions, we held seventeen events, including the seven new events. My favorite one, because we were involved in with our church too, but was the downtown gives back. I was very excited about how many people in the community gave. There was over five hundred toys given out, the hot meals. That was a, it was a great time of unity, bringing the city together, especially the downtown, and I thought that was really cool. I know Councilman Silva was part of that, too. Very cool. And then the, if you realize, but in two thousand and twenty-one, the bid took over a hundred percent management of the Vacaville Farmers Market, and these are some of the statistics from last year. There was some issues with smoke on a couple of those weekends because of the fires and some of the heat, but I think it was a really successful year, and this year is already off to a great start and really excited about the changes that have been made and the more vendors and things that are happening. Also, we're excited about the twelve new locally owned businesses that opened downtown during the pandemic. Here's all the logos of the ones that have opened downtown. Also, I want to let you know that I've been excited personally, being on the board for like five years now, to see that more participation from our downtown businesses, our meetings, board of directors meetings, there's been a lot more people on the Zooms, a lot more people engaged, the attitudes of everyone and encouragement, helping us to continue to move forward and encouraging everyone as we roll out of this pandemic has been really great, so I've been very thankful for that. Here's some things as we move forward. As you know, we're in a search to hire a new executive director. We continue to promote and marketing for downtown. Our real emphasis, especially this year, we want to build more unity and relationships. You know, teamwork makes a dream work, and the more we can be united with each other downtown, the more we can look out for each other. I think it's a great thing. We already have one property owners meeting, we're going to be having those quarterlies, and also we're going to, instead of once a year for business owners meetings, we're going to up that to try and have at least three to four business owner meetings, and that's again, part of building that unity and those relationships, and then providing economic development resources. And then partnering with the City of Vacaville to help implement plans, the city's strategic plan, the downtown specific plan, and then the COVID recovery strategy. And the main thing was, we really want to thank you for your partnership and continuing to work together to improve downtown Vacaville. It's been a pleasure to serve in this position, and I'm excited about what God, not gosh, well, God helps us, but what's going to happen as we move forward. All right, well, that concludes our presentation. Any questions?
Thank you.
Councilmember Sullivan? So first, just on a personal note, and kind of where you finished up on, just want to thank you for being a part of our community. You know, when I first heard you, I heard you talk, you know, there's a lot of, there's always a lot of spirited debates on which direction our downtown should go. If I could summarize that, it would be our, our sense of community and the message that you consistently brought to our community is one of unity and love, and that in itself really is the strength of where, where we're at and where we continue to aspire to be. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sullivan, go ahead.
Thank you. I want to echo some of the same comments. I think the last couple of years, just the leadership from the bid and the downtown team has been spectacular. I just really appreciate the partnership. I think with the downtown specific plan, the East of Main Housing Project, we're just poised for really great things downtown, and you guys are such an integral and key partner to fulfilling that vision and providing impact and providing input from businesses there. So just huge thanks, you know, for, for everything that you guys have done. I think you've really stepped up during COVID, which is hard to do, especially in a downtown setting, but you know, every day more and more buildings are filled, and we're getting closer to that vision. I really appreciated the partnership on those events in two thousand and twenty-one, and I know with staffing turnover, things have kind of gotten, it's hard. Really hopeful return to that full event roster in two thousand and twenty-three and really kind of, you know, add some more, you know, the more cultural events and more kind of downtown events to bring people there. Just really appreciate you guys being the backbone for that, all the work that you've done, so big kudos to you and the team.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Wiley?
Great, thank you also for all your work that you've done, and I, there's been a lot of exciting things going on downtown. I do have one question with the presentation on the part that talked about the staffing. You know, I realize right now we have an interim and some open position, so we had spent a whole lot less on your chart, and then when you said what we would like to have is the full-time director and then the person for the farmer's market and the person for events. So would that be part of your staffing budget, or would you have to really add a lot more to your staffing budget to have those three positions filled?
Well, yeah, we're, we're assuming, especially to find an executive director that has all the experience for Main Street USA and all those different things. that has all the experience for Main Street USA and all those different things. It's going to, and to bring someone to California if they have to come from another place, I'm sure that it is going to increase our staff budget tremendously. We've looked at a couple of different scenarios with having part-time positions in different areas, you know, for events or different things. We've kind of played out some different scenarios, looking at what could work. But yeah, we're hoping we're, we've actually contacted a specialist that helped us with some of those salary expectations for that position in California for a bid executive director. And so we should be hearing back tomorrow actually on some of that. So that'll help us to be able to put together our plan a little bit more cohesively.
Great. Well, I hope that search is very productive and brings just the right person to Vacaville. And I do think it's important that the downtown and the city work together so that we can all move forward, especially with the new downtown specific plan. So thank you.
I agree.
Actually, if I could answer that as well, Councilmember Wiley. It's anticipated that staff will actually come back at some point this, this year to actually talk about staffing costs for the bid. One of the groups that we're contracting out with is Main Street America. And as part of that assessment, they will look at the salaries of your typical executive director of a bid in California, typical salary in the office manager for a bid, repeat bid in California, and a typical kind of market manager. So it is anticipated that we will come back this year to maybe seek additional funds based on staffing costs.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you so much. I appreciate everything. Just taking time will be fast. Awesome, amazing job. I just want to kind of tie in the same conversation with the downtown specific plan. It's awesome. And with, you know, beer for each of the possible reinvestment of the parking lot where all the long shrugs is to the far end of the development down by Chivada Solano. It's going to be amazing. So I just want to make sure that, you know, you're equipped after the Main Street program and the process hopefully finds success with the person. What else do you need? I mean, what can we do to help make sure that we do this right and make this a special thing? So when you come into downtown, you know you're there. Like, I'm there all the time for another reason. But I want you, I want everyone in front of the merchants to feel the, come to our stores, to really feel special about the community. Like, what do we need to do to invest in maybe relooking at the bid to help you guys have more money in the war chest to really make it special? I mean, you know, I know it's not the first time we're going to talk about this, your last, but it's coming up. But I just want to make sure that you really think about what is it going to take to really make that downtown special?
Right. And you know, one of the things, I mean, I'm really excited about downtown specific plan too. I've been in other cities when they had made some major changes in downtown, and a lot of people resisted it at first. But then when it happened and they saw the growth and all the things that happened with it, it really makes a huge difference. And so my thing is just to try and encourage everybody, hey, we need to realize that change isn't always bad. And, you know, to get everybody behind it and for us to all work together to make Vacaville awesome. I mean, it's already an amazing place. I mean, there's not very many places you can go and have Merriman on Main and have, you know, thousands of people crammed all together and not have a fight or a brawl or all kinds of things. I mean, there's a lot of great atmosphere and unity in this community already. I mean, when I coach Vacahai, Pack Out the Gym, I mean, it's so fun to see all the support that happens here in this community. And so I think one of my main goals is to try and encourage everybody, hey, let's get on board. Let's, let's be supportive of this. I think the renderings of some of the stuff that I've seen for the town square and stuff is awesome. And like I say, I've seen it work in other communities, other cities, where people were resistant to the change in the downtown in the beginning, but then it padded their pockets later and it really helped them. So.
Right. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Stockton.
I'll keep you quick. I just wanted to say it is always so nice when we walk through downtown to see how connected the business owners are to our community. And I think that really has a lot to do with the bid and getting everybody on the same sheet of music and kind of focused on, on becoming a, you know, that center stone for Vacaville. So I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that you're doing. I know it's been hard. There's been some businesses that haven't made it, but, you know, which is tough. But I, I respect your relentlessness in bringing in not just businesses, but good businesses that care about Vacaville. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
And Vice Mayor Roberts, if I, if I, because I don't think we have a slide that stipulates or states the actual, what we're seeking approval on. So it's actually fourfold. So by simple motion, approve the downtown Vacaville 2022 annual district plan, adopt the revised subject resolution, approve and authorize the city manager to execute the management agreement between the city and downtown Vacaville, and the fourth being approve a fee for service in the amount of $55,000.
Excuse me. Mr. Vice Mayor? Mr. Vice Mayor, you need to open the public hearing first.
Yes, I'm just trying to open up.
Okay, sorry.
I have one more question, one more comment. Dean Kathleen, thank you so much for coming tonight. Dean, you hit on something that I wanted to kind of add on to. I think that the more the bid and the bid board can be chain ambassadors for us with the downtown specific plan, the better. So please rally your board, please get them involved in helping, you know, staff for doing an amazing job. And the more people, especially business owner to business owner, we have just saying, take a chance, push the vision. I think, you know, it's going to be great. We've, we've had the same downtown for 20, 30 years and it's poised for great things. And there's folks that are very nervous about that. So the more that you guys can kind of help us smooth that process or kind of, you know, open conversations or invite us to meetings to really kind of alleviate anxiety, the better. So I really appreciate you saying that. Couple of other things we've gone around and around and around on up here on the dais is we've talked about parklets a ton. We've talked about outdoor dining. We've talked about community art and the ever terrifying parking situation. So if your board has any discussions about any of those items, again, the council is very interested. We're working on some plans with staff. And I'd love some of that discussion to be downtown-led, downtown business-led. So, you know, a lot of us think these things are great ideas, but sometimes we don't have a business downtown that operates that fashion. And I know some of your members have outdoor dining now, and some members don't, and some want a part, but some don't. So we're trying to suss through all of that, and I think the more that you guys can help us have an engaged discussion, the better. So again, just appreciate the advocacy and appreciate you kind of talking about helping other businesses see the vision. I have a logistical question for Tim. So Tim, there were some questions from community members that we fielded over the last week or two when the agenda was posted about, are we, are we charging more for the fee? Is, what's going on? Is it a late fee? Is it an early fee? Can you explain logistically what the fee pieces we're approving? We're not double doing it. We're a little late, but can you kind of technically explain what exactly is happening for business owners? They know what the fee being assessed is that we're talking about today.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. So we had to typically every year, each February, we come to council to seek approval for what we're seeking tonight, the annual renewal of the bid. Because of turnover at the bid and other things, we had to kind of delay that. And as a result, because we did not have a resolution approving an active management agreement, we cannot technically legally collect the assessment fees for that period, for like the last three months. So we have stopped payment, or people have stopped payments on making payments to the city for the, for the bid. And we are going to have to kind of resume payments, but also for those people that had payments between February, March, kind of have them backtrack or make back payments. And so we're going to have to do a little bit of policing to make sure that they make payments, but we don't anticipate being that, that being a serious problem. But there will be some folks that will actually have to make some, some back payments that were in that February to March payment group that would normally make payments in that period.
Councilmember Wiley.
If we, before we vote, I just wanted to be clear on what was amended in 8A in the resolution. So I wanted that explained before we voted.
City Manager.
Thank you, Councilmember Wiley. It was, we had to actually stipulate that we had not, from the time that we did the notice of intention two weeks ago, when, or yeah, it was two weeks ago that the council approved the notice of intention at the May 10th council meeting. We did not receive more than 50% opposition to renewing the bid. So had we gotten that, we would, we would have had to not have this public hearing tonight. So we wanted to put that in the resolution. Some minor things like separating the, the three recitals. I think they're like the last three recitals in the revised resolution. And then also making some items that were in the present tense to past tense.
And so when we vote, will we vote on them as a package or will we vote separately?
You're voting on the revised resolution.
As all three parts.
As, as I'm trying.
All the parts of it.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I will move it unless there's more discussion.
Go ahead and open up for public comment.
Hello, Vice Mayor and councilpeople, City Manager Ted Nema, owner of Clipper Cargo Jewelry, a member of the DVBID. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments that I think are warranted tonight. Number one is our president, who you've heard from, Dean, Pastor Dean. As you can tell, being a pastor, he has a very even, as he said the word, love, loving hand in managing all of the changes that have occurred in the last 90 days. And, and he and Kathleen specifically as two of our primary officers in arranging to have this great new interim executive director. We have Berea Alamaney, who's sitting there smiling. She is doing a tremendous job of just coming off the starting blocks and learning and doing great and communicating with all of us. And so we're doing everything we can to help her be and the DVBID be as successful as possible. But there's one more name. I don't, if anybody ever downloads where it says on the agenda, staff report, we have to talk about the job that Tim's done in conjunction with the DVBID. First of all, I can testify, he's at all of our meetings. Not only do I know that he's listening to every word that's said, because his commentary at the end always reflects that. And he has done a great job of preparing this plan and the staff report that has helping prepare that that's been submitted to you. And one thing I like in particular is the addition of the classes and courses from the Main Street America program. And so there are a lot of interesting pluses and new things in there to make us, help us move forward. That's it. And I want to thank you for considering this.
Go ahead and entertain motion. Oh, sorry. Go ahead and close public comment.
Thank you.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, unanimous vote. Moving on to item 8B, the City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. This next item before you is a lengthy title. I will simply refer to it as Phase Two of our Land Use Development Code Update, which is focused on the map amendments that are necessary to implement the recently approved code update that the council approved. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our senior planner, Abner Dino, to walk you through that project.
Thank you, City Manager, and good evening, City Council. As the City Manager mentioned, the item for you tonight is the citywide zoning map amendment project. So this is a request mainly to amend the city's zoning map to ensure it's consistent with three elements. It's general plan, it's land use and development code, which was recently updated, as well as this downtown specific plan, which was recently adopted. Little bit of background about how we got to this place. In August of 2015, the City Council at that time adopted a general plan update. That was a comprehensive update to our general plan, and it also certified environmental impact reports. As part of that, there were subsequent actions that needed to take place as part of, as part of its policies. One of them was updating the land use and development code. And that started in November of 2018, when the city started to do that process and worked with Lisa Wise Consulting to execute a contract and start that update. In January in 2020, the Community Development Department also embarked on a comprehensive update to the general plan map and to the zoning map. And that was mainly to make sure that there were some consistencies in place between those two maps. There were some errors, some erroneous designations that weren't correct. And so we conducted an amendment to that, and that was adopted in January 2020. Another document that we're looking for consistency with is in the downtown specific plan, which was recently just adopted, January of this year. And then the land use and development code, which was updated and adopted by City Council in February of this year. So this particular project was presented to the Planning Commission just last month, and the Planning Commission had a recommendation of 502 adopt these changes to the citywide zoning map. So here's what the project is. They're broken up into three different groups. One is major changes, which would affect 442 properties. And these changes are mainly required to ensure that they're consistent with the general plan. By state law, we are required to make sure that our zoning map is consistent with the general plan. And so a lot of these changes that occurred in the city's land use and development code update, there were, did a couple of things. One, it eliminated commercial service zoning, but it also lumped in a lot of those properties into the industrial service category. It also created a new zoning district called Highway Commercial. And that was again, to make sure that the zoning map was consistent with the general plan. It also eliminated policy plans. The second type of change that the land use and development code implemented was a minor change. And there are 183 properties that are affected. And these are properties that were already designated as a community facility. And so with that update to the land use and development code that occurred in February, that community facility designation was changed to public facility. And a lot of those standards were adopted in that public facility. So we're updating our map to change the nomenclature, the abbreviations on the map to PF. A lot of these areas that are going to be affected are public facilities such as detention basins and schools. No standards would be changing for those areas. One other minor change that we'll be adding to the maps is overlay zones to identify where those specific plans are, such as Brighton Landing, Roberts Ranch, North Village, Lagoon Valley, and Van and Meadows, as well as the downtown specific plan. And the third change that is occurring is caused by the downtown specific plan, which was recently adopted. As part of that specific plan adoption, all the additional zones that are adopted with that specific plan would affect 494 properties. And so we're amending our zoning map to make sure that it's consistent with that downtown specific plan document. This would be the zoning legend that would be identified on our city zoning map, which is also available on the city's website as a static map, but also an interactive map, kind of like Google. You'll see that the downtown commercial zoning district that was identified, that is currently identified on our zoning map, is going away because we have new designations that were adopted with the downtown specific plan. You'll also see that the service commercial designation is going away and that those properties that were in that service commercial designation are going to be lumped into the industrial service designation. A lot of the standards are exactly the same. Some other notable changes is you'll see that a parks and recreation PR designation was created, and that's mainly to identify where our parks are going to be located. This map, which was included in the staff report, identifies those properties that are going to be affected by those major changes. This map identifies all those properties that are affected by the minor changes. You'll notice a lot of the CF is going to PF, our school sites, detention basins, canals, city-owned property, things like that. This is that other minor change that's going to be occurring. It's for the specific plan overlays. It's identify and help the public understand where those specific plans are. So that way, if they're looking at finding out what development standards are there, that'll be easily identifiable for the public. And these are those downtown specific plan changes that were adopted with the downtown specific plan. You'll see on the left-hand side of your screen what those existing designations are identified on the city's map. And then the new designations that are proposed with this zoning map amendment that reflect consistency with the downtown specific plan. So in conclusion, Planning Commission as well as staff supports making these changes because it would make sure that our zoning map is consistent with the general plan and its EIR. It would be consistent with general plan policies that were adopted in 2015 that requires these changes to occur. It would be consistent with the recently adopted zoning ordinance that was done, as well as consistent with the downtown specific plan. These changes were brought before the Airport Land Use Commission, and they determined that it would be consistent with the airport land use compatibility plans for the Nutri Airport, as well as the Travis Air Force Base. So with that, there is a recommendation for council. It'd be by simple motion to reaffirm the general plan, environmental impact report, and supplemental EIR. And to introduce this subject ordinance, amending the municipal code by changing the zoning designations for the various properties that were included in the resolution or in the subject ordinance. That concludes my presentation and available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Go ahead and open up to public comment. No public comment? Go ahead and close public comment and open up to council for questions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody know?
I'm going to read the title of the ordinance and then we can move on. So Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Vacaville, Amending the Municipal Code by Changing Zoning Designations for Various Affected Properties Throughout the City of Vacaville.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to item nine, city business. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This first item for business is an update from our friends over there at the District Attorney's Office. Chief Eden Schmussler is going to--
All right, looks like we have the technology back working appropriately, so go ahead and return to item nine A.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. We'll try this again. Thank you for your patience while we had that temporary interruption. We are back up and running, so with that, I say rooms, thank you for coming.
City Council, I would like to say, first of all, thanks for having me here tonight. And I think it was City Councilmember Sullivan that wanted me to kind of talk to you guys about the task force. I have to say that when I ran for District Attorney in 2014, one of the things that was my priority was to change the way we investigate officer-involved critical incidents. I didn't think that the way we were doing it was best practices. Your chief at the time, John Carley of the Vacaville Police Department, he was with me. He wanted to help change it as well, but we were outnumbered, we were shot down. And so I had my supervising investigator, Aaron Dillon, who's here tonight. I had him come present to the chiefs. So we have a chiefs group with all the chiefs of police and the sheriff. And I had him present back in 2015 about what I wanted to do, which was have a task force that would independently investigate officer-involved critical incidents. And like I said, it didn't work out back then. And I will just say that, you know, at that time, the agency that didn't want to do it had the most officer-involved critical incidents. It wasn't Vacaville. But anyway, so I've worked on this for six, I worked on it for six years. And I have to give so much credit to Captain Chris Cohen. He wasn't the captain at the time, but, and Captain Ruston Banks from the Sheriff's Department, and he's no longer there now, he's the chief of police as well. But those two guys, those two men helped me really get it over the finish line back in 2020 because it's not only, you know, I listen to the community, I listen to law enforcement agencies, I listen to the POAs, the Police Officer Associations, then you deal with the POA's attorneys, and you get too many attorneys in a room, and it's, you can't get a lot done. So it was a lot of frustration, and, but I will say that those two guys really helped me do it. So we now have the task force, and we launched it in November of 2020. And it is, they independently investigate every officer-involved critical incident. And that way, so if there's an officer from Vacaville, so you had one in January of 2021, you had one, Mr. Mesa, who was shot and killed by Vacaville Police Department. And so in that case, you would not have anyone from the Vacaville Police Department investigating that case. So we have the task force, and it's made up of all members from around the county. We have a detective from Vacaville, detective from Vallejo, Fairfield Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, and then we also have from Benicia, Sisoon, and Dixon. So we have everybody's, but the Vacaville police officer that's part of the task force would not be part of that investigation at all, and the agency wouldn't be involved in the investigation. So it's, we have it from its inception. I think that there's so many benefits from it. Number one, I think it's best practice. Number two, it's independence, it's conflict-free, and it's impartial, fair, thorough. But also, the way it was done previously, sometimes we wouldn't get these cases for almost a year. A few of the cases, we wouldn't even see them in our office for a year. Now, my investigator, my supervising investigator, Aaron Dillon, he goes out, he supervises the task force, but also a chief deputy District Attorney from my office, a lawyer, but does go out there. And so we are involved from the very beginning. And so I'm briefed on it right away when it happens, whatever time of day or night, and then I'm constantly briefed on it, 24 hours, then 48 hours, so that it's within our office from the very beginning. So they're done, you know, they're more efficient, but also they're independent and they're conflict-free, and I think it's best practice. So I gave a lot of credit to Vacaville Police Department for really helping me do this. And I think it's kind of a state model. People keep calling me saying, you know, we'd like to look at your model, the way we're doing it, so that there isn't even a perception of a conflict. So I'm here to answer any questions, but I really want to thank City Councilmember Nolan Sullivan, because you came to my prosecutor for the day, and we talked about, we offered it to everyone in the community, but we showed kind of all the different work that we do at the District Attorney's Office. And one of the things was this task force in officer-involved critical incidents, and we kind of went through one. I was told my time was limited tonight, so that's why we're not doing a whole presentation on one of the officer-involved. But I appreciate you coming, and I think that it's, I think that this is, we've had, we've had three across the county since November of 2020. And so, and one, a real positive, I feel, you know, people always talk about, you know, Vallejo had 20 officer-involved fatalities in a 10-year period, and since we've launched the task force, they haven't had one. So I feel like, I feel like it's a good thing that we're doing this. So I'm happy to take questions from my supervising investigator.
Go ahead and open up to Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. I appreciate it. I think the task force is a really smart idea, and I really appreciate you championing and kind of pushing it through and kind of spearheading it. Read through the side docs and done a little research on the side. I guess my question, or kind of the comments that I wanted to make, and I'm so glad you're here tonight. I mean, one of the roles that we play as a council member oftentimes is we're connector, a bridge builder, a convenor, right? So you've got a constituent, they either want more information on something, they want to learn about a program, they're angry about something, they are happy about something, which usually they're angry and unhappy. And you're trying to kind of figure out what those issues are, and you want to connect them to resources. And so in Vacaville, we've had three major cases that I believe have been submitted to your office. And I think two were kind of unusual, but, you know, we had a really violent double homicide. We had an officer-involved shooting that actually occurred at City Hall during a council meeting. And then we had a suicide of a beloved local Vacaville resident. So these families and folks in the community, they have questions, right? And so I don't have answers. I don't know where to send them to. I know in a lot of cases, it's confidential, it's employee discipline, it's not, how do we close the loop? And I guess is the next iteration of this program, like we're, how do you kind of finish up once you're done and kind of share either with councils who are waiting to know? I mean, again, this happened in January of 2021 on City Hall property, and we still haven't heard any outcome or any report from what happened. How do we close that loop with elected bodies in Solano? And then how do we actually close that loop with the family, friends, and community that's still wondering? And is there some sort of portal or something in the works that folks can access that information or plan to get back to councils so that we can kind of close that loop as well? Because I think that's where the gaps at where I kind of struggle sometimes, and I was hoping maybe that was like the second phase, or maybe, maybe I'm misunderstanding something, but that was my big comment tonight.
Okay, so with respect to the officer involved with Mr. Mesa, I always meet with the family in the beginning of the investigation to explain the process, because there's an, there's an internal investigation within the department, and then there's the criminal investigation at my office. So I explain the process to them, and then we always meet with the families when we've made a decision, whether we are filing charges on the officer or whether we're clearing the officer and finding it justifiable. And so I always meet with families, and I met with the family in the Mesa case, and we give them the letter. And I give the letter to the police chief of the agency for which the officer is employed. I'm happy to give the letters to, the letter that cleared that officer--
It might be more like an internal admin thing that we need to figure out.
But no, no, I, but that's, it's a public document, so I'm happy to forward it to your City Council.
Okay.
Absolutely. And then obviously, I can't, I mean, the double homicide is horrible. I can't comment on it. It's pending. It's in, it's in court, so I can't talk about it. But I will say this, I've always had an open door policy to any member of the community. People always say, my dad always says, your door is too open. But I will meet with anybody, and I think it's really important. And I, whether we disagree at the end of the meeting, at least people I've learned, people just want to be heard. They want to be treated with dignity and respect and be heard. And I will meet with anyone and everyone. So you can always send anyone, if it's a, if it's a matter that's involving our office, you can always tell them to call me, and my secretary will make that meeting happen because I meet with anyone.
And even just like a simple website that has the status that submit, you know, just somewhere we can point residents to would be great. So on the suicide one, there were lots of questions in the community, and folks were very upset. And again, there's nowhere to point them. And so what I say is, it went to the major crimes task force, I don't, you know, I don't know. And so just if there was some sort of public access tool, I know you can't share so much, but it just would be really helpful and I think would close the loop for people, and it could be fairly easy to kind of stand up on your website.
Sure.
But really appreciate it. And again, I think some of it probably administratively we have to work out with the chief, or it might have been between chiefs, or this, that, or the other. But, you know, these big things happen, and the public expects us to know. If we don't know, we have no answers, we look silly. And so it's, you know, how do we close that loop internally with the community and also the electeds? Thank you.
Any other questions?
Councilmember Wiley?
Thank you for the presentation, and I will say that I was happy to participate in the prosecutor for a day a couple of months ago, and we had a whole presentation at your office that detailed the program. So it's really a very interesting, and I think helps a lot. There was two things that I wanted to ask from the written report that we had. It said that the term of office, they said they, a minimum of three-year term was suggested on the task force. And then so is there, like, okay, I've been on it five years, do you say it's time to get somebody else on there? How does it work that officers are on this task force?
So it's, it's up to the individual agencies, but it has to be somebody with experience in homicides and officer-involved. And so they have to have all the experience to be on there and have so many years at their department. But they're chosen by their, by their chief of police or their sheriff.
Okay. And then a while ago, when you were talking, the way I interpreted what you said was, so if it was someone from Vacaville that was, you know, shot someone, then Vacaville person would not be on the task force. Is that what you said?
They would not be part of that investigation at all. That's correct.
Well, that's what makes sense to me, but when I read this report on page 141, it says, "The supervising investigator shall make sure that at least one investigator is assigned to the major task force from the agency employing the officer involved in the use of deadly physical force." So that sounds like they need to be on.
Well, so they're all part of the task force. So a member, an officer from each agency is on the task force, but they drop off if it's, if it's an officer involved with their, with their agency.
Okay, so they're on the task force--
Right.
--but they're not on this specific investigation.
Correct.
Okay. So and then do you have all, all agencies in Solana County have a member on the task force?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yeah, just a quick question. So one, thanks for opening up the office there. I wasn't able to make it that, I think it was November 2nd, but I think that was a great opportunity. So hopefully that continues to go around. I would, just on the comments about releasing information to the public, what I find often happens, particularly on social media, somebody sees something, and then everybody kind of, it's like everybody's up in other people's business. And I think over time, people become more sensitive of respecting the families of whoever's involved in all of that. So I guess just my question is, is there, within these reports or these findings, is it within the system to reach out to the family of the, those who are impacted by it? So if there's, so we're talking about officer-involved shootings, is there, if there's concerns within the person who was, who lost their life for whatever reasons, or whatever questions there is surrounding that, whether it's officers involved or not, are, is there an opportunity? Do you guys go to the, to the families that are impacted?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So we start from the very beginning to explain the process, and then we, we meet with them and we keep them updated. And then we, when we have our ultimate decision, we meet with them as well.
Okay. All right, thank you for that and clarifying that for myself. The other thing is, I'm just kind of curious, you mentioned that the amount of cases since its inception in Vallejo has dropped to none. What, I'm curious to see, based on best practices, what's the theory as to what, what about this would influence that type of outcome?
Well, I think that it increases the public trust in the outcome, is that there's the perception that police are investigating themselves, right? And so this, just, this makes sure that there's no conflicts, right? So that, for instance, you two work together all day long, and, and he gets in a shooting, and then you're interviewing him, right? And so there's this implied bias, or people at least perceive it's biased, you work with the, you work with them, and then you're going to also investigate him in a shooting. So I think that it just avoids all conflicts and any perceived conflict.
So are there citizens that are involved in this? So non, non--
Non-law enforcement?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and open up for a public comment. And go ahead and close public comment. And just wanted to thank you guys for the presentation and coming out here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you?
Oh, there we go. I had a quick comment before you leave, DA. I just wanted to say, I've had the opportunity to work with you and the work that you do for victims of violent crime. I've seen the looks in the eyes of the people that you've helped, and I appreciate that the work that you're doing to bring transparency to these investigations. I know they're extremely sensitive, and I appreciate that you've involved all the police chiefs and everybody that you brought to the table to really make this happen, because it is something new. And thank you for coming and answering our questions for us today.
We'll go ahead and move on to item nine B. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. I'll stall while our budget team gets all set up. But tonight is the first installment, really, our first major installment of the fiscal 2223 budget process. As you may recall, in the past couple of meetings, we've introduced a few subjects related to this year's upcoming budget. We talked about Measure M at your May 10th meeting, and then at your special meeting last week, May 18th, we talked about some important ideas related to the budget that we'll talk in more detail tonight. But it introduced the whole concept of looking at those important issues from a structural and foundational issue, not just our operational budget. So with that, we'll get started on our tag team approach for the budget tonight. Next slide, please. So as you can see here, we have quite a few items to cover. The first item is an overview of the budget process to get to this point and where we're going next. Then I'll talk a little bit more about the big picture, those items that I mentioned about structural and foundational budget issues. We'll get into a proposal from our finance director about additional discretionary payments towards our CalPERS pension debts and obligations. Then we'll get into the real meat of the proposal, which is the proposed budget augmentations, followed by a discussion about Measure M, and then finally the five-year forecast. So with that, I'll turn it over to our team, and they'll continue on with the agenda. So with that, I'll turn it over to our team and they'll continue on with the agenda.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members. Leslie Hoover, Budget Manager here with the city of Vacaville. I am going to start off kind of with a budget roadmap as we get into our budget process for the upcoming fiscal year. Tonight, as Aaron mentioned, is study session number one. We will follow it up with study session number two, which will be on June 14th. At that time, we'll have the departments come up here and present as well as have our draft budget document available for you to see. And then finally, we will ask for budget adoption on June 28th, and that will be effective July 1st, 2022. Next slide. The development budget process is responsibility of both the city manager's office and the budget division within finance. And we work in collaboration with our departments. As you may recall from our Budget 101 session in April 21, the development of the city's annual budget begins with establishing establishing a base budget, which involves taking the final budget from the previous year and backing out any one time expenditures. From there, we also make anticipated increases in specific group or line items. This includes adjusting position budgeting with any new rates for PERS, PARs, OPEB and other employment costs. Most of these rates are updated with estimates provided by our third party actuaries. Then we adjust for any contractual obligations established per active labor agreements and other long term contracts. We also adjust the department supplies and services by CPI. We use the San Francisco, Oakland and Hayward CPI as of December each year. This year, as of December, the CPI was 4.2%. So that is factored into the budget that we will be presenting to you tonight for the department supplies and services. And next, the budget division also analyzes specific line items that affect multiple departments such as fuel, electricity, gas and water, as well as any programs funded through chargeback to users during operations through internal services. This is items such as our central garage or citywide technology. Next, I will turn it back over to Aaron to go over the big picture for the fiscal year 23 budget.
Our current budget, the proposed fiscal 2223 budget is built on taking the necessary steps for taking our organization to that next level, for addressing all the needs to position ourselves, position the organization, to accomplish the the goals and objectives of the city council's strategic plan and to meet the the desired levels of services for our residents that they deserve. So in order to do that, we once again put together a collaborative and strategic budget approach that helps us organize and bring the resources that we need in order to accomplish the vision that was presented in and showcased really in the City State of the City address earlier this year. And so what we wanted to tackle this this particular budget is some of those important issues that we didn't always talk about. And as we go forward, we need to explore those things so that we make sure that we're prepared for things that pop up and that we haven't necessarily addressed potentially. But also to address some of those important issues to, again, keep up with the service demands and provide those services that our customers are looking for. So we've added a few things to this particular budget process. In addition to the traditional operational budget, we've also identified for you at a couple of meetings ago, some foundational and structural budget issues that we need to address, in addition to quality of life issues as well. And so you can see here in this slide that we've identified some of the the examples of those particular categories. So quality of life kind of speaks for itself. Park improvements, community center improvements and other types of public amenities. How do we bring those forward in accordance with our city's general plan, our parks master, park and rec master plan, and again, the city's strategic plan? But then we also need to look at some of the other things, such as foundational issues, which we've identified as staffing resources as as an example, capital maintenance and replacement costs. The city has continued to grow and yet our staffing resources have not kept up. And as a result, we've been struggling to meet some of the service demands. And so we're using this budget as an opportunity to highlight some of those and some solutions through budget augmentations that we're providing for you tonight. An example, some of the structural issues that we need to address are some of the subsidies that we've been continuing to present to council over past budgets. We're suggesting as part of this budget, using funds to go ahead and do some evaluations of some of those structural issues so that we can bring back some solutions to the council so that going forward, we have addressed those problems and are being fiscally responsible and taking care of those in a timely manner. So with that, we have a lot to share with you tonight. And and our budget team is going to walk you through those augmentation requests. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Leslie.
Thank you, Mr. City Managers. This is Ken Massey, the Director of Finance. Good evening, council. And so the very first item, the very first recommendation that we have as part of the the proposed budget speaks to when we talk about the structural issues, there was the rising pension costs. And this also falls in line with council's strategic goal number 4A, which is ensuring the fiscal sustainability of the city and continue to address the long term unfunded liabilities. And so CalPERS, we have this ability to make additional payments on top of the the required payments that we have to make to CalPERS. And a personal analogy I would use for this is think of it as similar to to having credit card debt. If you have money in your savings account, which you can think of as as our general fund reserve, we measure M reserve, but you also have this huge credit card debt out there that is accruing significant interest. It it makes more fiscal sense to take the savings or as much savings as you can, the excess, and start paying off this credit card debt to save an interest cost. And that's the concept here. And so these additional discretionary payments, these ADPs, the benefit of of making them is increasing the funded status of our pension plans, which were at 65% as of the last valuation from CalPERS. So this was as of June 30th, 2020. It pays down the unfunded liability and then saves interest costs in the process. And then the very last bullet point under the section with the payment flexibility, if council were to approve this recommendation as part of the budget, we're not locked into where once you make these ADPs, you have to go on and do it forever. There is flexibility. If if there was something to happen with the economy, we could reduce that amount or not make that additional payment. Or we can even increase it if times are even better than kind of what we've seen in the past. What we are recommending is that this be funded for Measure M and reserves. Next slide, please. So there are two scenarios that we'll be putting out there as options. This very first one is the the recommended scenario from staff. And so this is a 15 year plan to to pay off our our safety CalPERS plan. And so with CalPERS, we have two plans with CalPERS. There's one for our safety employees and one for our miscellaneous employees. With Measure M, we're planning to target or the proposal would be to target the safety plan. The main reason for this is because of the two plans, this is the larger one. It's 130 million as of June of 2020 compared to slightly under 94 for the miscellaneous plan. And then with our safety employees, they're primarily funded by the general fund, which Measure M is a part of. We wouldn't ignore the miscellaneous plan. The the plan for that would be instead of using Measure M, what we would use is, if council may recall, back in December, we had our OPEB actuary do a presentation on the most recent valuation. As part of that, we were anticipating or budgeting over a five year forecast that we were going to have to make around nine and a half million dollars in payments each year for OPEB debt. With that most recent valuation, the the annual payment was actually going to be closer to seven and a half million. And so the the plan there is to, instead of banking that that $2 million difference, to use one and a half million to start paying the miscellaneous plan. So we are planning to address both, using Measure M through for the safety plan and then the OPEB savings for the miscellaneous plan. So under this recommended 15 year plan, it would call for using 2.2 million annually for Measure M, paying that over 15 years. And then through that, we would achieve a little under $27 million in interest savings. And so the chart on the right shows how to how that would play out over time. And so, John, if you could pull up the the highlighter pointer. And so starting off with the blue columns, that's our annual unfunded liability payment. If we were to do nothing at all, just follow CalPERS amortization schedule, we would pay off our our debt as of 2020 by 2045. By doing this 15 year ADP plan, we would pay that off eight years faster, which is that orange column. And that would be 2038, where we would be scheduled to make that that last payment. And then the lines, you have the gray line, which is our our unfunded liability. So that's it starts at 138 million and 20. And that would be paid off, as I was mentioning, in 2045. By making these ADPs, we do pay that down eight years faster, and that would end in 2038. Thanks, John. Next slide, please. So as mentioned, there are two options that we're putting out there for council consideration with the the 15 year being the recommended. And the main reason being that, as you can see, under this 20 year plan, we would really only be paying off our unfunded liability just two years quicker. So currently, it's scheduled to be paid off in 2045. This would pay it under by 2043. And the interest savings is substantially less as well, where we would be getting a little over 9 million as opposed to that 26.7 that I mentioned in the previous slide. And then from there, I will turn it over to our to Leslie, our Budget Manager, to talk about the budget augmentations.
Hello, sorry. Now we'll be going over the budget augmentations for the upcoming fiscal year. Again, augmentations would be for anything above the base budget. Next. First, starting off with our strategic plan. So all of our augmentations follow our strategic plan and they meet either one or multiple goals or initiatives within the plan. Next. Attached to the staff report was a list of augmentations for fiscal year 23. This slide summarizes all these recommendations by the personnel request by department and strategic goals. As you can see on the slide, there's a total of 25 recommended positions for council's consideration. I do want to point out that four of them are conversions of current existing non full time funds. For the city manager's office, we are recommending two full time positions and some additional non full time funds. The first position is an IT administrator as identified in the technology strategic plan to increase enterprise application analyst staffing to utilize efficiencies and gains from technology. The plan also identified three areas for focus, one of them being public safety. By adding this position, it would allow for concentrated efforts within our ID department on on various public safety applications that currently require significant staff time. The next is a conversion to of an IT technician. We currently have three technicians and a half and a part time technician. This would make it four, which was suggested in the technology strategic plan as well. Not shown on here is some additional non full time funds that we are asking for for the city manager's office as well. And this is for a bilingual program coordinator as well as outreach interns. Since the adoption of the city's strategic goals and initiatives, the city has been making significant efforts to support community engagement and increase equity, diversity and inclusion. These non non full time funds would allow for enhanced public outreach as well as increased engagement with our Spanish speak Spanish speaking community members. The next department we have is community development, and we also have two positions recommended for them. One of them is a management analyst. Currently, our community development department is the only department that does not have a management analyst and then a permit technician. For our finance department, we also have two positions that we are recommending. One is a finance supervisor and a junior accountant. For the fire department, we also have two positions that we're recommending along with some additional non full time funds for part time staff. The first position is a senior code compliance technician. As the city has grown, so too has the service related to our fire code enforcement division. The department has seen a significant increase in the volume of code cases and staff time spent in to service the community. Currently, the fire marshal is responsible for overseeing code enforcement division along with prevention, public education, local code compliance and state and federal regulations and maintaining the new pilot programs such as neighborhood cleanup and property abatement programs. This position would be responsible for the oversight of the city's code compliance along with the three staff members currently in this division. The next position is a fire captain along with some non full time funds for 12 to 14 part time firefighter and paramedic apprentices. The chief will go over the fire apprentice pilot program in depth in a little bit. The next department is housing and community services, where we also have two positions. The first is an administrative technician to assist in streamlined detailed financial processes, tracking and monitoring to ensure compliance with the multitude of grants and be a direct liaison with our finance department. The second position is a housing services administrator. The current housing services administrator oversees large grant programs in addition to two housing authority programs, including the CDBG program, regional JPA programs and housing counseling, as well as assisting the director with projects and department wide planning and budgeting. Adding this position will increase efficiencies and responsiveness of the department. Next, for human resources, we do have two positions here as well. They are for HR analysts and one of them is a conversion of current full time funds. The next we have for our parks and recreation department, we have four positions we are recommending from Measure M. The first position is a conversion of existing non full time funds for an additional full time facility maintenance coordination coordinator. Currently, the department is tasked with supporting six community centers and eight satellite facilities with two full time and one part time staff. They are responsible for coordinating, scheduling and oversight of facility rental, emergency setups, including park rentals. And they are vital worker, the work that's done behind the scenes. The second position is an administrative technician. The department needs additional administrative help with marketing and community engagement as this is an area where we are falling short due to constraints and the lack of dedicated full time staff to successfully organize and strategize outreach efforts. There are various items promoted through our parks and recreation department, such as program activities, park and facility amenities, events, community projects through different media channels. Additionally, the department needs to be responsive to the public relations manager along with being able to address the numerous goals in the Parks and Parks and Recreation Master Plan that require focused marketing effort to keep public public engaged and informed. The next one is a additional recreation supervisor to oversee oversee the department's registration program, Civic Rec, along with park and facility reservations and provides supervisor supervisory oversight to the park rangers. This position will provide much needed leadership and support to the customer service team for all programs and facility reservations as they directly connect with citizens as one of the organization's most frontline positions. By having dedicated leadership working directly with Civic Rec, the department will be able to enhance not only current uses, but continuously identify best practices for the registration and reservation process using the latest development features. This position will work closely with the finance department as well to ensure proper accounting procedures are followed. The next one here, the final position recommended for Parks and Rec Department is a full time park planner. The department currently has one non full time and one full time park planner with 34 existing projects and more to come with the next fiscal year. Thus, the workload is currently difficult to manage. Not only do the park planners manage these projects, but they routinely take the lead in facilitating volunteer projects and assist other departments with project plan review, downtown specific plan review, AB 1600 study review, among other things. This position will also facilitate park related community meetings, review policies and construct master plans for park projects. The next department we have is our police department. While they did have several position requests, we are currently recommending two dispatchers as a part of the next budget. As the city continued to grow, so does the need for our public safety communication staff. They they operate the 24/7 communication center, which is responsible for over 145,000 incoming calls, 30,000 incoming 911 calls and 100 text to 911 sessions. By adding two positions, it will allow the department to increase minimum staffing to maintain base basic functionality as it is imperative to have dedicated call takers on each shift and multiple call takers during peak activities. The next one we have, the final department, is Public Works tonight with seven additional positions. These would be funded through a combination of general fund, Measure M and other funds. The first position is a public works superintendent. Since 2000, the city has added over 50 new residential developments and over 47 miles of water and sewer service infrastructure and hundreds of new street miles. The next two positions would be two maintenance workers. The city's current 276 street miles is currently performed by nine staff. As mentioned, the city, as mentioned previously to the over 47 miles of street roadway since 2020, including corresponding traffic safety controls, striping graphics, curb gutter infrastructure. infrastructure. Staffing levels have simply not kept up with the pace of the city's growth of infrastructure. Next on here is also a recommendation for Measure M funding as an asset management GIS technician. This position would also, was also identified in our technology strategic plan to have a dedicated person to expand the use of GIS technology in public works. We also have an administrative technician for our transit division. The city's transit program is currently administered by two staff members. Public transit program management today requires a higher degree of local and regional coordination along with administrative office technical skills to meet the higher threshold. In addition, the federal transit and administration regulatory requirements have broadly increased requiring significant time to compile and maintain FTA reports. The third transit staff member funded through transit funds would help to balance the workload and ensure a high level of efficiency is achieved. The next position is also a conversion of existing non-full-time funds for an office assistant. This position is another, I'm sorry. Between 2018 and today, the city's fleet has increased from 565 vehicles and equipment to just over 644. As the fleet has grown, so too has the demand for back office procedures and regulatory compliance and processing work orders, purchase orders, and balancing, monitoring, warranty tracking, and customer service to the city's internal departments. The final item that we have for the public works is a fire mechanic supervisor. This position is needed as the city now faces the need to recruit a national fire protection associated certified fire equipment mechanic, starting at the supervisor level. This position is needed to mitigate equipment downtime and thereby ensure higher levels of equipment operational availability across the fire fleet. Next. On this slide here, we do have the services and supplies requests. The apprentice pilot program does have an additional ask for services and supplies on top of the fire captain and the non-full-time, which chief will speak to here in a little bit. Biotech initiative, phase three. So we've gone through phase one and phase two. Dawn talked about recently phase three, so this provides the funding for that in the new fiscal year, along with advertising needed on that end for economic development as well as funds for the Solano County Small Business Development Centers for their services and data analytics to have in-house for our economic development team. We also have the need for additional public outreach tools for the city manager's office. And as Aaron talked about earlier, citywide analysis for our lighting and landscape maintenance districts, that is one-time funding for that item. The next three, Walter Graham Aquatic Center, the Play For All Park Maintenance, and the Traffic Safety Striping and Graphics, we're asking to come for Measure M. Regarding the aquatic center, this was an item that we had deferred maintenance for a long time, and now that we have gotten the pool up and maintained, we need to have some ongoing funds to maintain that going forward. Play For All Park, it is anticipated that this will come online, and the city will be responsible at the beginning of the fiscal year, so this is adding funds to maintain that park going forward. We do have some trash amendment compliance consultant assistance. This is a one-time fund. This is due to regulations from the state. And then for their automatic license plate reader program, the chief will also be talking about this and further later tonight, but that's 244,000 for that program going forward. Next slide. So we do have some unfunded requests tonight. As you can see here, there are 11 positions that we are not recommending at this time. So we have a fire prevention supervisor. The police department has several there, an additional public safety dispatcher. At this time, with staffing needs, we feel like we can support the two and then maybe come back at mid-year and see how we are with recruitment on them and see if this one needs to be added at that time. The program coordinator, the crime analyst technician, the record specialist, and the community service officer, they are currently going through an overview and audit of the department, and so we will, in conjunction with that, we will also take a look at these positions and see what can be recommended going forward. Then we also have the deputy attorney, a deputy director for parks and recreation, and additional office assistant. And then we have a junior engineer that's currently on a limited-term basis for another year, so we're going to hold off on that one until that expiration comes up. And then one item for supplies and services that we're holding off at this point is phase one of the electronic content management system. Once a contract is together, this will likely come back to council at some point and approve at that point. Next. So now I will turn it over to the fire chief to go over the apprentice pilot program.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm very happy tonight to give you some detail on this very exciting new proposed program that we're hoping to put in place and implement this year. What we're hoping to do is to implement, it's going to be a pilot program for this year. It's a fire apprentice program. The fire service, as well as Vacaville Fire Department, is facing two huge challenges. One is our lack of diversity in our ranks. And then the other problem that we're having, especially over the last few years, is just the overall lack of candidates. The last couple of recruitments that we've had for both firefighter EMTs and firefighter paramedics has been very unsuccessful with just no candidates putting in for the job. So really, we need to, a grassroots effort to build these new qualified candidates from members of the community. So this is a program that is a recruiting and training program that's aimed at increasing diversity in the number of firefighter candidates, so addressing those two major issues that we have in the fire service right now. And what it does is it provides a pathway for diverse young adults or people, or adults or people that are actually looking for a midlife career change, kind of like what I did. I was in the private sector prior to becoming a firefighter and became interested in the fire service when I got some mentors. So looking for those type of people. And what it does is they will be learning how to be, we will teach them how to be firefighters, and then eventually we'll have them go through, not this year, but eventually we'll develop the program where actually we'll send them through paramedic school so that at the end of the program, they are qualified to be promoted into our vacant firefighter, paramedic firefighter EMT spots. So that, it takes care of our staffing crisis that we've got going on also. The other thing that it's going to do, you know, the diversity, equity, and inclusion, it goes both ways, right? And I think what it really will help is by recruiting a more diverse group of folks into our, into our ranks, it'll help our current group of folks to be more inclusive. So what we're going to do is, this year is, we're going to have that, the fire captain is going to oversee the program, he's going to develop, he or she is going to develop the program, put in all of the details, start recruiting, and then ultimately, we're looking to recruit 12 to 14 apprentices that will be riding as the fourth person on the fire engine or fire truck, and a third person, or the third person on our ambulance, and learning how to be hands-on, getting hands-on time, learning how to be firefighters and firefighter paramedics. Ultimately, it'll end up with them getting their firefighter one certification, they'll get some EMS training, and eventually, like I said, not this year, but as we develop the program, eventually, our vision is to eventually send them to paramedic school so that they're ready to promote into our full-time firefighter, paramedic spots. The funding that we're asking for is salaries for the, so these will be paid part-time positions, so they'll be paid to be, to learn how to be firefighters. And then, and then you've got some recruitment costs, some, their backgrounds, and some software and outfitting, so their personal protective equipment that we're going to have to outfit them with. And then, as I said earlier, the fire captain that we're going to put on days to really build the program and then to coordinate the program, they'll be the ones that, alongside with a group of folks, that will recruit and then develop the training for these firefighter apprentices. The services and supplies, those, the cost for the first year is high because we've got, you know, we've got some one-time costs that we've got to purchase some equipment for the program ongoing. If the program is successful, like I said, we're piloting it this year, but ongoing, those, the services and supplies costs will go down from the first year. And do I answer questions now or later? Okay. Was it? After, okay.
Next, we'll have the police chief come up and talk about the automated license plate reader program.
Good evening, once again, Vice Mayor, members of council. Thank you for allowing me to speak here in front of you about our automatic license plate reader program, or ALPR for short. You know, we love our acronyms. We began the research into the ALPR program back in 2018, doing the work through the RFP to get a vendor to work with us. The program actually, phase one was completed in late 2020, which established 60 ALPR cameras throughout the city. What those cameras do is they have the ability to capture license plate information as vehicles, and these 60 cameras are focused on on- and off-ramps along Interstate 80 and some of the more heavily traveled thoroughfares into the city. They capture that information and almost immediately run it through a statewide database for stolen vehicles, felony vehicles, as well as local wants. So those 60 cameras were installed. Some great success with the program. Vehicle theft between 2018 and 2021, the number of arrests have not only gone up by 35%, but despite the trend in California with property crimes increasing, our actual number of reported vehicle thefts has dropped by a third because frankly, word has gotten out about these ALPR programs, and folks that are in the business of stealing cars will typically do a little bit of research and find out that a city that has an ALPR program, they tend to want to avoid. So that's had a positive impact as well. So what we're looking for is to add an additional 60 ALPR cameras that would cover the remaining ingress and egress roadways, as well as to be able to staff our, what we hope to have established by the end of the year, which is a real-time crime center through our Crime Analysis Taylor Hill. And that will allow us to essentially, in real time, be able to look into in-progress crimes and use these ALPR cameras and readers for the ability to actually get people into custody rather quickly as opposed to having to pass it on to investigators who then have to take the time to follow up and potentially do the investigations out of town because a number of our folks that come in and commit crimes are from out of town. So that is the request, in addition to maintenance and the yearly software subscription costs.
Thank you, Chief. Next. So that is the, that is all of our augmentations for the coming, there's a lot. So just to summarize it, we do have the total of the 25 positions. Again, four of those are conversions of current non-full-time funds for our general fund. There are 11 positions, one-time costs of 245,000, ongoing costs of just over 2 million, for a total of 2.3 million. In Measure M, we would be adding eight positions, one-time costs of 168,420, ongoing costs of just over 2 million or a 2.3 million fund total for the upcoming fiscal year. For other funds, this would be like our community development and transit. There are six positions, ongoing costs of just over $700,000, and that would also be the total, for a total of 25 positions and just over $5.3 million in augmentations for this budget. Next. I'll turn it over to Ken to go over Measure M for the upcoming fiscal year.
Leslie, next slide, please. So for our Measure M 2023 recommendations, this slide summarizes what we're recommending for the upcoming year, and that is continuing the pilot and district benefit programs that were part of the fiscal year 22 budget. So this is the diversity, equity, inclusiveness, that those initiatives, the youth scholarships, neighborhood cleanup, that those continue in the upcoming fiscal year. For capital additions, we have it as modest capital additions. The reason why is really the second bullet point, and that is, as council is aware of, in the fiscal year 22 Measure M budget, there were $8 million in park improvements that were started during the year, but we need to finish those up, and that is going to be a big priority as part of fiscal year 23. And now going back to that first bullet point, and so that is why you see modest additions as far as new funding goes. And so what we're proposing is 1.5 billion in new funds out of Measure M for the capital budget, which our public works department will be talking about more in our budget study session number two, but just to highlight a couple of the projects that you'll be seeing, it's funding for the downtown specific plan area, it's for the gymnasium replacement of the floor and bars, B-PAT improvements, and also equipment replacement for the lattice cultural center. The Measure M recommendations also include the different items that were talked about previously, a little bit earlier in the presentation, so that's the apprentice pilot program, the biotech initiative phase three, and then starting to program funding and to address the foundational structural challenges, so the staffing, the maintenance, and the unfunded liabilities, the ADP stuff that we talked about. Next slide, please. And so financially, what does that look like? This slide shows that, and so at the very top of the table, you have our Measure M beginning balance with commitments entering fiscal year 23, so we project that to be slightly under 24 million. So just to clarify on commitments, the amount of Measure M cash that we have is actually higher than that, but because of things such as the park improvements that were budgeted during fiscal year 22, but the cash hasn't actually left the building as of the end of the year, we're factoring that into that beginning balance. There are also some funds that were set aside at the very beginning of Measure M for things such as the sports complex, which is about $5 million, the fire station 72, that possible relocation. So these are items that are going to require further discussion, but they are amounts that have been set aside and that are part of this commitment amount that you see of 23.6 million. For the upcoming fiscal year, we're projecting that revenues will be slightly under 22 million, and the expenses, which are the three rows below that total 16.5 million. I do want to call out the 1.6 million that you see under requested budget augmentations, and so if you were to go back a slide, that amount for Measure M was around $2 million. The reason why this is lower is because with the positions, the assumption is that even if approved, all these positions aren't going to be filled as of July 1st, so it's going to take some time to recruit from. Some might be filled prior to, like earlier in the year, some might drag and be a little bit later. And so what we're assuming with the positions is that a November 1st start date on average, and that is why you see this amount that's lower than the full cost that was shown a slide ago. And so for the upcoming fiscal year for Measure M, we're forecasting sort of plus of 5.4 million. When you add in the, or subtract out the 2.2 million in the ADP payment, we expect Measure M to end the year slightly under 27 million. Next slide, please. So over the next couple of slides, we'll be talking about the five-year forecasts. Next slide. And so just some assumptions that we use for the five-year forecast, I won't hit on every single one of these assumptions, but for our forecast for the general fund, our two biggest revenue sources, that's sales tax and property tax. We do with, we work with an external consultant, HGL, on those forecasts, those revenue numbers. And then for other revenue numbers, that numbers, those assumptions come about from discussions with our internal departments and how they see their operations going in the upcoming year, and also looking at historical trends as well. So just to highlight a couple of the areas here for sales tax growth in fiscal year 23, we're expecting that to remain fairly flat coming off of 22, so slightly under 2%. And then for the outside years, an annual increase of around 3%. For property tax, these values are going to be based off, what we get in fiscal year 23 is going to be based off of values that we were seeing in January of 2022. That's kind of how the property tax revenues distributed. And so although we expect property tax values to increase about 6% because of the one-time money that we got in January. because of the one-time money that we got in Genentech, or from Genentech in 2022, that settlement, that's why there's this note here that property tax overall for that category is expected to be right around where it was for 22 because of that one-time money. And then on the expenditure side, just want to call out on the personnel. The assumption is that we would have a seven and a half percent vacancy rate. And that's really based off of kind of the the current vacancy numbers that we're seeing right now. And next slide, please. So based off of those assumptions, this is our forecast for the general fund. Go over some of these elements. John, if you could pull up the highlighter. Thanks. And so for the the blue columns, those represent our expenses of the general fund, not including Measure M. The orange columns that are above represent our Measure M expenses. There's a gray line that goes across, which is our our general fund revenues without Measure M. And so as you see, it's kind of right around the top of our our general fund expenses. And there is a gap of around 3% if you go over through the five-year forecast that closes by fiscal year 27, where we're projecting that to be around a $3 million surplus. And then in total, for the city's general fund total revenues, we anticipate that at the end of fiscal year 23, that amount to be 132 million, gradually going up around 3 to 4% to 154 million at the end of 27. And so overall, for the general fund, we are projecting revenues to be higher than expenses. And that's represented by, if you look at fiscal year 24 through 27, there's this kind of green column towards the top of of those columns. And so that's, think of that as a general surplus. That's the the gap or the surplus, the difference between total revenues for the general fund and what we're projecting expenses to be. Next slide, please. And then for this slide, it's very similar to the last one with the exception being that red line. And, you know, with everything in the news right now related to, you know, gas prices, inflation and the R-word, which is recession, and that potentially could be looming. Maybe it's a year out, maybe it's sooner than that. We did want, part of financial planning is thinking of those types of things. And so what we've done here is added in a potential recession scenario. And we got this by looking back at sort of the Great Recession. And if we were to look at how the Great Recession tracked, the general fund saw revenues decline from 3 to 5% in two successive years before it started to go up. This isn't as dramatic as that. What we're forecasting here is more of a mild recession, where in fiscal year 23 and 24, rather than seeing that revenue grow about 3 to 4% every year, that remains flat for 23 and 24. And then in 25, you see this gradual increase of about 3%. But the the two lines that you want to compare here are the the gold line at the very top, which is our, what we think revenues will be like. And then the red line, which is under this recession scenario, what that would potentially look like. Next slide, please. And so this slide is our reserves based off of the non-recession scenario. And so for the the top two rows, this is what our general fund reserve is projected to be for fiscal year 23 through 27. And so if you notice, from 23 to 27, that amount stays consistent at 58 million. And the reason for that is, as was shown in the the slides, a couple, two slides ago, we are projecting revenues to be higher than expenses in total. But we also are assuming that, you know, based off of that, that rather than that money just sit in reserve or build the reserve, that the city would either spend that money or commit it to kind of new expenses. And that is why that stays consistent across the board because it's a balanced budget. And then in the middle of the chart on the right, you'll see this ADP payment. So the proposal here is for that 2.2 million every year to be paid out of Measure M in the reserves to address our unfunded liability, save on interest costs. And if we were to go, if council approves that, what that would do to the general fund reserve, as you'll see, is that at the end of 23, we'd be at 55 million or a 47% reserve. And at the 20, at the end of 27, we would be at a 36% reserve. So well above our our general fund policy of 16, 25% or two to three months. And that reserve is dropping because what we are doing is, that's on purpose. What we're doing is is not building up the reserve, but taking advantage of that money to save on long-term interest costs. Slide, please. And so the recommendation tonight is really to get feedback from council on all the different augmentation and items that were discussed earlier this evening. And then with that information, staff would put together the draft operating budget document, which would be made available prior to our Study Session Number Two on June 14th. Next slide, please. And then prior to kicking it off to questions, I just wanted to pass it on to City Manager to see if there's anything that he wanted to add.
Thank you, Ken and Leslie and John. Really appreciate the presentation. Council, tonight, we've, we've thrown a lot at you in our first part of the budget process. And it's, it's a little different than some of the past budgets that we've been through together. In 2020, we provided a very cautious and strategic budget, given the the beginning of the pandemic. For the 2122 budget, we had an open-for-business approach to to the budget because in response to opening back up for business and for getting out there and reconnecting with our community by putting money into Measure M and park improvements, and then responding to the new districts that had been voted in. And tonight, we present to you a bigger budget that addresses some of the big picture items that we talked about earlier. And and we felt it was important to do so because, again, if you look at the vision and and the the expectations that have been laid out by this council for, you know, that we highlighted and showcased in the state of the city, there's a lot going on. And we wanted to make sure that we put forth a a very purposeful budget for you to respond to those demands. As we pointed out, the city continues to grow. We continue to add more roadways, more parks, more landscape areas, more infrastructure, more buildings that need to to be maintained and managed. And so those all create bigger demands for our work, existing workload demands. And so in order to respond to those growing needs, in order to meet the service demands and meet the strategic plan priorities that council has identified, we wanted to make sure that we addressed all those things. And I believe that these augmentation requests, while, while many, as well as the services that we've asked for, not just the positions, I think will position us to address all those things that we need to address in order to accomplish that vision. And so I thank, I'd like to thank the departments for their very thoughtful considerations in their request before you tonight. I'd like to especially thank our budget team for all the work that they put together on this. This is just the first of the next couple of presentations. Hopefully, the sticker shock value next time won't be as big, but we wanted to make sure that we got this out to you tonight. So I thank the council and our team is available for any questions.
Go ahead and open up for public comment.
Hello, Alicia Minion. I want to apologize ahead of time that I missed part of the presentation. And, but I have some questions on what I did here. So one of the discussion items was prepaying the unfunded liability for safety, the, the, in terms of the CalPERS unfunded liability. And I heard this kind of 15-year timeline. And I heard this sort of savings number. It wasn't clear, is the savings number, is it a future value number or present value number? Number two, I was wondering, was there any other savings analysis done? For example, looking to maybe pay down miscellaneous? Miscellaneous employees do also have the PARS. A retirement benefit and PARS, as you know, or maybe you don't know. But PARS, the unfunded liability is the worst. It's the least funded between, you know, CalPERS for safety. I think safety is around 64-point-something funding ratio. And then the miscellaneous is maybe just a little bit better. They're almost equal. So with that in mind, in terms of this kind of the funding ratio being very similar, was there any analysis to show what the savings would be if you pay down, you know, if you split it between miscellaneous and safety? Because to me, there's a fairness issue. If if I was an employee in the miscellaneous group, I would say, well, well, it's kind of not fair because safety, their risk exposure is completely eliminated because you're paying down their entire unfunded liability. And I'm a miscellaneous employee, so I'm still exposed. So I'm not sure if you ran this by the unions or the union groups that represent miscellaneous. I would think that they would have a problem. So again, would, what would the savings be? Say, if you split it, split the pay down, whatever amount that's available to pay down your unfunded liability? What would it be if you pay down half to safety, like just split it up parata? Okay, between the amount of miscellaneous employees and safety employees? And then also, I was reading this study conducted by professor at UC Berkeley. And they brought up the fact that sometimes there's a risk to an overfunded pension. And that risk, for example, say you have a pension that's 90% funded. What they, what they found was, a lot of times, the the unions representing those employee groups with the 90-plus funding ratio, they might, they tend to negotiate for more retirement benefits. So you end up not really saving because they negotiate more retirement benefits because they can, because it's fun, it's fully funded, if that makes sense. Am I out of time?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Go ahead and close public comment, and I'll open up to Councilmember Sullivan.
Yeah, I'd love to answer those questions. So it was probably, it was covered in maybe one of the slides that was missed. So as far as the the miscellaneous and safety plan, there is a plan for both. And so what was covered in the slide related to Measure M is that because with the safety employees, they are funded through the general fund, with Measure M being in the general fund, what we would do is with the the Measure M money, that 2.2 million every year over 15 years, that would be used to address the safety plan. And that would save us, you know, potentially the $26.7 million that was referenced. For the miscellaneous plan, this is going back to in the December council meeting where we had the OPEB actuary present. The way that we forecast it out over the next five years is that our OPEB annual payment that we would have to make was going to be around nine and a half million, climbing up three and a half percent each year, so between nine and a half to $10 million. With the most recent valuation, that our unfunded liability for OPEB came down. And because of that, our annual payment also came down to where it's now in that $7.5 million range. And so as part of that evening, we had recommended to council that we take this savings during fiscal year 22 and make a $2 million payment to PERS. We applied that to the miscellaneous plan. With going forward, what we would plan to do is that rather than bank that savings between the nine and a half million and that seven and a half million every year, is we keep with our five-year forecast and that whole budgeting model of assuming it's that higher amount of 9 million. And then instead, take one and a half million of that rule, that true savings and use that to make annual payments to the the miscellaneous plan. So we are addressing both. It's Measure M for the safety plan and it's that OPEB savings for the the miscellaneous plan. And as far as the savings that that would achieve, so if we were to make the $2.2 million payments to safety for 15 years and the miscellaneous plan, 1.5 million over the next 15 years, it would be 20.3 million for miscellaneous and then 26.7 for safety. And so that might not have been really clear on the slide, but the plan would be for both and not to just address one of the plans. There was also the comment about, do we look at the PARS plans? We did. And the PARS does have a lower funded ratio than the the PERS plans. But the way that we are viewing this is that, yes, while the funded status is lower, the CalPERS plans, the unfunded liability is so much higher. I mean, we're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars with the PERS plans, whereas with the PARS plan, I believe our unfunded liability is 40 million. And so it's a matter also of like, when you look at the total debt, does it make more sense to to pay off the larger one or the smaller one, regardless of the funded ratio? On top of that, with the PARS plans and also our OPEB plan, those are are closed amortizations. And what I mean by that is, every year that we have a valuation done, whatever liability comes out of that, we're going to, our actuary would add that to the remaining life that we're going to pay then. I think for both, it's between 15 to 18 years. And so there is this closed plan for those, for PARS and OPEB. Whereas with PERS, every year that we have a valuation report, you can think of it as a new mortgage. And so what we're saying is, let's take the the basket of mortgage balances of 2020 and pay that off within 15 years. And and there might be new liabilities that come every year, but and we'll address that as they come along. But really, with PARS and OPEB, whereas that's a closed plan where we're adding in whatever new liability and not increasing the life of liability, how long we're going to pay that, PERS is different. And that's why we chose PERS. There was a question or a comment related to to overfunding the the plans. I mean, that's maybe something that we could consider, but, you know, we are quite a bit away from that conversation. And when we're talking about the combined plans, we're looking at 65%. And I think you could talk to actuaries or anybody. We need to get that funded ratio up. And so once we get to 80 or 90%, if we wanted to, if council would like to kind of think of maybe the strategy behind it, that's one thing, but I think we need to make better progress with that before that kind of factors in.
Thank you. Councilmember Sullivan?
Thank you. Chief, conceptual, I got two questions for you. Chief, just two quick follow-up questions. So the diversity piece, can you like dive into like this, is the the policy, the plan? Like, how exactly will this increase the diversity of the fire service? And then a follow-up question to that is, you know, ideally, I want to hear how you're going to do it. And then it'd be great if you can come back in a year or two and show us data. Like show us, you know, pre, you know, pre-program, here's the vacancy rate, here's the diversity rates for staff. And then, you know, maybe a year or two post-implementation, here's, here's how we made a difference. And so I love the idea, the concept, the diversity piece. I'm still a little curious as to how exactly you'll achieve that based on the the plan presented.
Sure, we're, we're, one of the things that I forgot to mention during my my presentation is we're really hoping to build off on the success that we've had with our our Explorer program. We've got pretty good diversity in that. And and the reason that we've got, I think the way we get diversity, we have, I have to balance two things, right? And I have to, I try, I have to try to increase diversity in in the fire service or in in our fire department, as well as make sure we have good qualified firefighters. And so that's a, that's a delicate balance. But I think the the way we do that and the the problem that we have right now with our recruitment and the reason we have so few candidates, and especially why we have so few diverse candidates, is because of the fact of our minimum requirements. Right now, our minimum requirements that of the folks that we try to hire is folks that have have had a fire academy under their belt, as well as most of the people that we're trying to hire have had, have gone through paramedic school. It's very difficult to navigate your way through that. As far as getting a fire academy is is not cheap, it's 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 pretty expensive. And then paramedic school is even more expensive than that. So the, 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 the candidates that we're looking for, the more diverse candidates, the disadvantaged candidates usually can't afford to get that education. And so this program recruits at a much lower level, requiring much fewer qualifications, if if that makes sense, right? And then we're, we're providing those qualifications for them. And so that's how we're trying to to increase the diversity. And then obviously, we're going to have to do targeted recruitments, you know, towards different communities, figure out, like, for example, I mean, I'm speaking for the the Asian community is, you know, you're, there are not a lot of Asian firefighters. And the reason there are a lot, not a lot of Asian firefighters is in our culture, that's not a, a career that's encouraged by our parents. So, you know, so we have to figure out, how do we get into the Asian culture and try to get more of those candidates into the African-American culture, you know? The difficulty, difficulty that we had in in the overall in the fire service is over the last two years, the number of female firefighters has actually decreased from 4% of the firefighters in the country down to 3%. So what, we have to figure out what's causing that and delve into that and try to figure out, you know, how how do we target our recruitment to get more of those folks?
Okay.
I hope that answers your question.
It it does. I got a couple of follow-ups on that as well. So I mean, I just, I think the intentionality there, really measuring those results and kind of being, you know, super specific about what we're trying to accomplish is very important. And again, you know, you have Apple Town where you've got, you know, 10% of the population is black, 40% or so is Latino. And I'd really like to see that representation, especially in the fire service. It's such a good-paying job here in town. And my my follow-up question to that, is there a economic cap? So if we're going to be paying tuition and sending folks to fire academies and spending all this money, in a lot of cases, we have folks that maybe have a lot of resources that maybe could afford to do that. So is there a, is there a income, you know, a lot of times with the FAFSA or scholars? or scholarships or things of that sort, you look at the parental income or the family income first. Are we making sure that families that can't afford to actually do this on their own are not also benefiting from the tax dollars that are intended for folks that are lower income or disadvantaged?
I haven't really considered that, and you know, really, as far as the, I haven't considered those details, if you will. I'm, I'm open to ideas. This is a concept that it still needs to be built out and, and developed. But really, I think where it's going to work is we really just need to target our recruitment.
Sure.
And, and make sure we get those folks where there's not a lot of requirements where, you know, so that they can enter our program.
Okay, great. And then my last question is, so if we put a trainee through this program and incur all this cost and do all these things, are you planning a time commitment? I mean, if they just go through it and they quit six months later, or what's, is there an obligation? Is there a, and maybe you haven't gotten this far in the program plan, but how do we make sure that that investment is actually worthwhile? It's not someone going through training to move on to somewhere else?
That's one of the things that we're, we're considering. We haven't worked those, again, we haven't worked those specific details that, you know, we've got to look at, I mean, there, there's some history there as far as, I know that there, in the past, there had been some departments that have sent candidates through paramedic school, and then they ask them to, to sign a two-year contract or a three-year contract. What I'm really hoping to provide is that by us providing this opportunity for, for folks, that we gain loyalty, you know? So I, I don't necessarily want to tie somebody to our, our, our organization, if you will. But, you know, it, it's something that I'm willing to consider.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I look forward to hearing more about the program details. It is a sizable expense, and again, you know, the goal is really diversity and, and expanding that, that pipeline. I'd love to see you really intentionally focus on that. And I think that'll take, you know, some tweaks and some adjustments and some, some hard edges on the policy, unfortunately. But I think it's a really cool idea, and I look forward to seeing the progress. Thank you. Follow-up question?
Yeah. Yeah, I get it. Move on to Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you so much. As such a follow-up question, I'll try to, in my mind, I had to stretch it differently, but it was, I'll try to reverse engineer up to what Councilman Sullivan was saying. You know, you and I had a great conversation, well, almost a year ago. I was dressed as Officer Hightower, it's kind of appropriate, talks about diversity inclusion. And me and Chief had a very heart-to-heart conversation as I was, had a little fake mustache and the whole, whole nine. But we were talking about the diversity and how much, you know, it really means for me to have people that look like the Chief myself as a part of this community that are also serving in uniforms as a fire police. And we really just really dove in, had like a one-off conversation. And myself, and I'm not very passionate, and I, I know a lot of us here are very passionate about this program, and it's something that I'm really excited about because, you know, diversity, equality, inclusion is, is a buzzword, but it really means something. I shared, I shared experience, I, I follow a few sites. One is African-American firefighters, and they have like a fitness program nationwide. But they did an amazing thing last year. They did a skit, they passed their hats from screen to screen and sped up in those departments all over the country. And it was like strong, very proud men, and actually, actually fortunately, there was no female, but men firefighters. And it was really touching for me to see that many African-American men was proud to serve their communities throughout the country. And like, whatever it takes to bring it here, we are 10% population. And I would love nothing more than to see a fire truck go by and see it reflect the rainbow, reflect all of us. And I think the pilot program, you know, you give people opportunity, and I've, I've expressed to you, you know, it is expensive, there's a barrier. Certain families that people can afford to take a year and a half timeout and fund their kid through the programs, others can't. So there's a lot of kids that love to be a part of it. And you give someone an opportunity, and there's no contract needed. The gratitude and appreciation they're going to have, they'll be, they'll be committed to both the police and fire. I mean, if you give them opportunity and show them that you actually care about them, I, I think there's, you have a hard time getting them out of the station. I really believe it, and I'm really passionate about helping you guys in any way possible. I mean, I think, you know, I want to think bigger. I think this is time to think big, but, you know, we have to, recruiting is a big part in getting people in the community. So there's the group of African-American firefighters, they're doing something in Atlanta, Georgia is awesome. They're going to the local high schools, and they're walking in in their uniforms, and they're talking to the kids, and they're explaining to them this very, very opportune time that, hey, you guys have this camaraderie, this team, this team unit, you love, you love your fellow teammates. Join the fire department, and police are just like that. And they kind of put that inception in their mind that the same feeling you have camaraderie for your brothers and sisters, mostly your brothers on the football field, you can have that in the, in the fire department, and it's working. Like, there is a explosion of African-American firefighters in Atlanta. There's a high proportion of African-Americans in Atlanta, but it's, it's happening. And so they're, they're seeing this way to like really say, aha, you can have that kind of feeling. And there's actually a job that does that too. You're helping people, and you're having this kind of, this kind of camaraderie kind of feeling at the same time. You know, and it's a long conversation, I just wanted like, with a special mind, kind of talk on that, I think it's awesome. So I mean, whatever we can do to help you with this pilot program, and I just, I want to be able to propel out and really just grab those young kids that look like me and you to really just kind of put in their mind, you can do this. And it's like, it's like a saying in the black community, stimulus for them. I wish we can break that and make sure that there's certain industries that people feel that there isn't this invisible barrier to enter, and they can be part of police, part of fire, they can join these amazing industries they feel like, oh, why even try? So whatever we can do to really embrace it, oh, I'm here for you. But then the budget, so, yeah, I feel like the budget, it was like, it's exciting, it's like there's four corners of this budget. Police, fire, Parks Rec, and, and, what's it, police, fire, and Public Works. And it actually housing too. You know, every, every portion of this is going to see a benefit. And the ask, it's really, it's really lubricating the engine. We have to make sure that we provide the tools, let you guys do your job. And we're low, we're low on staff, and I watch Public Works every single day. It's a buster, but, like, buster, but I go to the gym, it's too much information. But every day, like, I'm a great hard day, like, six o'clock in the morning, seven, and I wave every single day at them just doing work that no one sees. And every department needs help. And so I think this addresses everything in some incremental way, and I think it's awesome. And I love the, the money, you know, Alicia, I mean, you talked about, like, I think it's a very big benefit. The acceleration of the amortization schedule, paying the debt down at 15 years, I hope you all agree, it's a lot faster than 20, 20's stupid. 15's better. The money we're going to save at paying it down by, at 15 years, it's going to give us more time to build a war chest for Measure M with life on it, and the funds will come in. I think it's just, it's an awesome, awesome opportunity to take a time, time and frame of life in a city where we have excess funds and do the right thing with it. Because if we do the wrong thing, it will spin to somewhere or another. But by paying that debt down at $26 million, that's awesome. And then it gives opportunity to kind of recalibrate, figure out how we kind of move the city forward in a more appropriate way. So that was a long rant, but I mean, I just really appreciate Chief, like, you know, the conversation we had, and Chief's sponsor, it's like, it's just, it's a great opportunity to really, really grow the two departments. And I would love to, to do what we can and make it happen.
Councilmember Wiley?
All right, I'll follow up on the finance part, and then I do have a question for the chief as well. So I do appreciate the report, I feel like it was detailed and gave us a lot of information and answered questions that, you know, would come up. And I do understand that we need this augmentation because of the growth of the city. We've seen a lot of things happen, and we've made a lot of requests, so it's sensible. And I assume that there was a lot of robust discussion when they were deciding which ones were going to make the cut and which 11 were going to have to wait again because, you know, not everything that was requested was approved. So I assume that there was a lot of discussion, and people were able to weigh in and give their reasons on why they were supporting that before the decision was made, since we weren't, weren't hearing that. Also, when we had the discussion a while ago about the downtown specific, it was mentioned that they might come back another time. Do you anticipate if this, if, I know we want to prove it tonight, but if we go through the process, that this, this budget augmentation will be pretty much what we need? Or do you think, oh, we'll need to come again in six months and say, well, now we need this, and now we need that?
So for that question related to the downtown specific plan, Mr. City?
No, I'm talking about you as, as this. I mean, I was just gave us, if they ask it, I mean, they said they would. But do you, do you anticipate the finance department will also be coming back to say, we're going to need more in six months? Or do you think that this is pretty much good for right now?
Are you talking about the downtown specific plan in this case, or just for everything?
I'm talking about your plan.
Oh, for my plan?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think we would be coming back with anything close to this as far as, you know, a dollar ask.
So this is, this is what you need, and it should hold us for a while?
Correct.
All right, all right, that's what I wanted to know as far as that, the finance department. And I will also say, you know, with Public Works, I'm glad to see that there are like seven positions being added because I know that that department has needed a lot of help. And just like this week with the signs, I'm really happy to say that Public Works was out there, shout out to Public Works, putting up the new street signs and things. But then I talked to the guys that were doing it, and they said, well, because we're doing this, we can't be doing these other jobs because there's not enough people to do all the jobs. So I understand why they're on the list of being funded for jobs. So thanks for the finance information. And then Chief, I had a question for you as well. So when you kept talking about pilot program, are you talking about a one-year pilot? Because like our district thing is a five-year pilot, and sometimes it's more. So do you think in one year, you'll have enough information to see how it's working?
Yeah, this is, we want to pilot the, the program, we want to, we want to prove the concept. And we'll know by the end of the year whether it's worthy to, to continue it or, or make it a, a smaller program. Either expand it beyond, you know, I've, I've got this grand vision that, of this program that, that I've still got to work a couple of details out. But by the end of this year, I'll know whether or not I, I can, you know, work towards, we can work towards expanding it or make it a smaller program.
And then I know, I haven't looked into this recently, but I know that in the past, several people were attending like a fire school at Solano Community College. Do they still have a fire school? Or is that the academy, or is the academy separate? Or will, will that be any part of this program?
They have a fire academy at Solano, they have a whole fire technology program at Solano Community College, and they also have a fire academy there. We hold our own academy. And as far as this apprentice program, what we're hoping to do is, is through on-the-job training, they'll have a, they'll complete a task book that they'll, that will eventually end up in them having the same certification as if they went through that firefighter one academy at Solano Community College, I hope that makes sense.
So are there just, do you know, are there not many people that graduate from that? Or the people that graduate that are not very diverse? Or do you, it, it seems like if this local, they would provide something for us, but maybe they're just not meeting the mark or something?
They have a little more diversity, but not a lot of diversity. Yeah.
And I really support apprenticeship programs, you know, I think that's really great when, when people can get on-the-job training and see exactly what it is. And that's oftentimes better than, you know, taking classes and going over here. So I appreciate the idea behind an apprenticeship program. The last question I have, you may not be able to answer just off the top of your head, but our current firefighter force, how many are, are they, are most of them like closer to retirement? Are they closer to new hires? Do we have a lot of people in the middle? Or do we have people at both ends? How does the current spectrum of firefighters go as far as needing to fill those spots? Or do we just have a lot of vacancies that are currently needing to be filled?
Right now, we have four existing vacancies that we were unable to fill even with our last recruitment. And then we have another, we have another three firefighters that are in testing processes with other departments, so we may lose them, up to three people. So that's going to be seven vacancies. And then we have another four anticipated retirements by the end of this year. We were looking at the, it's not guaranteed that they will retire, but we're looking at the age and the, the years of service of all of our firefighters. And we are anticipating that we are going to need an academy, at least an academy a year for probably the next five to six years. And that academy is at least six to eight firefighters per year.
And how long does an academy last?
16 weeks.
16 weeks?
Yes.
All right, and then like, just as long as we're talking about current staffing. So if, if this was approved and there was the new fire captain, so would that probably be someone from within that promotes up?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you very much for the information.
You're quite welcome.
Councilmember Stockton?
Oh, thank you. Good questions from my colleagues. I know we ask a lot of Aaron, and I know we ask a lot of the staff, and it sounds like this is what it's going to take to get some of those things done. So I really appreciate the time and effort that everyone, Ken and your team, put together to, to bring this to us so that we can be more effective in trying to get so much done that we kind of push on, on all of you. So thank you for that. I did have a couple of questions as well. I'll start with the chief, since he sat down again, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I can use the exercise.
So it's, it's, I like your plan. I, I think anything that we can do to encourage everyone to be a part of, of public service is a good thing. I am not as familiar with the way that a fire academy works versus a police academy. So, so thank you for, for taking the time to answer those questions. If you were to have your own training facility, could you partner with the college or provide certifications that would maybe increase the amount of people that you would have to pull from? And what I, what I mean by that is, if Solano, I mean, you're going to have people competing for all of the folks that are going through Solano's program. If you have your own program that you could offer these scholarships to or these incentives to, is that something that's possible if you had the training facility with all the equipment and things like that?
Definitely, that would be a possibility.
So in addition to the biotech, you know, I, you know, initiative and ISO ratings going down and saving people millions of dollars that could actually help us hire good people here? The other question that I have is, I know that in other jurisdictions, fire departments as well as ambulance services, which we're fortunate enough that you handle through your department, but police departments, nurses and doctors are partnering with public safety academies like the one in Fairfield. If the school district or charter schools were to put together an initiative like that, would you anticipate that you and your staff would be willing to be a part of it or assist or volunteer with those kids?
Absolutely, yeah. We're actually, we've, one of our firefighters is actually actively working on, trying to be more involved with some of the public safety classes that are going on in the backable schools right now, teaching CPR, stop the bleed and, and things like that. And we want to insert ourselves into that quite a bit more. And then, and we see that as well as the fire, or the public safety academy in Fairfield as, and, and the, and the, all the local high schools and, and the, and the kids that are interested in careers in public safety. Those are, that's, that's kind of what we see as kind of our recruitment field, if you will, our initial recruitment field.
Because I'm on their advisory committee, and I can tell you, it's one of the most diverse schools, I think, in our area, and it's exciting to see, you know, that many kids that are looking to, to serve and wear a uniform like you were talking about as well. So, so thank you for that. You're good, I'll call you again, I promise. My next question is, you know, I, I think that Councilwoman Wiley asked some questions about not wanting to come back. I know that there's a lot of vacancies in our, throughout, throughout the department, and there was a couple of things that it sounded like you anticipated coming back on, including a dispatcher position. And I was wondering if, I know we have fire season coming up, summer's coming up. I was wondering how many vacancies we might have in our dispatch center over at the police department, and whether or not we should just address those concerns now? Because if there's that, if they're short that many people, I know it takes time to hire and catch up, and this might be able to provide some buffer if there are retirements or people leaving.
Right, we've, we just had a few retirements that we were able to backfill early for thanks to, to some work with HR. So right now, we're, I believe, one position unfilled. We have four in training, but as you know, with dispatch training, it takes an incredibly unique person to, to actually finish that. So with the two that have been allocated for, for this portion of the budget, I think we would probably be approaching a mid-year review anyways to get that third one a good look. So I, I did feel comfortable that, that those two are good for, for right now.
Okay, because I know we just lost Casey Bradford, and she clearly has, probably does the job of two dispatchers at a lot of places. She's wonderful, and I wish her well in her retirement. But I do know- But I do know how, you know, it can be easily overlooked, some of the dispatchers and everything that they do, but they're the ones that help get the fire department where they need to be, get, you know, make sure that the police department or everybody knows where you guys are at too. So I just want to make sure if you need them that you ask.
Very much appreciated. Yeah, and their, their job, and especially in a city our size, they do everything, whereas some of the larger agencies are just dedicated call takers or dedicated fire dispatchers. But in our agency in Fairfield and similar, it's, they do everything. So, thank you.
Let's see here. Checking my notes. On slide 12, you talked about public outreach tools. Can you explain a little bit to us what those are and how they're going to work?
Yes, I can speak to that for you. Hold on, let me just find my backup here. Okay, so then for our public information office, we have the total of, was it 100, yeah, 109,000 here. So we have 40,000 for consulting services, 14,000 for website enhancements, including language translation, 8,500 for live-use cellular service to broadcast live from any location, 15,000 for advertising, 10,000 for printed outreach materials and utility bill inserts, additional 6,000 for training, and 12,500 for subscription services, including Constant Contact, HootSuite, Informsec, and other applications that the department's using.
Okay, thank you for that detailed description. I appreciate it. And then there was also, I think on the same page, 40, it might have been a different one, I apologize, but the, no, there it is, the Walter Graham Aquatic Center Maintenance. Is this just one-time maintenance, or is this something that we do every year?
This would be ongoing, going forward. And so we haven't had this, and since the pool has had so much capital improvement done to it, it's the ongoing going forward for our Public Works Department.
To maintain the pool.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that's it.
Councilmember Sova?
Thank you. Chief Smolchler, just, just a quick question. You mentioned a real-time crime center. So had a lot of great experiences doing ride-alongs, kind of saw how that technology that, that you're requesting funds for to support, got to see it, you know, in action. So what would be different from the real-time crime center versus what, why is that needed versus what's established now?
So currently, for instance, with the, the flock camera system, once a license plate that's a hit goes through, usually within about five to 10 seconds, a dispatcher is notified. And oftentimes, most times, they're able to get that information out to units in the field pretty quickly. But if, if there's, you know, multiple 911s coming in or a fire incident's taking place, they might not get that, get that information for, for an extended period of time, maybe up to a minute to two minutes. That's just one example. A real-time crime center essentially takes all the monitors that we have in the dispatch center now, which have all the camera feeds from the City Hall campus to Andrews Park to all of these cameras discussed in the ALPR system. And then we have it staffed with individuals that have the training to be able to listen to a call for service or hear a call or see a call come in on, on the CAD system, say a theft in progress, and immediately be able to access cameras to begin looking for identified license plates or vehicles that fit descriptions that are provided by the victims, victim businesses, and be able to, through those cameras, kind of track almost in real time where that, that person is. So those are just a couple of examples of what real-time crime center can do that dispatch has too many, way too many other, like we were talking about earlier, way too many other responsibilities to take care of. So it's a dedicated system that looks at, at, at all the technology that's coming in.
How much of a, kind of side note on that, how much of a concern is there like with no license plates or obstructed license plate covers?
Yeah, that, that used to be a much bigger concern prior to the state of California actually giving out the, the sort of license plates that you see now. We had the, we had the red tags that were in the back windows that had like a big number nine for September. Those, those were fraudulent all the time. But now the state of California, anytime you buy a, a used car, either from a dealership or from, if you're buying it from a, a private individual, you're still going to have the other, the normal license plate that's on it. But there's always supposed to be something in that plate area per the California DMV and for the, the vehicle code. So vehicles that don't have anything there, that's automatic probable cause to, to contact that person. We have had, had folks come into town that have done thefts typically and that have taken their plates off prior to the theft because they know that ALPR systems exist, so they don't want to be tracked. But again, that stands out significantly now when everybody should have something in, in their license plate frame that has a California tag on it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just feedback for the team. You know, so far, like I appreciate the effort on the quote-unquote "safety plan." So, you know, I, I think it's a smart move to pay down that, that debt sooner. So just some feedback on that. Nice layout of the presentation. Last points to Chief Conception, I got some questions.
No jam tomorrow.
So, I appreciate the effort, questions, questions last recommendations, however. One of the concerns, you know, so I want to be more open and transparent. I think when there's a good quality income associated with certain positions and we're, we're struggling on recruiting, I, I question if it's, to me, a lot of times it's, I question how we're going about recruiting, what, what the image is, and what, what actually lures people to that particular profession. So like in general, I'm still kind of, you know, I question as far as how we're addressing the workforce shortage. So I got one more point after Chief, so I apologize to everybody. But in this sense, is there, so there, and I've been, we've talked about it before, but there's always this perception that a lot of times you have to know somebody to be hired to be a firefighter. And I think the other side of that, this is really messages for everybody out there, if there's, you know, I think there's a lot of opportunities in many different fields now to where there is an opportunity for people to, to pursue that particular field that they're interested in. So if the goal is to quote-unquote diversify, or really the goal is for you to pursue your, your dream to work in a certain profession, now is a better time more than any to be able to kind of break those barriers. So with that said, in this particular situation, will there be any constraints as to far as who would not qualify for this program? So family members or something like that? So lots, like sometimes like if you, certain companies will have like scholarships or internships, and they'll say, any, family members of employees are not eligible of some sort. Is there any, any mechanism being discussed?
There's one, there's one family member that wouldn't be eligible, that'd be my family members that wouldn't be eligible. But no, that wasn't, that's not in the plan. I mean, it's, it, I, I understand what you're saying, but you know, we, we still need to leave this open to, you know, it still needs to be open to everybody. It's, and this, this, as far as what you're saying, that, that you got to know somebody to become a firefighter, that's kind of, I, I know that perception is out there from some, some of the folks, I kind of resent it, but, but that's kind of what this program is aimed at breaking that perception down, if you will, because we're really, we're really introducing, kind of what we're doing with our explorer programs, we're, we're introducing the, the firefighter career as a possible career to these folks that, as you said before, have never considered it as a possibility, right? You know, like me growing up, I never considered it as a possibility to be a firefighter because my parents absolutely discouraged it. I mean, personal story is, and I've told people, my mom cried when I told her I was going to be a firefighter, and she didn't cry tears of joy, she cried tears of disappointment. So, and, and that's just, and those are the things that we have to, we have to look into. How do we, how do we break those barriers down? How do we introduce this, this fire service career to those communities and, and let them know and educate them that it's a, it's a possible career? Because it's a good-paying, very rewarding career.
Yeah, and I would agree with that. And I, and Tuck, you are, you're a living example of that those opportunities are there to move up, even when you may, you may think that they're not. So the other question I have is, I'm ignorant in the sense, as the, so a, the position that's going to teach this, I'm looking at this as a teacher perspective. So I know my salary to teach, so why, why, can you please explain more, why is that particular position, that status necessary?
The fire captain position is not just going to be the, the training officer, if you will. It will, they will be, they will be the ones that will be, that individual will be the one that will be responsible for developing the program, working out all the details, writing the manual on what this program will be, overseeing the recruitment of these apprentices, and then overseeing the training of the, of the, of the apprentices. So it's, it's more of an administrative position than it is a training position, or a teaching position, if that makes sense.
Okay. All right, all right, that's good. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Okay, sorry. I know it's late, 30 seconds. It's actually, I think, Councilman Stockton sparked the license plate reader, so Chief, you can stay there, it's okay. It actually, I had an aha moment when I actually saw, essentially seeing these proposals and buzzer augmentations and what they could actually come to life. And you started to think about how these, on paper, you know, you look at it, but when you see this dollar, the dollar cost averaging, what it really does in real tangible life. I had experienced it a little bit ago, like six months ago. That was a, that Saturday, I was carrying a whole bunch, a whole bunch of stuff out of Lowe's, and all of a sudden, I'm carrying stuff out, and then a cop car comes, and it's tees off right in front of me. So no one else knew I was a city councilperson. I looked like a guy carrying stuff out of Long Deville, and everybody's looking like, oh, what's happening? And as an officer, I knew the officer, so I just started talking. And no sooner than about a minute after talking, his radio goes off, and he's like, Richie, hold on, hold on, hold on. And shots fired, report in Fairfield, guy was in a, a ball in a shooting, shootout from, from this car into a neighborhood, and he took off, they caught his license plate, and I'm there with my kit and right out of Lowe's, and they were able to catch him in Fairfield, find out the car he's in. He sure as heck got off in Vacaville, and he pulled right into the plaza in a tree where the, the roundabout is by the Nike, to kind of chill out and wait. So all these kids, by cone of ice, by waiting in line from Nike, were 20 feet from a guy that's just got in a shootout, and no one knew, except for the police in Fairfield and Vacaville. And so he literally just ripped out of the parking lot, and they were able to apprehend him before he had a chance to hide out. It's all because of these license plate readers. So it's, you know, on paper, it, it, some things don't really seem practical, but I had an opportunity to see firsthand, I mean, everyone in that plaza had no idea that a guy was just, just came off a shooting and was just hanging out in a neighborhood right there, waiting to figure out if he's going to get caught or not. So these things work, and so it is, it's awesome to see firsthand. First, people thought I was probably stealing stuff out of Lowe's, but then they, the cop takes off and, and goes, and really just, they just, between communication between Fairfield and Vacaville, that fast with this technology, kept one person out of our community that just caused a crime, another. So this stuff works. So that's it.
Thank you. So a couple of comments. Yeah, as far as the additional positions go, yeah, fully support what you guys need because you know where the need is within your departments. And honestly, it is kind of self-serving because it's better you can provide services, less emails we get about not being able to provide additional services because you are short-staffed. Yeah, and just as you, as you go, if you have struggles with recruitment and retention, bring those up as needed. As far as the additional payments for, which we talked about before, yeah, I think that's a great plan. I really like the 15-year plan. Would there be any benefits going even more aggressive, like a 10-year plan? Would there be additional cost savings, or would it be worth it to go that aggressive? Or is the 15-year plan what you figured would be the optimum?
Sure. So if we went with the 10-year plan, there would be more savings with that. I think where I would throw caution out there is that, just kind of going back a week ago with the discussion on, like, is it redevelopment? Is it development? Is it the, the sports complex or kind of the other, addressing the other parts? I'd say until that, I guess further discussion happens there, I'd be hesitant to kind of put more money out there.
Yeah, puts a little more strain on the, on the funds.
Yeah, so what we would be seeing, I want to, I'm kind of going off the top of my head, but I think it's 2.2 million under the 15-year plan. I think if you were to do a 10-year plan, it jumps up to like $5 million a year, I want to say.
Gotcha. And then I know you briefed a slide on potential recession, which I know a lot of people are talking about. Do you have certain trigger points or decision points on where you need to adjust those additional fundings if we did hit a recession?
Sure. So it would be very similar to kind of going back two years ago when we were preparing the 21 budget and then the start of COVID, and there was a lot of talk out there and sort of the doom and gloom. And so it would be a similar exercise to that where, you know, we would get all the departments together, look at services and supplies, look at what you typically see with budget savings is more of the capital improvements, kind of deferring those costs out. And as far as tracking it, just for the general fund, we're primarily funded by sales tax and property tax. With property taxes, I'd mentioned in the presentation, for our revenues for '23, those are set because they were based, they're based off of values as of January '22. And so if there was a recession and affected the housing market, it wouldn't be till fiscal year '24 where we really see that. But with sales tax, there's a two-month lag. And so we're, we get monthly allocations from the state, we're watching that, HDL's watching that. And so if we're starting to see the sales tax trend go down, then that would be, as part of the quarterly updates, we would be sure to mention that, that's kind of how we're, we're tracking it as far as our two biggest revenue sources and cost saving. We would approach it very similar to how we did it two years ago.
Okay, thank you. For Chief, just a comment, you know, I have to walk out of the podium. One of the things I'd look at is working closely with the base because they have their TAPS program, their transition assistance, and because you have a lot of guys that already work as part of teams, fairly trained up, I mean, they do have some firefighters in the Air Force already, but you also have people that can tap in tuition assistance and GI Bill help pay for those paramedic certifications themselves. What's up? Yeah, you can come up.
Thank you for saying that. I actually just had a conversation with Joe Dingman, the executive director of Travis Air Force Base, and I was telling him about the, the program, and we're, we're going to meet pretty soon to talk about possibilities of transitioning some of those folks, and they have really good diversity in their ranks.
Okay, another good partnership would probably be, I mean, because I'm, so, I'm part of the organization, but the National Guard is, and they just set a partnership with CAL FIRE, and so they have people that apply and go through the Guard, and they just, CAL FIRE just hired, I think, 72 National Guard members that went through their program as an apprenticeship. Granted, Wildland Fire is a little bit different and quicker timeline than City Fire, but might be another good method to look out to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? So you imagine you have what you need from them?
Yes, thank you very much for your feedback tonight.
And 9C is when we move to the?
Correct.
All right, move on to item 9D.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. This next item before you is a status update on the North Village Area Plan 2 project. Our senior planner, Senior Planner Al Borghino is here to make a presentation for the council.
City Mayor, before we get started, Roy Stockton.
Tonight, to avoid any potential conflict of interest, I am recusing myself from participating in business item 9D regarding the North Village Development Project Status Update because my residence is located in the area close to the project. I will now leave the dais and remain in the audience, but only as a member of the public and not in any official capacity as a city council member or an elected official.
All right, good.
Thank you, City Manager Bush, and good evening, City Council. The item before you tonight is a general business item. It is the North Village Area Plan 2 project. And there is a request that goes along with this business item for tonight. And there is a request that goes along with this business item for tonight. And what the city is requesting is that the city council review the changes as part of the presentation tonight for these proposed land use layouts in this North Village Area Plan Two, and that the city council might determine that the proposed changes that have occurred are consistent with the original merit hearing that was determined by the city council in February 12th of 2019. So let's set the stage for where North Village is. It's located in northeast corner of the city. It is bound by Midway Road and the city limits to the north, 505 to the west, Vacavalle Parkway to the south, and Leisure Town Road to the east. A little bit of background about this project. The merit hearing first became, was first brought forward to the city council in 2019. And this merit hearing was to request a blessing from the city that there might be merit, there might be reasoning or good purpose behind making an amendment to the city's general plan for this North Village Parkway. And that proposal was presented to city council to request for that. And city council at that time determined that there was merit, there was reason for going on this journey of conducting further analysis to see whether or not these proposed changes by the applicant, Discovery Builders, was a good idea. And so following that action in June 2019, the applicant submitted their application for that amendment to the Area Plan Two. That application went through a review process with the city, and the city provided comments back to the applicant, requesting some additional information, but also presenting design considerations and issues that needed to be worked out through the process. And so the developer took that information and worked with their consultants and resubmitted a project in June of 2020. And then the city went through another process of reviewing that information and provided more comments to developer. And this is routine for very large projects that occur. And then in September 2021, the applicant again submitted another alternate plan to address more of city's comments. And then finally, we saw one last revision presented by the applicant to address the last bit of comments that the city had, and that was submitted to the city in April 2022. But there were some changes that were done to that original land use plan that was presented to city council in 2019. And so staff felt it necessary to present those changes to council, to inform the council about what has occurred, and to request that whatever these changes are that we'll be going into are consistent with what was originally presented, that there is still merit for this, that there's still reasoning to pursue this. And then city staff would continue down that process of conducting the analysis and present it for further public hearings. So this is what the North Village specific plan looked like when it was adopted in 1995. You'll see there is a business park portion in blue, a commercial portion in red, down by Vacavalle Parkway, North Village Parkway, with the Salona College site in purple, and then residential spread throughout with open space in the middle of Gibson Canyon Creek. And then you'll see that development to the north, near Midway Road. And this is what that plan looked like in 1995, when it was adopted by city council. So what is North Village? Well, recap about what it was. It's a master plan development that was approved in 1995. It consists of 880 acres, and there are two planning areas. There is a total of 2,499 units that were originally adopted with that specific plan, consisting of both single-family and multifamily. There was commercial, business park, land uses, a public college, which is there right now, a public elementary school, private swim club, public parks, public open space. Now, construction of this specific plan started in 2003. So there was a brief period where the developer was working with various agencies to procure the necessary mitigation for their development project. And so that, from between 1995 and 2003, they were working on getting all those permits, and so they broke ground and started work in 2003. So this is where the area plans are divided. You'll see Area Plan One has, consists of the primary development. You'll see Area One has units one through five, and then Unit Six is closer to 505, and then Unit Seven is currently under construction, and the development for that is getting very close to finishing up development, possibly by the end of this year. Area Two is not yet developed, and so as time progresses, the projects changes, methods changes, land use layouts can change. And so with Discovery Builders having this project and having it adopted in 1995, they have presented a proposal to revise this Area Plan Two to make it more current with today's methods for how you lay out development throughout cities. So this North Village specific plan, just to kind of recap about what these Area Plan One and Two looks like, Area Plan One, 368 of those acres, it's going to total up about 1348 units with single-family and multifamily. There is commercial land use reserved out there, as well as business park area reserved for future development, and then there's open space, the public park, Cordero's Park. There was a designation for a school site, but in 20, I think it was 2011 or 2012, that designation had, needed to be moved because it conflicted with compatibility with the Nut Tree Airport. And so it was identified in Area Plan One, and as part of this proposal, the applicant is looking to move that designation to Area Plan Two. The approved, the adopted 1995 description for Area Plan Two would consist of 468 acres with 1,151 units, again, consisting of single-family and multifamily, with open space, a public park, and a private swim club. That's what was adopted in 1995. The developer is looking at amending Area Plan Two. So this is an exhibit that was provided by the applicant in 2019. On the left of your screen, you'll see what the existing general plan looked like. On the right of your screen is what was presented to the city council in 2019 that was considered. City council said, this revision that's on the right-hand side has merit. We would like to perform that analysis. We would like to look at it in greater detail and hear what comes of it. This is the change that occurred on the right side of your screen. Again, for context, on the left side of your screen, you're seeing the existing general plan. On the right side are the revisions that have come from the culmination of city staff and the developer working together to develop a plan that complies with city standards, that complies with general plan policies, and gets the best that we can get for Vacaville. But there are some changes that are different between the proposed general plan that was in 2019 and this new proposed that came in April of 2022. And this is what the comparison looks like. Here's a table that was also included in the staff report. And really, what you're seeing is changes to the land use in columns 2019 and 2021. The low-density acreage did increase, the low-medium acreage did decrease. The medium density increased also, as well as the high density slightly increased. But the total unit count for this project in Area Plan Two is 1,251. The public park space did increase from 6.1 acres to 10 acres. And the open space decreased slightly from 232 acres to 226. So here are the major changes that occurred between 2019 and the 2022 proposal that was brought back to city staff. Really, one of the most notable changes that occurred was this high-density residential site. I'll go back to the slide just briefly to show context. The original proposal showed the high-density site located at the corner of Midway Road and the future North Village Parkway extension. Working with the developer, that changed so that way we could locate that high-density site closer to the park. The main reason for this was that a lot of those units are going to have balconies. Their own private space is very small, two-story, anything above the ground floor would have 50 square feet for balconies, anything on the ground floor would have 100 square feet. Granted, they would have their own private clubhouse or swimming pool, whatever's usually associated with it. But the city staff, working with the developer, found it necessary to get the highly-dense residential units closer to that park and closer to that school site that you'll see on there. So that way you can reduce the amount of travel time for that many residents. You can get them easier access to the park. The second notable change is the park size. It did increase from 6.1 acres to eight acres. This showed the original park size and the open space size that was located at the northeast corner of the project. The open space primarily a basin, and then the park size you'll see there. Working with the developer, that park size increased. It also relocated so that way we could have it adjacent to the school site for joint use with the school. And then you'll see that open space area designated for that detention basin. And the last notable change was that there were some changes to the unit mix. While we did say that the low-density acreage increased, the low-density unit count decreased. And what we got in exchange was an increase to the low-medium densities and the medium densities. The original project for Area Plan Two didn't include any duets. And so the revision that's being proposed by the applicant includes that medium density. It did increase the amount of area, and it is increasing the amount of duets that are being proposed for this Area Plan Two. So that summarizes the changes that have occurred between that original merit hearing that occurred in 2019, and then the most recent changes that have been presented to staff. Again, the whole purpose behind this is to provide a status update to city council and to make you aware that these changes have occurred. We're trying to be transparent and make sure that the public is aware. But we do find that these changes are still consistent with the original intent that was presented to city council in 2019, which is, we have an Area Plan Two, it's outdated. The applicant is looking at making changes to that Area Plan Two, and they want to update it, they want to bring some new things to the city. And so with that, there is a recommendation for city council, and we're requesting that you would determine that the revised North Village Area Plan Two land use layout is consistent with the original city council's merit hearing determination from 2019. Should you choose that it is consistent, city staff would move forward with preparing the staff reports and presentations that would be necessary to go to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Planning Commission, and eventually city council. That is it for my presentation. The applicant, Doug Chen, with Discovery Builders, is also here to answer any questions.
All right, I'll go ahead and open up for public comment.
My name is Roy Stockton. I live in North Village. I own real property in North Village, and so I have some questions about the adopted, or about the merit process. One of my first question is, when was the first house sold in Area Plan One? What plan was it prior? Was it under the same plan that was approved by council in 1995? Or was it from the May 17th, 2019 merit, the first change that came? Also, on slide five, can you bring up slide five, please? I believe that on Crescent, it shows some commercial property. I'm curious as to what happened to that property and where that stands now, if there's still the possibility that they're going to develop some commercial property there where it was zoned, or if that has changed. And then lastly, if the school district doesn't purchase the property that is ordering the park in the newest plan, my question is, would that, would that land be available for, is it only the school district can purchase it? Or would it be available for other people to purchase it in lieu of it becoming more homes? And that's it.
Are you able to answer any Councilmember Stockton's?
Yes, and just as a disclaimer to the city council, a lot of these questions are questions that will be answered as part of the city staff's effort to present more detailed information to the decision-makers later on date. The action before you tonight is whether or not these changes are consistent with 2019. So to answer some of those questions, first one being, when was the first home built? It would have had to been after 2003, which is when they started construction. Was, were those first homes built consistent with the original 1995 plan? The answer is yes, they were. Everything that has been built in Area Plan Two has been consistent with that 1995 plan. This proposal would not change anything in Area Plan One. This is just for Area Plan Two. The commercial property, yes, there is still designated land that is available for development, for future commercial development, and that, the analysis that will be presented for city council will contain some information that describes at what point during the development review process or the construction process for this area, would it support the development of a supermarket for this area? And then the school district property, clarification on that. The city has been in very close contact and working with VUSD representatives about this project. They've been with us the entire time. They're aware of the school site, they want the school site. The applicant is providing a school site for this Area Plan Two amendment. And so one of the things that is required between a memorandum of understanding with Discovery Builders and VUSD, that the city is not a part of, is that the developer is required to show lotting for that school site just in case the school does not accept that site. And it's just responsible development to show what could happen in that area. So that concludes the answers to those questions.
And I just wanted to, Vice Mayor, I appreciate your time. I just wanted to clarify, I'm only here as a citizen. That's it.
Hi, Alicia Minion again. I have a question, the term merit hearing process. Can, actually, I'm not familiar with that. Can you describe just very quickly the merit hearing process? How is it beneficial to an applicant? You know, is it, yeah, I'm just wondering, what are the pros and cons of the merit hearing process to the applicant? And so, and then I have a question, what happened to the pool? The private pool club, was that eliminated already in 2019? Is that, I wasn't clear on that. Can, can the private pool club come back? So the reason why I ask is, every time there's this master community development, there's all these lovely things that go into the plan. So when you look at it in 1995, it just looks like there's more amenities, you know? So parks, there's more of a balance. So you see the commercial, the parks, the school. You see the open space kind of intertwined. And then inevitably, when it's all said and done, when it actually gets built, it's never what was originally approved. It always feels disingenuous when the developer comes up with a new development plan. And it's like, oh, it looks great, let's approve it, and everybody's happy. And then, and then it just sits there for many, many years. And then finally, when it, you know, as it gets closer to real construction, all the nice things seem to just disappear. And so I was wondering, can the private pool come back? The open space, it wasn't clear in the picture, if it makes sense, where it is. I'm not sure how the open space grew. Did it grow? Did it decrease with the new, with the new plan? And then with regard to the school, if the Vacaville Unified doesn't get the funding to build the school, what happens to the park? Will it be moved? And I just want you to know, so I live near Cambridge, so Cambridge Elementary is my elementary school in my feeder pattern, there's a park. And the school can't build, they can't build fences. So I mean, with the tragedy that happened today with elementary schools, we start thinking, oh, how can we make them safer? So if you put the park next to the school, I'm guessing this won't be able to have any kind of fencing at all either. So I'm sorry I'm rambling on, but if you can address those concerns, that'd be great. And I really would be interested in, can the private pool really come back into the picture? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Brandon Klein. Pardon me. I am here in my personal capacity at the proper time. I will recuse myself from, as chair of the commission, from any deliberation of this project. I own real property in AP One. I own real property in AP One, which is why I'm here instead of watching the Warriors game, because I really love this community and I love Vacaville. So it's in that private status that I'm here. I do have a couple of questions. So I, great questions from Ms. Minion about the swim club. I believe that the original language in the merit process was that it was not feasible. And feasibility has a very strong meaning under the law. So I'm curious how that is consistent or we're accepting that there's consistency there? Because at the time, it was an unsupported statement. I don't know if there's been outreach or involvement with the community in drafting this finding of merit. I too am kind of confused about what merit means in this context, because I don't know how you're measuring merit based on what the people that live there, what their expectations were when they made investment-backed decisions about an elementary school being in AP One. They made the biggest decisions of their lives in some cases about the promise, based on the promises that were made that induced them to rely that, that the DA, the specific plan, all the documents, the EIR were all correct. And I have real concerns about the adequacy of the initial environmental impact report. What, were there alternatives studied that included not having a school in AP One? If there weren't alternatives studied that took into account the flight path, I think that's a real inadequacy in that EIR. So we're kind of caught in a weird situation where the, in my view, the, the initial EIR that was certified in 95 was flawed, and now we're finding consistency with a flawed EIR? Or what's the, what's the environmental document that is going to make up for that flawed analysis in 95? So that's a question. And I think the broader question is about traffic and transit impacts with the change in methodology from, at the time in 95, we're, we're under LOS, we're in VMT now. And since we've made that change, there have also been different, I, I would say, traffic inducing projects that have been cited adjacent to the Tulane Bridge across Vacaville Parkway. I, I think that that's the current Tulane Bridge under what we know, what we know right now is inadequate. So I, I think that finding consistency here creates a real litigation risk. And you also risk some broken trust. So I, I strongly urge you to find that there's no consistency here in this process. Thank you very much.
I can attempt to answer some of the questions, and then also we have Doug Chen here with Discovery Builders. So I'll, I'll go down the line and start off with, what's the purpose of a merit hearing? And what's the benefit to the developer? It boils down to time and money. Why waste the time and money that it takes to go into the very detailed analysis, the environmental review, the tentative map process, when City Council doesn't even want to see it? And so in 2019, the initial request that says, hey, here's a land use plan from 1995, it's outdated, we'd like to get it updated, make some changes to it, do you think that there is merit to it? Applicants cannot submit amendments to general plans without getting the blessing, which is determining whether or not there's merit to a proposal, from City Council. And so that's what happened in 2019. Who decides whether or not there's merit? It's the City Council, it's the voted elected body that is representative of its community. That's who's in charge of it. There was a question about the pool, can the pool come back? So discussion about whether or not the pool is, can be supported in this area is not really in the purview of tonight. I can confirm that the merit hearing proposal that was from 2019 included a proposal to remove that pool. The changes that we've conducted so far since then, and the proposal that's been provided by the applicant in April of this year, is consistent, it still does not have that pool, it's the same. There was a question about clarification about open space, whether it was growing or not. There is a portion on this map, and I'll see if I can get it with a laser pointer. It's this portion right here. That portion of residential had to go away. When the original plan for this project received its approval in 1995, it came with a load of mitigation measures. Some of those mitigation measures also included the preservation of wetlands. That particular area right there contains wetlands that the Army Corps of Engineers said, no, you can't build on that. And so one of the things that is occurring as part of this amendment to the specific plan is an update. Discovery Builders is also looking at updating their plan to clearly show the changes that were required as part of their mitigation requirements and obligations between 1995 and 2003. That one being this area changing to open space. The school, what's going to happen? Our, our discussions with the school district is that they are interested in developing the site for an elementary school. And so the developer is planning to provide that land for an elementary school. On this plan... One second, I'm having an issue identifying this. Okay, so... Yes, this original proposal showed a school site, you'll see in the purple area next to Leisure Town Road. It's not fronting on Leisure Town Road, but it was in Area Plan One. What happened with that school was, as part of the original entitlement, there was, there was an idea that there wasn't going to be an issue between where the school was located and where airport operations were. Currently, airport operations flies over that area, and so there was a thought that the flight paths for that would not be over that area anymore, and that there would be some changes to those flight paths. Well, sometime down the process, I think it might have been 2003 or 2005, as part of their Discovery Builders efforts to move this project forward in Vacaville Unified School District to move that school site forward, they took it before Airport Land Use Commission said, it's a no-go, it doesn't work at the location, it's not consistent with the airport flight path for Nuttree Airport. And so they denied it. And the applicant is trying to fix that. And so they're identifying within Area Plan Two, a location where that school site could go. And you'll see RLM, and then in parentheses, school site. RLM is a designation that also would allow a school site, so they both can be developed. There was a question about how are we consistent with the original plan? We went over that and identified the comparisons between what's being, what was presented to City Council in 2019 and what was, what was presented or proposed in the 2021, 2022 version. And it's these main project changes. We're trying to get this high-density site closer to the school and closer to the park, make it easier and walkable for people that are living within that apartment complex. The park size increased, and more details about that would be presented to the decision makers in the future of what this park would look like. And then also the unit mix changed slightly, there's still low density that's being proposed, there's still low, medium density being proposed, and there's still medium density being proposed. There was a question about the EIR analysis, and that discussion has not been advertised to the community, it's not really in the purview of the discussion for tonight. Sufficient notification has not been provided to the public about the discussion about those items. But should City Council decide that this is consistent with the 2019 plan, those items would be on discussion at the, any subsequent future Planning Commission or City Council meetings. And the same thing goes for the traffic impacts.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Doug Chen, representing Discovery Builders, applicant for the project. And I just wanted to just reiterate some of the answers that Albert had already mentioned. So the general plan right now, in 2015 general plan, we would be building per the general plan, had it not been the school issue. The, the, the school site originally was in AP One, Area Plan One. When the Airport Land Use Commission denied the consistency determination, our, we had an obligation to VUSD through, through agreement to provide a school site. And in the agreement says that if they don't, if they don't take the, the site in AP One, we will provide them with an alternate site. So that's what we're doing. And that's really the, the primary reason for the general plan amendment, the proposed general plan amendment. In 2019, when we requested the merit hearing, merit hearing is a city process, we didn't, the developer did not invent the process. We're following the city process to go forward with the merit hearing, request, you know, and get authorization from the City Council to allow us to proceed with a general plan amendment, to bring, bring to you a general plan, a proposed general plan amendment. That's what we're doing, you know, going through the process right now. And as far as the commercial use, that use is still there in AP One, we're not proposing to change that. And, you know, we're pursuing commercial supermarket developers, we're actually, we're, one of the things we want to change it to is just a generic food market instead of supermarket. Supermarket is just way too big for this development. And we did market studies, there, there isn't enough population in North Village to support a school site. And move that away from North Village Parkway, which is also against your general plan policy to have a school right next to a Arterios Parkway. So we're proposing to change it to, on your right-hand side, you can see the school site right beyond the park. A source, VMT, the city has, has already conducted a VMT study, and there's no, in fact, there's less impact than the original proposal. Significantly reduced number of trips, about 3,000 trips less. Ready to answer any questions if you have any?
And why not just...
On your screen, you'll see on the right-hand side, this project still has to go through the development review process, which has to go before the decision...
...by the fact that we keep planning things.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I have quite a few questions, so...
Well, the whole purpose of this effort, that's city necessary to make a good neighborhood. Do you present this before Parks and Recreation? We still have to present this before Planning Commission?
Assume that people have done their homework and have done their research.
The original efforts from 1995 accounted for that analysis. It looked at the overflight path, it looked at where it was, and it analyzed the potential for the overflight zone to be moved. It was an overflight zone that was identified, in case there was no visibility, this was the route that was going to go. And so they were banking on this idea that, okay, well, further down the road, we'll decide that, we'll put in the request to the FFA, FAA, and how this overflight path moved.
Got it.
And they did that.
Okay.
And so VUSD decided to move forward with their site, and one of the steps for them to move forward is present their proposal to the Airport Land Use Commission, because even though it's not in the overflight zone, it's still within the compatibility plan. And the decision was made by Airport Land Use Commission that it was not consistent.
Okay. Does the, do we have any ability to say, ignore that, or is that final?
There are provisions within our code for projects that developers can go through, to which City Council could overrule Airport Land Use Commission. But given that this is a project by Vacaville Unified School District...
Yeah, I'm not saying, just, again, it's when you buy a home and you're expecting that school to be there, it's a big deal. So it just, again, it feels like, you know, it, it feels like the homeowners got the raw deal on that one. A couple other comments, and so we don't often have these big plans, and they very rarely open up, or we get an opportunity to fix things that we think might have been broken from the past. So I'm going to ask a series of probably dumb questions, but I want to ask them, because I want to see where this, this might be included in the process. So by doing any of this, does this open up the possibility of adjusting school fees or adjusting park fees or adjusting any of the fees for the project? Or does that have nothing to do with the fees on, on the second development or the second phase of the development?
Does not have anything to do with the fees.
Okay, got it. Another question, does this have anything to do with the timing on which parts of the lots are being built, or which sections of the plan would be built in either the old or the revised plan?
No, it does not affect the timing, the developer does have a, have a method in which they're proposing to perform the improvements that are necessary. One of the pinnacle improvements that are necessary is construction of North Village Parkway to provide access for construction activity to get in that area. One of the things that the city has worked with the developer on is trying to get the high-density site built sooner.
That's exactly where I'm headed. So you're, you're beat me to the punch, that's fantastic. So what's been happening in Vacaville time and time again is we plan for high-density, which we desperately need, because housing is insane and, and high-density typically quits, maybe slightly lower cost. So in the, the latest iteration of big projects we've had, there's always high-density plan, they build it last. They build all the neighbors' houses around first, and then they, they build the high-density last. And what happens is all the neighbors get pissed off because they don't want the high-density, they come down to the City Council and yell at us because they... And so it's this bait and switch process where the developer knows that'll happen, and then we change our minds and make it big, you know, low-density lots again. And so I get no one wants high-density in their neighborhood, but if you're buying a home and you pull into the prospective lot or the model homes of your, your prospective home, and there's already a high-density apartment complex there, it's a lot easier to, to feel like you didn't get a raw deal when you know that's already there and it's got to be there. And so if there's anything we could do to make sure that high-density is built first, I know you just mentioned that probably is the case, that would be great. Again, we've seen in a, a series of developments in Vacaville, if it doesn't happen, it causes problems. So you, you beat me to my question on that one, thank you. School fees, so there's nothing, school fee-wise, the school can't come in and negotiate higher fees on this project at all based on the school site move, correct?
That, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. The last, two, two more questions, sorry, guys. Is there any sort of ability for us to open up a low-income component in terms of units here? I know we've been talking a lot about housing and including either additional fees or, every X amount of units, you have to build low-income units. How can, could this in any way assist with our larger housing plan and, and process and, and needs across Vacaville? You know, we tend to over-concentrate low-income, high-density housing in one or two neighborhoods. By doing any of this today, will this allow us to, to, to attack any of the problems we're trying to attract with our larger housing plan, or is that ship pretty much sailed on this?
It has not sailed. The action before you tonight is just a consistency determination.
Okay.
An action to consider whether or not to require policies that would implement such things as affordable housing, accessory dwelling units. That is an item that is afforded to the decision makers at the time of which this entire project would be presented before the decision makers.
Okay, so we have another bite at that apple at some point. Okay, awesome, thank you. And then my last comment, and I don't really care about the public pool, I mean personally, but I do care about the residents being sold, a vision for what they're buying for their future. And, you know, I personally, like I said, wouldn't use a public pool or a private pool myself, but, you know, I do feel like we nickel-and-dime folks, and I don't remember who the speaker was that said this, but we have these big, beautiful plans, they look gorgeous, they have all these amenities and all these different things. You know, we did this in South Town, too, and then slowly but surely we chip away at all those things. And so, again, the, the, the private pool is not something that I would, a hill that I would die on, but I could see as a resident being promised a pool and a park and a school, and, you know, it took us 10 years to build Corderos. It's frustrating, and we've got to change the way we develop, and I don't know if it's staff or developers or whoever, but it does keep happening over and over and over, and it's leaving, you know, a sour taste in the mouths of residents in these newer neighborhoods. My last comment and question, I'm sorry, I kept, I told you that was my last one before this. We actually have a document right here from Bay Area, I don't know, Bay Area somebody, Building Industry Association of Cal, of the Bay Area. And one of the things they talk about is developer-built parks and getting those parks built faster. You know, I know Corderos, again, you know, Little Johnny moved in at two, and Corderos wasn't built till Little Johnny was 15 or 16. So that, that's not great when you're sold that a park will be there, and I know it's the fee cycle and all that other stuff, too. Is there any possibility of speeding up any of the parks or recreation facilities in the second phase, maybe even developer-build? Or are there any options to get those kids parks quicker or kind of front-load that like we're doing the high-density piece?
We're currently in negotiations with the developer to try to get the park built at 50% of unit development.
Awesome, okay, thank you very much. Sorry for all the questions. Councilmember Wiley?
Thank you. I just have a question on land use. I know that there's like a whole brochure, I mean, a whole binder on land use terms. So tell me about the term consistent, because when I think of consistent, I think it's about the same. And when I look at this, you know, the boundary hasn't moved, it's just the same. And when I was looking at that chart, not the map, but the chart, you know, you're showing this many units, this, there's a, a little bit of shift in the number of low density and, you know, medium-low density and things like that. But basically, it's very consistent, like, if I have a room and then I rearrange the furniture and put the dais back there and those chairs back here, you know, it would be consistent. So that's what, can you clarify, if I'm voting on consistent, is that... So that's what, can you clarify, if I'm voting on consistent, is that similar, it's not exactly the same?
An example of not consistent would be to remove the high-density site.
Just to remove it, not just to move it?
Completely.
Just, okay, but removing-
It doesn't have, the numbers of the units dedicated for low-density versus high-density, there can be some change or variations. The overall unit count for this area Plan Two is not increasing beyond what was originally proposed to City Council. They're still proposing the same types of land uses, which is a park, a school, high-density, low-density, medium-density.
Well, that's, to me, it looks consistent.
That's correct.
So that's why I just wanted to clarify, am I missing something? Because I don't know the land use definition of consistent. Okay? And then, like, the pool was already removed in the 2019 one that we're looking at, correct?
That's correct.
So we are just looking at those two that have about the same things, but the school has moved.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Any further comments from the council? Yeah? Councilmember Silva?
Yeah, I'm just, um, I don't understand, I'm kinda, I'm confused on the, uh, school site, so, I, I know it's kinda hard to, for maybe folks to reference on this map, but, uh, I'm looking at, I can go on this, off this map right here. So the one up on the screen, uh, where the, the logo 505 is at, that, my understanding is the flight path. So it goes just northwest of the Genentech site, uh, kinda along where that blue, um, orders are. Uh, the school site is proposed, um, to the right of that, or the original, I guess, the, the one that's currently agreed upon, uh, and was promised, right? Uh, and so the new proposal is to put it on, so kinda going, if we follow that blue diagonal box northeast, uh, it's, the new proposal is right there where that, um, yeah, right there. So to me, that seems more along the line of the flight path versus the other one, so I'm kinda confused on, on that.
It is, it is outside of the Nutria Airport Flight Zones. It's completely outside of the Nutria Airport Flight Zones.
Right, so I guess, I'm kinda confused, so is there some type of reference, or some document, um, that we can gain access to?
Correct, well, yes. On our city municipal code, uh, we do have a chapter that identifies where the fly-zone paths are. For quick reference on this plan, you'll see some dashlines right here. There's the left side of a dashline, and then the right side of a dashline. You'll see that those lines kind of continue, they run parallel and continue and intersect around where Leisure Tone Road is. Those are faint lines, that's the flight path that we're talking about. And it goes straight over the community college, and it goes straight over that original location of where that elementary school site was gonna be. And so with it being located over in this northern area, it's completely out of the flight path and out of any risk associated with aircraft maneuvering. The, the applicant is also here to clarify any questions.
Yeah, sorry, I'm just, uh, sure.
Uh, Councilmember Silver, uh, I already took, took the school site in AP2 to Airport Landings Commission in, uh, late 2021, it's been cleared, it's consistent. There's been determination on that already.
Okay. Uh, thank you.
Councilmember Eche.
Not, not really comments, was just more of a conversation between me, the developer, uh, one of the representatives at Discovery Homes. Um, so, I was here in 2019, and the councilman's, uh, Sullivan's the only person here, but I don't wanna go back on, I just wanna kinda deal with what we have, kinda chips on the table, go forward. Um, you know, one thing that, we're gonna talk about the diff coming up, and, and ways to have development Vs, and, and have, uh, the ability to build homes at a scalable level and charge less to, um, per the square foot of the landlot, the size, and development size, and the mix, and we're, we're gonna do that later, hopefully soon. Um, but, um, you know, you hit the number, the 50, 50% number, it's something we talked about pretty passionately here, but, um, you know, it's, maybe if you can step up and have a conversation about, um, 50%, that's a far number. I mean, that, that's like kicking a football halfway down the field. Um, there's about 1,100 homes, right? And, and, and number two? So at 1,100 homes, if we can, if we can hit the number of about 275, about the 25% tile, I, I think that would really show that the people that are buying homes have a lot more hope and kind of a closer, a closer point of reference of, hey, um, 50% is a big number, that's a massive development, the amount of homes you guys are putting in there. If you can move that number to about 275, the 25% by a home, to start that process, um, I had, I've had this conversation with Discovery Homes and other developers, and so you, you know it's coming. Uh, I, I want you guys to start establishing escrow accounts, where you can basically, the cost to build the park, provide that plan to us, and we can hold you accountable. Hey, say it's $11 million worth of park, great, and put the money, put the money aside with a contingency for inflation, let's say 5, 7%, so you build into the cost. And so if you, if you guys don't, when you hit that number, don't start the park, we're gonna take the funds and then have a third party build it on your behalf, if you're not gonna do it. Uh, I, I mean, it sucks, and it's expensive, but easy motivation to build faster and do the, and kind of, and, and just keep moving. Um, if the not, the moderate-density homes, what is the average size law? It's about 4,000 square feet, probably, you'd be.
Uh, there, there, a different, you wanna go back to the, uh, the, the one that's open general plan right now?
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I could jump in here real quick?
Go ahead, sir.
Especially in light of the, the, the time and all the other agenda items. I appreciate the, the councilman's comments about how to expedite things with the park, but, um, as, as, um, Senior Planner Albert, you know, mentioned, um, those types of details will be coming back through the entitlement process, should the council determine tonight that the merit hearing is consistent.
Okay.
And that you're directing us to go back through that process. So, um, I think for purposes of keeping it simple tonight, and focusing on just that action before you tonight, would be helpful. Um, we, we clearly understand the council's desire to get all the amenities, uh, in our master plan communities sooner than later, and that is something that I've, working with, uh, Ms. Morris and her team, in the Community Development Department, and I know that that's something that we'll be, uh, addressing, uh, should we come back through the process.
Okay, so, yeah, all right, I, I'll, I'll address this later, but yeah, just, just quick notes, just please take it back to the team at Discovery. Um, California stepped forward last, this month, and if, they're really doing some amazing things, help homeownership. So they're, they have, there's a no-limit process. California has a lot of money, and so they started reinvesting back in their community. Um, there's no cap. So you can buy a house with no limited price in California right now, and get up to 10% of the purchase price for giving a closing. If you can build it at $325 per square foot, 1,100 square foot lots, break the lots in half, build homes at maybe 1,100 square feet, the average purchase price being 375, you take the AMI, people can live in that home. At $375,000 purchase price, if they make the area media indexing in Slanta County, they can make it happen. So just please start doing some modeling for homes that would fit that consistency of being less than 1,500, 1,500 square feet, at 3 and 1/4 per square foot, like, it'll make a lot of people have the ability to take homeownership.
Number 10, you comment, I just wanna make a quick point, that the general plan that's the S today-
Has 70% low-density. The, 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 the number of units we have in AP2, if we move forward, the two, the general plan that's the S today would be predominantly, uh, low-density residential, larger homes. Uh, so again, 70%. What we're proposing to do is take a low-density units down to 23%. And, you know, so, the, the proposed, uh, uh, general plan amendment will shift most of the homes to the smaller lots, smaller homes.
Perfect, okay. Thank you.
All right, so, that was, that was a long, uh, the way I'm taking, like, Councilmember Wiley, but it's like essentially rearranging the furniture in your bedroom, and not removing major pieces of furniture from that room itself. Um, in that comparison, I do think it is consistent, so I'll take a motion to, uh, I'll maintain motion for adopting this.
I'm, I'm just, I'm curious, you know, so we're bringing up some other issues, we're asking to continue this process, I know, obviously, you put a lot of time, a lot of time into this, a lot of thought into it. Um, I'm kinda, I'm feeling like we should maybe table it until we figure out our housing strategy before we keep moving forward. Um, kinda curious to hear council's thoughts and city manager's thoughts on that.
I mean, I don't know, sorry. Aaron, do you have a-
I'll, I'll jump in, I'll, I'll go first and take a shot at that. So, um, interesting suggestion. Um, so keep in mind, the, the purpose of the merit hearing process, as, as Albert mentioned, is to determine whether or not this proposed change, okay? So we have an approved project, it has entitlements, it has a specific plan, a development agreement, and as, you know, having been in that industry, in that world for over 30 years, I know that things change. And so that's what you have before you right now, and that's what came to the council back in 2019, is they evaluated the project that was originally approved and said, things have changed, we need to make a change to our project. So in 2019, they identified the changes that they wanted to make. So of course, the originally approved general plan and the proposal in 2019 is gonna be different, it's reflecting that proposed change. The purpose of tonight was to make sure that what the work has been done, that has been occurring since 2019, is consistent with what was presented back at that first merit hearing. All those other discussion items that you've been talking about tonight will be available for future discussion as part of the, the entitlement process. The idea of waiting to our, our housing strategy, um, is an interesting one from the standpoint that, you know, the purpose of the housing strategy is to bring forth, um, ideas and solutions to providing additional missing-middle housing is, is the big catchphrase. I think what you have before you right now is an improved plan that addresses some of that. I can't tell you what the exact outcome of the housing strategy is right now, because it's still being drafted. Um, but I would say that what has been proposed in this particular revision definitely is a step forward compared to what was originally approved in the initial plan. So I would leave that to council's discretion in terms of, do you feel that it's gone far enough? Um, I know that the developer has been working with staff for quite a while now, and, and I don't know how this, you know, potential additional delay could affect them or not. Um, that's also something to consider.
So, um, sorry, can you turn my mic? So I'm just, uh, I think the, the hard, so let me clarify, two clarifying, clarifying questions. Number one, uh, does this change, does this eliminate that potential school site? I understand that the FAA, excuse me, um, is saying that's within the flight zone, uh, so therefore, they wouldn't be able to construct a, a school. Uh, that's what we're saying. So because of that, everything's, uh, we're looking at re, reconfiguring everything, is that correct?
So the developer's trying to meet their obligation for providing a school site for the original plan. So, because the original site, as, as Albert mentioned-
Sorry, um, sorry. Uh, so, if we say yes, does that eliminate that site today?
Are you talking about the original school site?
Yes, it's being relocated, it's being, right, it's being relocated. That's why they won't move it up north.
But it's already, it's already been eliminated from our zoning, or because of FAA?
Just to put a clarification, that original site, that was amended, that had the school site in Area Plan One, there's already houses on there. Back in 2011, back in 2011, the developer came forward, because VUSD had tried to get that school site developed, and the developer came forward and said, okay, we can't have a school site at this location, so what do we do with it in the meantime? And they submitted a general plan amendment request, which is why the current general plan-
All right.
-shows that E that's located on the left of the map, is because in 2011, 2012, they put a placeholder in Area Plan Two that would show the eventual location of the school site.
Okay, I apologize. Uh, I know there's been a lot of talk, uh, within the community about, um, this particular area. Uh, this area is zoned for, the, the school zone for this is in Markham, so like, just the school boundaries in itself is, uh, very interesting itself. I know the school district defines those boundaries, um, but there's a lot of misconceptions out there, and, uh, so thank you for clarifying.
Motion to approve it?
Yeah. There a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Dude is sitting here for three and a half hours, maybe behind the council or staff, like take a five-minute recess for water, restroom, or, you know, whatever. All right, go ahead and get started again. Due to time constraints, we are doing a little bit of rearranging of the agenda. So, this time, we're going to move to item 9F. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and members of council, members of our audience. Appreciate the flexibility on this. This is a quick update from our Community Development Director, Ms. Erin Morris, and a representative from Cosmont Companies to talk about enhanced infrastructure financing districts. So, I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, members of council. I'm here today with Joseph Dieguez from Cosmont Companies. The request is for the council to authorize a contract with Cosmont to explore special financing districts. Joe's presentation, which is brief, he could go on. We've asked him to keep it brief, is going to talk about what exactly enhanced infrastructure financing districts are and what they can do for the city of Vacaville. So, with that, turn it over to Joe.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Pleasure to be here. Our firm, Cosmont, does a few things: real estate, economic development, and public finance. My practice group within the firm is all about infrastructure, funding, and finance. The subject on the agenda tonight is one tool in the toolbox. The conversation is tonight about budget, about other tools that are on your agenda. It's super helpful for context, honestly. This just fits in as one tool in the toolset to address infrastructure: roadways, water, sewer, all those sorts of things. When we talk about tax increment financing, or TIF, first of all, we always have to say it's not a new tax. That's the first thing we have to clarify. It works in a similar way to how the old redevelopment agencies used to work, that you draw a boundary, you freeze your assessed value at the time that district is formed. And as value grows over time, the mechanism allows a city, a county, or both, to just set aside a portion of future property tax from within that boundary into a special purpose account for infrastructure, kind of like into a retirement account or a college savings account for a child, setting aside some portion of future revenues for infrastructure. The most common type of tax increment financing these days are EIFDs. They're long-term districts, 45 years plus. Governance is nuanced compared to the old RDAs. Let's say if the county were to contribute to an EIFD within Vacaville, the composition of the governing board would include actually both members of the city council and members of the county board of supervisors, some combination thereof. And interestingly, also, members of the public that the elected bodies would appoint. It's not a new tax, so there's no voter approval required to form or to issue debt, but there are a series of public meetings and hearings required to fully vet the business plan of the district: what you're going to pay for, over what time, where the revenue's going to come from, all that. The boundaries can be non-contiguous. Just an example, if you wanted to draw a single EIFD that included your downtown, your northeast growth area, some existing business parks, you can actually do that in a non-contiguous fashion within a single district, if that were the desire. In ineligible projects, it's all about infrastructure. Over the next slide, some of the examples called out in the law. Again, water, sewer, streets, roadways, parks in open space, childcare facilities. The list just keeps growing. It's 18 items long now in the law, and it seems to get amended every year. Some of the recent additions were broadband. Facilities used by small businesses and nonprofits, that was just added last year. We expect it to continue to evolve. We would say it keeps getting more flexible. It's not meant to sound like a sales page, so we got to be realistic about a few things here. This is not a tool that somehow replaces other tools: general allocation debt, CFDs, some of the other items that are even on the agenda tonight, like impact fees, as mentioned in the budget of landscaping and landscaping districts. Not meant to replace any of those. This is just another tool in the box. It's no commitment of existing revenues. It's against setting aside a portion of future revenues. I guess some of the downsides are if you're looking for a tool that has a lot of money available immediately, like year one after formation, this is not that. This is a tool that takes time to generate funding capacity because assessed value needs to grow within a district before you can do anything with those tools. So, we just need to be realistic about advantages and disadvantages. Again, one tool in the box, happy to address questions on any of this detail. Similarly, we just kind of lay out in a matrix format so that it's available. In the record, some of the specific similarities and differences with other tools to fund and finance infrastructure. Happy to go through all this detail, but suffice it to say there are differences in voter approval, what you can pay for, how long the district can be in place, things like boundaries getting defined, a lot of nuances. Why are other agencies looking at these? A lot of it is return on investment, the idea that if you do it somehow, your general fund will look better on a net-net basis. General fund fiscal revenues, net of whatever dollars you're putting into this bucket, net of whatever you're going to have to pay for to service new development, like public safety, community services, on a net-net basis, agencies that we're working in aren't approving these if it's not a positive ROI in that sense. And that's aside from things like job creation, housing production, just addressing deficient infrastructure. But number two is important, too. It's the fact that you're setting up a mechanism to attract other funding. The most direct scenario is if you form this and you're able to persuade the county of Solano to partner with you and contribute a portion of their increment, it's a very clear benefit. You've been able to do that elsewhere. And number two, I mean, another form of other public money is grants. These tools have a very direct ability to attract other public funding in the form of grants. So, especially at the state level, all of HCD's grants, your infill infrastructure grant, your affordable housing and sustainable community grant, your transformative climate community grant, et cetera, they've now written into their guidelines specifically, if a jurisdiction, a city or county, has one of these districts in place, that jurisdiction has allotted more points on the scoring rubric because HCD recognizes these tools as quote-unquote pro-housing designation. Along that same vein, it works well with these other tools. Again, that's why this conversation about your budget presentation and some of these other tools, it's quite helpful for us because they interact, these tools interact quite well with other sources at the federal, the state level, as well as the private sector side of things. You know, not to go, this is our last slide. It's going on elsewhere. We've been privileged to work in other jurisdictions, including Fairfield next door. We've had a lot of success in Napa, where, full disclosure, that's where we met Director Morris. And I think that's had some of the genesis behind why we were asked to provide a proposal here. So, cities are doing these on their own, counties are doing these on their own in unincorporated jurisdiction. And our best examples are those where cities and counties are partnering together to meet a mutual set of goals of infrastructure projects. And that's sort of the gold standard, we'd call it. That's really it. We're going to stick around to answer your questions. Really appreciate the time.
All right, go ahead and open up for a public comment.
And using this particular EIFD, you know, to service the debt? That's my question. And I saw this 45-year term, but I don't know. Can you go back to that slide, please? Was that to issue 45, or debt with 45-year maturities? And then, I'm concerned about that, that long of a maturity. It's the long-term districts, 45 years. So, if it did issue debt, could it be 45 years long? And then, so, I'm hearing that, so that the tax base freezes, and then the increment is kind of what goes into a pool? So, the increment is derived how? Is it like a CFD where there's some escalator attached to it? And, you know, and I'm hearing you saying it's not a new tax, but where's the, how does the increment increase? What's the basis of that? And then, is this type of district, how is it similar to when we had the redevelopment agencies? Because in the redevelopment agency, any, say, you carve out part of the city that was redevelopment. And what was great is whatever was built there, whatever property tax had generated, the city could keep like 80 cents on the dollar, where if it wasn't in redevelopment, it would keep whatever Prop 13 said might have been, you know, 20 cents on the dollar. So, is that, is that what this is comparable to? If you can kind of talk about the similarities between a redevelopment agency and this, that would be great. But that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Would you like me to respond?
Go ahead.
I'll start, and then I'm going to actually hand it off to Joe. This is a lot like redevelopment. It is using that tax increment of increased property value, and it's allowing the city to decide, or the city and the county in partnership, to decide where to spend that money on special projects above and beyond what we would normally get when we see property tax gains. Joe's can talk about the debt and the 45-year term and anything else he wants to clarify. But I do want to make it clear to the council, if you authorize this contract, it is not setting up a district. It is not moving forward with any, anything beyond assessing, could this tool be useful for the city of Vacaville? Which areas might we include in a boundary should we proceed? What might we be accomplishing by doing that? It involves some stakeholder meetings, outreach to the public, et cetera. And then, we would be coming back to the council to seek direction based on having some information about what it could do for us. Joe, were you able to answer the question about the debts and the 45-year term?
Yeah, so first on the debt, first the yes or no question. These districts are authorized to issue debt. Not all of them do, so it's an option, not a requirement. West Sacramento is an example. I think the first one formed in the state still has not issued debt, has no immediate plans to do so. So, it's an option, not a requirement. As far as term goes, 45 years is the full duration of the district. We would not, in our municipal advisory role, imagine ever issuing debt with a 45-year amortization. It's not really a function of, it's a greatest function of just what people who buy municipal securities would purchase. Usually, it's no more than 30 years that that type of investor would look for. So, with over 45-year time, you can issue a bond, let's say, year five, year 10, year 15. Maybe year 15 is your last 30-year debt issuance. So, that's generally how it works. It's the total envelope where the district can be alive. The term of the debt is a separate matter that would have to fall within that envelope. How does it work? Just kind of a basic scenario would be, yeah, it's very similar to the redevelopment agencies. If you had $100 of value today and it grew to $200 of value, and the city got, you know, $10 of that $100, it would just be saying, what would the city do with its own share of $10? And if we can convince the county to be a partner, how much of its share would they be willing to contribute? And over what time horizon? So, it does work in that sense like RDA, but different in that we don't get to claim the share of other taxing entities like school districts or anything like that. That's off the table in this new age of tax increment financing. Even if school districts wanted to contribute, they're not allowed to by state law. It was very intentional by the legislature to avoid some of the pitfalls of the old redevelopment agencies. By the way, and so, the outcomes of the findings, again, as Director Morris said, it's feasibility study. We showed you a map of things, districts that have moved forward. There are at least just as many where the outcome of the feasibility analysis was, maybe don't do it, or do something else instead, or only do it if certain things happen, like the county partners with you, or you have a private sector developer that's willing to partner with you. So, that's, those are sort of the potential findings out of the study.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, we're going to go ahead and close the public comment and bring it to the council. Any comments from council? A lot of people have comments. Councilmember Stockton?
Yes, just real quickly. I saw that you're working with some of our neighboring cities. Has there been any collaboration with them and the county? Or interest from the county in collaborating with them?
Yeah, so Fairfield has some pretty, I'd say, encouraging conversations at the staff level with the county. We just delivered the findings, our feasibility analysis, a few months ago, and it just stopped. So, like, it would here, deliver findings and then deliberation at the staff and elected official level before any determination to move forward. So, I'd say conversations at the staff level of Solano County were great. It has not proceeded beyond that yet. We're feeling optimistic, but nothing is for sure.
And then, my next question would be, if you're familiar with this program, what was the level of success that you had in Napa when you were using this method or tool?
In Napa, the Public Financing Authority has actually just recently been established. The boundary's been set, so it's still early days. But I would say a lot of the elected concerns about the program were the concerns that constituents would think this was a tax. And when you do, when you go to establish a district, you do, you know, broad notification and specific notification of the affected properties. And I guess what I would say is, I'm pleasantly surprised that that issue got resolved and people were satisfied it was not a tax and that the district is actually moving forward. But I don't believe it's at the point where it's yet generating revenue.
Councilmember Silva?
So, if this is like, so one of the, sorry, I'm trying to size this. Is there any ways that the... Is there any ways that the, this effort can help? So I'm happy to support this, number one, to look at the broad scheme of themes, scheme of themes. The, in lower-income areas, is there, is there any way you can look in certain low-income areas within our town to see if, that's just a good question.
We can look at that as part of what a boundary might be, where we can achieve the goals of these districts, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
How many districts can we set up? Can we get one for, one for each district?
It's one, I mean, Cosmo will look at it and will give us recommendations, but it really is one district, but it can encompass multiple non-contiguous areas. So staff's initial thinking is the Northeast growth area, some of our older industrial parks, downtown, the Allison PDA, and then also have Cosmo look at those other areas that might make sense. But what we're looking for are areas where there will be change and where there will be the growth of the property value, because that's what's going to help these districts succeed.
But will there be different pots of money that go to different districts?
You want to take that?
That's okay. I, I'll say, most of these, like City of Los Angeles as an example, is probably going to end up with like eight or nine EIFDs with their own governing boards and their own infrastructure financing plans. The smallest city I know that is doing multiple is Brentwood down in Contra Costa County. They'll, they'll do like two, one in Innovation Center, one in downtown. And there's, there's advantages and disadvantages of that. Either way, either is a single district with multiple, you know, quote-unquote, sub-areas or multiple districts in the same city. It can be set up to accomplish what I, what I think perhaps you were hinting at, which is a dedicated pot for a specific set of projects, perhaps in a certain geographical area of the city, and others with sort of different priorities. So that could actually work as a single or multiple of these districts.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
All in motion? All those in favor? Aye. All right, moving on to item 9E.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the city council. This next item that we're taking out of order is for you to accept and provide comment on the draft Community Development Block Grant Program for the Fiscal 2022-2023 Annual Action Plan. Tamara Golden from our Housing and Community Services Department is here to make a brief presentation.
All right, good evening, Vice Mayor Roberts, council members. I'm here tonight to present the proposed activities to be funded with the 2022-2023 CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG Annual Action Plan, along with the CDBG CARES Act funding. The action for consideration tonight is to accept any comments from the public and for council to provide comments on the proposed activities in the annual action plan and the activities proposed for the CDBG CARES funding. So just a little bit of background, the city of Vacaville has been an entitlement community under the federally funded CDBG program since 1988. Priority needs were identified during the consolidated planning process that was conducted and concluded in 2020 and included in the 2020 to 2025 consolidated plan. Those priorities include youth public services, public facilities and infrastructure, and activities that prevent, prepare for, and respond to COVID. The annual action plan outlines the activities the city will undertake to address the priorities included in that consolidated plan. For the 2022 to 2023 program year, the city has received an allocation of $507,903 to fund these activities. The activities proposed to be funded using this annual funding allocation are listed in the chart here and include 20% of the annual allocation for planning and administrative funding needed to oversee CDBG activities. It also includes the maximum 15% of the annual allocation awarded for funding youth public services, including $5,000 to 11 kids, and the remaining allocation towards the Vacaville Neighborhood Boys and Girls Club, and the remaining 65% of the allocation split towards activities that improve public facilities and infrastructure, including an additional $60,000 allocated towards the Mariposa Center for center improvements, $100,000 allocated to a sidewalk repair program for homeowners needing funding to complete sidewalk repairs, and then $170,000 towards sidewalk improvements in the CDBG core target area. The annual action plan also includes $766,000 in carry-forward funding from previous years that is currently allocated towards initial allocation of Mariposa Center improvements, as well as activities towards the Brown Street Social Service Center development, and includes the CDBG CARES funding that the city has received in total of $821,000 and some change. This chart covers the activities that are proposed using the CDBG CARES funding, which specifically is to be used to prevent, prepare for, and respond to COVID-19. 20% of the allocation is allocated towards, again, planning and administrative staff needed to cover the planning activities for the CDBG CARES program. $200,000 is allocated towards Opportunity House to go towards operation cost. $250,000 allocated towards the Police Department to address and prevent homelessness for individuals that also have mental health and/or substance abuse issues. $132,000 towards homeless prevention emergency grants. Those grants would go through the Family Resource Center and provide emergency payments for rent, mortgage, utilities, food, and other eligible payments. And then $75,000 for food security, and that would provide funding toward food banks or pantries to help households whose income have declined due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Any comments received from council or the public tonight will be incorporated into the final annual action plan draft, and that draft will be released for additional public comment for 30 days as required. And the annual action plan, with its revisions and comments incorporated from the public, will be brought back to the council on June 28th for final approval, so that it can be submitted to HUD by the deadline, which is July 12th this year. There are no funds being requested for this item. The Community Development Block Grant Funds, again, are from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, our HUD, and the city of Vacaville is an entitlement community. Upon approval of the annual action plan, the budget will be loaded into the appropriate CDBG and CDBG CARES grant funds and accounts for the approved activities. And with that, I am happy to take any questions or comments from the public or from council.
All right, go ahead and open up for a public comment. No public comment? Go ahead and close the public comment, open it up to council. See, Councilmember Stockton?
Thank you. And I'm having a hard time hearing Erin when you talk. Is there a way to turn that thing up? Or, I'm way down over here, buddy. So that, I hit, I hit the button a long time ago before she started, so that's why I'm here, but I'm having a hard time hearing you. My first question, thank you for the presentation. How was the distribution decided? Like I, I can see that the Boys and Girls Club's getting $71,000 and 11 is getting $5,000. How, how was that number figured out?
Yeah, so during the community, during the consolidated planning process that occurred in 2020, at that time, youth public services was identified as a priority by council and the public. And then with the consolidated plan, that's where, for the public services for this consolidated planning period, so that covers 2020 through June 30th of 2025, those amounts were outlined in the consolidated plan. So the, see, of the CDBG funding, the city can allocate a total or a maximum of 15% of whatever that annual allocation is towards public services. It was determined that 11 kids would receive $5,000 of that, and then the remaining to get to that 15% max would go to the Vacaville Boys and Girls Club.
Because it's a pretty big disparity between two organizations that both do such a great job taking care of our kids, so that's the reason why I asked. Is, is there a way to maybe make that more equitable?
Yeah, so during the next consolidated planning period, and we usually start that process about nine to 12 months out of the start of the next consolidated plan period, so that would be July 1st of 2025, is when the department would start that community outreach process.
Wonderful. The next, can, can you go to slide five, please? I'll be quick, I promise. Okay, yes, so, so it looks like on slide five, under con-plan goal two, there is sidewalk repairs and sidewalk improvements totaling what appears to be $270,000. Can you explain the difference between the two and, and why so much? Because on slide seven, we're only given $132,000 for homeless prevention, which I think is more important than these sidewalks.
Yeah, so this, these allocations are made under the annual allocation, and then the 132 for the emergency grants is under the CARES allocation, which specifically is for preparing for responding to and addressing COVID. So the $100,000 towards the sidewalk repair program, that is for low to moderate income homeowners, in which they need to make sidewalk repairs but do not have the funding. So that would be a grant program for homeowners needing to make the sidewalk repair, whereas the sidewalk improvements would be a CIP project managed by Public Works to improve overall sidewalk access for the area in core CDBG, in the core CDBG target area.
Got it, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, open up to Councilmember Wiley.
Thank you for the information. I just had a question on 11 kids and Neighborhood Boys and Girls Club. Both primarily serve like children in school, and I don't see anything in here for preschool. And I think that if we get kids early, it helps families, people can go to work. So I just wondered, why isn't any money allocated to preschool when we have things like, you know, headscarf? And First Five Solano is very active, but we don't have anything here. But I do know that there are a lot of families that need preschool, so.
Yes, so this funding is actually covering the public service dollars, which there's a limit on the dollars that can go towards a program. But under the CDBG program, we do actually have a facility use agreement with Child Start, Napa and Solano, at the Mariposa Center. So they share that space with 11 kids, and they do provide a preschool program out of that property. So that is a CDBG activity that we do track. We get quarterly updates from the Child Start program, and so they benefit by having the reduced cost and using the CDBG property to operate this space out of.
Right, so that $60,000 improvement, some of that may go toward the preschool.
Correct, so those improvements go to improving the property for the tenants that are operating programs out of that property.
All right, any idea how many kids are in that program?
I can get that information to you.
Thank you.
Once we're back in the office.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. Really, really well-done proposal. Our staff have been listening, you know, there's a couple of key projects, I think, that several of us have been talking about for quite a while. So I just really appreciate the level of detail and care that you put into, to the grant process. Very excited about the sidewalk repair program grants for folks. I know it's been a huge burden, you know, a lot of people don't understand that they're responsible for their sidewalks, and that can be a huge cost burden and a liability. So I love that creativity, you know, the sidewalk improvements portion, we, you know, just had a conversation last week where we were talking about a woman in a wheelchair in the market area that couldn't access, you know, what she needed access, because the right of ways has provided some funding for that, and I even talked to Emily about that last week. So just really, really well-done plan. I think my, my peers' comments so far, this, this can be kind of a frustrating process, honestly, because the earmarked funds are so small in the categories. And so, Roy, I've had the same questions as you the last couple of years, but again, it's such a small pot of money. I think, you know, we probably have to have an expanded conversation, too, about how maybe we use measure of this force of these nonprofits. Maybe we have to look at other, other funding streams, because at the end of the day, this is a pretty small amount of money that we dole out every year, and so, and it's also restricted by category, which gets even more creative. I'm very excited that we have some funding grow house. They're such a huge asset for what we do, and I, and I think there might even be some opportunities for future, maybe partnerships with the Police Department in addition, in addition to the work they're doing now. But again, it is a one-time kind of COVID CARES funding, and so we have great providers like you providing services. We got to put some skin in the game, and so I'm really glad, I hope it goes through as stated tonight, but you know, in future years, we're going to have to figure out these contributions. So just really well-done plan. I, when I saw this in draft the other day, you know, I gave Erin a high five. It was just a great job by staff, and I'm really happy with the, the way you guys broke things down. Very small, finite budget, but you worked your magic, and it's great. So thank you, kudos to staff.
Councilmember Silva?
Thanks for the CARES proposal. Thing is awesome, addresses a lot of needs. Just a quick feedback on the, those discussions and what we, you know, obviously it'll come because I know we're kind of locked into a five-year plan for CDBG funds, but in there, kind of piggybacking off of a, a couple comments tonight already, just reevaluating the appropriateness of the allocation of CDBG funds. But, you know, I know those talks are coming, but I guess if there's any changes, I think it would be fair to kind of give a heads up and, you know, and all of us, our staff kind of provide suggestions on what council could consider to compensate if anything changes for anybody. That's all, thank you. Any more comments? Or motion? Oh, you're going to do public?
All right, open it up for a public comment. Does this one require a motion, or is this just provide comment and?
No, I think, I think we've received your comments tonight, and we have what we need, so we'll be able to get that out to HUD and the appropriate timelines for submission. So we thank you for your comments.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 9E, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. This next item is a resolution adopting water conservation measures. I have Curtis Paxton, Director of Utilities, here to make a presentation for the council.
Yeah, so, yeah, okay. Curtis Paxton, Director of Utilities, and I have with me Romero Jimenez, our Utilities Administrative Manager. And we're going to talk briefly about water conservation and regulations that we need to enact based on Governor Newsom's executive order and some action the State Water Resources Control Board took today. Quick background, you know it's been dry, a couple of dry years. We're, we're in a, we're in a good position, and, and based on actions that previous councils and city management has taken as far as diversifying our water supply. So we have three sources. We have Solano Project, which is Lake Barriessa, we have groundwater wells, and we have State Water Project. Having those three supplies really puts us in a, in a good position. Our challenge is the state views the state as a whole, and so everyone gets treated the same regardless of their specific water supply situation. So we've been working with our partner agencies, through Solano County Water Agency, with outreach, education, rebate programs, incentives. We achieved a 9% water use reduction in 2020 compared to 20, 2021 compared to 2020. We had a nice start this year, around Christmas time. We had a nice start this year, around Christmas time, it rained and snowed really good, but not enough for the whole state to make changes. So Governor Newsom issued Executive Order N 722, calling on local agencies to achieve up to a 20% reduction. Part of the things that have to be done is a submittal of a preliminary water supply and demand assessment, which we will be bringing back late June here. Second one is declare at least a stage-two response action from our urban water shortage contingency plan, which was approved in June of 2021. Third thing is define and prohibit irrigation of, it's actually commercial, industrial, and institutional non-functional turf. A non-functional is basically just ornamental turf, so parks, schools, things that are used for recreation, community events, it's not prohibited irrigating that, but other just ornamental turf is. And then in Newsom's executive order, he provided approval of permits for new wells without written approval from local groundwater sustainability agency. So US City Council are the board of the Vacaville GSA, and so we are still working through a process with the county, because the county is the one who issues permits if somebody wants to drill a new well. And so in the executive order, it said you need to get that approval from the local GSA. In the regulations that the State Water Resources Control Board adopted today, it did not include that. So we're still waiting to see what the actual procedure is going to be there. So under the stage-two water shortage response, the following things need to be enacted or continued for us. So that's enhancement of current water efficiency measures and programs, resumption of residential and commercial water use surveys. We had kind of taken a break during COVID, because we weren't sending people out, staff out to people's houses and all during the height of COVID, but we have resumed those. And then encouraging the prohibition of water waste activities, watering of hardscapes, irrigation resulting in excess runoff, irrigation during significant rain events, use of hoses without a shut-off nozzle, use of ornamental fountains that don't recirculate, and then failure to repair water leaks. Other things are availability to monitor individual water usage through utility bills and the city website, and people have that ability. Suspension of the city's annual hydrant flushing program, so Public Works Field Utilities, on a normal year, we have a flushing program for water quality purposes, so to keep the water, the quality of the water up. During droughts, that's usually the thing that's suspended, so that will be taking effect. And then acceleration of City Water Distribution System Leak Detection Program, which also is done in conjunction with Field Utilities. And then we are recommending additional conservation measures, and that's what we did, what, seven years ago? And that's where encouraged three days a week for outdoor irrigation in the eight-seven. So I don't remember the days, was it Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday in the eight-eight? As I said earlier, we'll return to council in June with a final water supply and demand assessment to see if there's any additional actions at this point. One of the questions, or a couple of questions that have come up, especially from Chief Conception and Jill Childers, Fire Marshal, are we going to need water cops again? And at this point, no, it's going to be encouraging voluntary things. If the drought continues and the state comes out with further regulations, then we may have to go to, quote, "the water cops" again. But our hope is at this point that we don't, and we have environmental compliance inspectors on my staff, they normally do pre-treatment programs, so businesses that have industrial waste permits, stormwater issues, but they will be assisting us in monitoring some of these things. So our recommendation is adopt the subject resolution, which declares the stage-two water shortage response action of our urban water shortage contingency plan and the additional water conservation measures. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Open up for a public comment?
What was this slide where it said no new wells, or maybe the GSA could allow a new well? But who again is the GSA? Is that Vacaville?
That's correct, so within the city limits of Vacaville, we are our own groundwater sustainability agency. We partnered up with four other groundwater sustainability agencies to create an overall groundwater sustainability plan. But the city council is also the governing board of the groundwater sustainability agency.
Okay, so it's not really meaningful, right? I mean, somebody really needs a new well, it'll probably get approved.
And the thing with our GSA is that we are the primary owners of the wells. So because if you're less than two acre feet a year, you're a de minimis user, and it doesn't come into play. So this will apply more to areas like the Solano GSA, which is a lot of the unincorporated area of Solano County, and so that's where there is a Solano GSA board. But if somebody goes to the county to get a well permit, then it appears that they're going to need to tie in with the groundwater sustainability plan to say, yeah, this is going to be okay, and the neighboring person's not going to be hurt by that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Go ahead and close public comment and open up to council, and Councilmember Stockton.
Yes, thank you. Will this action that we're gonna take tonight affect anybody who's got a permit or waiting on a permit to get a pool done? I'm just curious, because I know that it gets hot, you know, people are gonna be filling up their pools, and if we had more community pools, then, you know, maybe less people would need one in their backyard.
At this point, there is no restriction on filling a pool, so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Silva?
Pools are recirculated, too, is that right? So they would be okay? So anything that's recirculated would still be okay under this?
So, yeah, the pools have not been addressed by the.
What about splash pads and misting stations?
So, and that's, if a splash pad is recirculating, then it's not, that's not a problem. If it's not recirculating, then that's something we're gonna have to work through, because there's not a prohibition to irrigate turf for a park, and so an argument could be made that a splash pad could be okay as well, so. But it's more for there's some sort of ornamental fountain, you know, that doesn't recirculate and that they don't want, so. So, yeah, we'll continue working with Parks and Rec and Public Works on the splash pad stuff.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wiley?
I think this is reasonable, and we need to address the issues that we have, and I know Vacaville doesn't have a real big issue because of our water sources, but I really feel like people need to be able to conserve water, and they need to be, maybe have a little persuasion to do it a little bit better than they do. And with that, I move this item forward.
All those in favor? Thank you. Moving on to item 9G.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. This next item before you is a status update on the city's AB 1600 Development Impact Fees Update. We have Gwen Owens for our traffic engineer, and Ms. Erin Morris, our Community Development Director, as well.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. Gwen Owens, Public Works, I will be brief. So we've presented some of this information previously, so I will go quickly through that. So basically, in 2015, we had a general plan update. As part of the general plan update, there was new infrastructure and capital facilities that were needed for additional growth. Additionally, there's general plan goals, policies, and actions that we needed to address. The role of the impact fee is to make sure that future development basically has the appropriate infrastructure and capital projects to actually be able to, for us to be able to incorporate them into our city. A development impact fee is a one-time fee that's charged to new development to mitigate their impacts. It provides funding for public infrastructure and capital facilities to serve new residents. It cannot fund existing deficiencies, it can't fund operational and maintenance costs, and it's a one-time, it's part of a one-time overall infrastructure financing strategy. So basically, for a Nexus study, it needs to be legally defensible and conform to the Mitigation Fee Act. It has to tie its fees to the city and general plan service standards and capital improvement plans. The Nexus study needs to identify the need, the purpose, and a proportionality towards any of its development impact fees. It also needs, what it does is it establishes a maximum justifiable impact fee in accordance with the mitigation impact fee. The city can choose not to enforce the maximum fee, but the purpose of the Nexus is to identify what the maximum fee is. So we've gone through a process that in 1992 is when we first updated or first created our impact fee. We are now updating it for all the services that are identified on the screen. Just want to touch briefly on public outreach. So we had three meetings between city staff and the three engineering firms that do the majority of the work within the city. We put the public draft review of the Nexus study and all of the supporting documents on the city's website on April 20. We did a presentation to the stakeholders on April 26, which was actually recorded. It was, you could either attend in person, or there was a Zoom option. Zoom option was recorded and placed on the website. We've had stakeholders meetings on May 10, May 17, and May 24. There was a request for an additional meeting, which we had on May 16, and we are planning to have one more stakeholders meeting on May 31. Here's a summary of the feedback that we've received from the stakeholders. In the transportation section, there was a desire to have the California Drive overcrossing and the Vacaville extension to be removed from the fee program. It's currently in the general plan, and it was in the previous fee program. Additionally, there was a request to have Midway, that it shouldn't be four lanes with bike lanes, curb, gutter, and sidewalk outside of the city boundaries. There was comments, or several comments about the parks fees, that they are proposed to be triple and should be reduced. Based upon multiple conversations with the engineers and the developers, we are modifying the parks fees because we found out, we discovered that we were overcounting some parks property that we already had in bank, but it was undeveloped. So that the parks fees will be updated, and when we come back on June 16 to present the draft fees once again, that will be revised. The removal of the CBC, which is a community benefit contribution, was favorable to the development community, and the development community also liked, for single-family houses, the different housing size with the appropriate fee associated with that. That was very favorably received. With that, I will turn it over to Erin, who will actually talk about our policy directions and recommendations to staff.
Thank you, Gwen, I appreciate it. Fooled you, it's this Erin, not that Erin. So thank you. As Gwen mentions, the main purpose tonight is to talk about some key policy directions that we need from council on some key items that we've been presenting to you. The first of those is the removal of the community benefit contribution. This was a fee that was adopted in 2004. It was not included in the AB 1600 study, because at the time, there was not enough time to prepare a Nexus study in order to accommodate the new growth that was occurring east of Leisure Town. So the city created this CBC fee, as it's known, or contribution. That work was, or that fee was initially intended to fund Station 75 and the police station, just as some examples. Basically, all the work that was identified to be completed with that contribution element has been completed, so we are recommending that with the exception of the work to be completed in Lagoon Valley, the CBC be eliminated. That means that we need to go and update all those development agreements that projects had to pay that fee. So this would be an action that if council supports the elimination of that fee, and basically the incorporation of any and all facilities now in our new AB 1600, thereby eliminating the need for the CBC. We would need to go back and update the development agreements for those projects, just so that's very clear, okay? And so we're recommending that if council supports that, that we would begin, you know, work within the next 90 days to update those development agreements, so that we could eliminate that portion. Next slide? Okay, the next one is incentives for target projects. As the council is aware, we have a couple of targeted projects in terms of our biotech and advanced manufacturing strategies. We also have heard council very clearly talk about incentivizing missing middle housing and affordable housing. So these are just some of the targeted projects that we believe that would be appropriate to look at incentives. And so, working through economic development staff and our Economic Development Advisory Committee, we are working with them to bring back to the council for your future consideration potential incentives for those targeted industries. And so we will anticipate bringing that to the council or developing that during that 16- to 90-day period that we're also working with the development agreements. Next slide? Fee reduction for infill projects. As we mentioned last time, infill is an area that has just had its infill, it's receiving most of its services, and so the need for new, you know, fully loaded impact fees is really not warranted, and so we're recommending that to be proportionate, as well as to, again, incentivize projects which, in infill areas, two specific infill areas that also have missing middle housing, we believe that it's appropriate to recommend an infill reduction. And we have identified two areas by boundary map, and those are the downtown specific plan and the Ulatas Priority Development Area, and we've included maps of those areas in your packet. Next slide? Impact fee credit and reimbursement. This is something that is a standard practice that goes along with impact fees, you know, if a developer puts in certain improvements that are included in the fee program, then they're eligible for a credit or reimbursement. And so we currently have language in our municipal code, but it needs some fine tuning in order to be consistent with the new updates in our fee program. So we'll bring that back to council as well. Next slide? And then implementation and timing of the proposed fee. So as you can imagine, with the proposed fees that we have, this is gonna be a new element for developers, home builders, and commercial builders to incorporate into their performance. And so we want to make sure that we're cognizant and provide advance notice of these fee changes, so that they can build that into their financing package. So it's not something that we believe that should be implemented immediately following council's action on this. We're thinking somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 to 90 days, but I do believe that, you know, that could also be this, a item of discussion from the stakeholders group in terms of timing. So that's something that we'll revisit, we'll continue to talk with the stakeholders groups about in terms of finalizing an implementation strategy of timing, and we'll bring that back to council as part of the adoption for this item. Last slide, I think, for me? Nope?
So what we're going to do is our next step is to incorporate. We have one meeting. Oh. Sorry. Sorry about that. We're going to finalize the NEXUS study, prepare the appropriate ordinances and resolutions, and we plan to come back. We will be coming back on June 14th for what the revised draft is, and we are planning to come back on June 28th for adoption by city council. With that, questions, comments?
Open up the public comment. Public comment, go ahead and close the public comment. And I'll open up to Councilmember Stockton.
Thank you for the presentation. Glad we're talking about this. I definitely support the fee reduction for infill, so we can get those projects, hopefully encourage people to develop those. The triple park fee, any way that we can incentivize the developers to actually build the parks rather than have to kind of squeeze that in and put that on staff, I would strongly favor, especially when folks are going to buy, buy these houses thinking they're going to get their, push, push their kid in a swing. If the, if the developer builds it, it might actually happen while their kid's still small enough to put into a, to a swing. So if we can incorporate that, that'd be fantastic.
Are you good there, Robert?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yeah, thank you. I, I agree with all the recommendations from staff tonight, and I agree with Councilmember Stockton's comments too about incentivizing developer build. The one comment I do have is, and this is in the BIA letter, and it was also mentioned in the comment in the slide, is the removal of the California Drive overcrossing. This project just came to my attention like maybe three or four months ago. I'd actually like to hear more about that. Alamo Drive is an absolute traffic crazy nightmare with all the cars that are getting off 80 and going basically to Fairfield, all the new housing there. It's just, it's really overcongested. And so I know that California Drive, and I'm not sure if this is even multiple projects, but there was an expressway plan at one point in time, and I know it kind of got sidelined. But I'm hearing from my, my district loud and clear that traffic's a huge problem. And actually, we have my, my town hall this week with consultants talking about walkability and traffic safety and riding bikes. And a huge issue is just the amount of traffic on Alamo and Peabody and the speeds at which they travel. So I, A, don't want that pulled out. I think that should stay. And I think we need to revisit some discussions there. And I think based on some of the work we'll be doing in the district, you know, that might be something we want to consider again because the traffic in that part of town, just, it's just getting really bad with all the cars cutting through either to Net's District or cutting through to Fairfield. And so that would be my only comment is I, I don't want to pull it out. I think at some point in time, we'll need that.
Councilmember Silva?
Thank you. So just to clarify, all the infill projects, that would be anything with, consistent with the zoning? That would apply to anything consistent with zoning, not just housing, but commercial?
Correct. For the PDAs, any project with, within the PDA would have a reduction.
And then, thank you. Agree with the, the other comments, just to echo that, for, for tallying all those up. My other request is anything we can do to address the concerns about vacant lots. So I guess that would be infill, but also vacant properties. Small business owners are really frustrated with vacant properties and the landlords not, or the owners not very open to accommodating the, what the true market value is for that property. And that's something, you know, they, they can't find property to run their business and obviously hire people and reinvest value back into the community. So, thank you.
For me, yeah, I agree with the city's recommendations also, if we've talked about before. I think, yeah, we're definitely moving in the right direction on this. And with that, that's all you need was council guidance and comments?
That is correct. Thank you.
As you mentioned, because it's just about 11:00. Did we need to make a comment if we are?
Yeah, so there is a provision in our municipal code that talks about when we get to this late hour that the council needs to evaluate the, the items on the agenda and make a decision as to whether or not you'd like to continue with some, all, or reschedule those to either a special meeting or your next regularly scheduled meeting to further compound the discussion. We do also have two items on closed session. So you have a variety of options before you tonight. You can continue to push forward and get through as many of these as you like. You can select which ones you'd like to, to hear tonight and push those items to an agreed-upon timeframe. We can continue the closed session, or we can also go into closed session as well. So you have a few options at your discretion right now.
Are the closed session items mandatory tonight?
Do you want to do the ARPA one next?
All right.
Do we need like motion or something?
We're working on it. So I think, so are they mandated? No, but we have, they have been delayed for weeks, if not months now because of the state's Surplus Land Act process. We had been complying with everything that they had asked, and then they would continue to ask for more stuff. So I think the one item in particular, the, the smaller of the two properties is very anxious in, in terms of the extension is, is running out. So there is some time sensitivity there. We can be brief on both of those.
Okay, so I'll just go, item I, so item 9H, the use of ARPA funding, you're. Want to make a motion and continue that?
Motion to table 9H.
Is there a second? All in favor?
If I may, are you looking to do that to the next meeting? Continue it to the next meeting or?
Yes, please.
Oh, yes, next scheduled council meeting. Item 9J, since Park and Rec has patiently waited this entire period, go ahead and let them present on Trower Park.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. As our team comes down to, to address this item. This item is an, an interesting project. It's a new project in terms of process for the city that follows from our Parks and Recreation Master Plan that was recently approved by the city council. This item is being brought back to the council at the request of Councilmember Silva. Our team here is going to give you a quick update on the planned improvements and process, and then we'll turn it back over to Councilmember Silva for additional discussion on next steps.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, council members. I will do my best to be brief, try and run you through some things. A lot of the slides on here are going to just be some, touching on some of the improvements, which we can get into any detail as you wish, and I'll kind of zoom through those and then move to the master plan. So at the request of Councilwoman Silva, the city council is being asked to revisit the planned improvements at Trower Park. My presentation tonight consists of a very brief background and then that run-through that I mentioned of the master plan. Just for those who may not be aware, this is the location, apologies, Markham Avenue. The park actually crosses Markham Avenue and then is at the end of Holly Lane where there is a small parking lot. Just to give you a little background here, Trower Park has come before the council on two separate occasions as part of the Park and Recreation Master Plan approved in April of 2021 and as part of the 2020, 2021, 22 CIP budget process in June of last year, both with a budget of 1.8 million, identified to make some improvements for the park. Staff engaged Wilson Design Group landscape architects to prepare the master plan. And the consultant identified that the scope of work outlined in the Park and Recreation Master Plan and the CIP budget did not align with extensive community outreach data gathered for this park as part of the staff's pursuit of Prop 68 grants funding for this project. We knew it would be a long shot to get some Prop 68 funding for this, for this park, especially considering that there's another park, a new park being proposed for this same area. So the city was successful, and the state did award 6.7 million for the new park on Brown Street. So these are the slides I mentioned that I'm going to go through pretty quickly. So this is just a location, and the titles that you see at top are what would be the new amenity in this location. So currently, here's some outdated riding equipment and swings. This would be a new flat turf area. This is just supposed to represent kind of the path throughout the park, and some new lights and benches on the path would be along that path. A new native plant area, let's see, can you, ooh, apologies, I was trying to use that fancy pointer thing, but I don't know if I can here. Anyway, there's a, there we go. This area right here is where the native pollinator garden would go. And then picnic area is established. There are two current, which is kind of a single picnic bench and barbecue. Those would become covered areas, and then there would be two additional new picnic areas which are covered. This current basketball court would become a combination basketball footstool court. And then to the right, there would be some skate elements installed. And then in this area here is where a new mist or splash pad. This is currently in the budget as an add alternate, which means that for it to be included in the project, the budget would need to be expanded to 2.2 million, 2.4 if we want that to be a recirculating system, which was touched on earlier tonight, the benefits of that. And this would be improving that, increasing the budget would mean that we would not have to sacrifice other potential park amenities to bring this amenity to the project. And here we have the master plan that I just kind of really brief you, briefly ran you through some of the highlights. And at this time, I will turn it over to Councilwoman Silva. I know he has some probably thoughts, questions, and we want to hear them.
Thank you. So there's a lot of, so number one, thank you. I mean, there, this has been like two years in the works as far as getting feedback. And so, and also thank you all for sticking around. So the, so there's some things that I, I really like. And let me first preface that there's, there's going to be some, so when, when this came out to Parks and, Parks and Rec commissioners at the time, there were some revisions going on, small revisions going on for the Brown Street spot. And that includes the possibility, or what I hope is the likelihood and commitment for a splash pad. So in that sense, it, to me, would make, if that goes through, it makes, it would make more sense for that amenity to, to be at that particular location, for the, for the vision of what could, you know, ideally is being, trying to be created there. So, but for here, I think the, the concept and the staff's recommendation for a misty pad would make more sense. I'm not sure how that works within the constraints of water, water restrictions and recirculation. So given with tonight's presentation, I'm, I'm not clear on the recirculation of, of mist, of how you recirculate mist. That said, I'm, I don't want to get too far into certain details, but I think reorganizing some of the, where the location of certain amenities, maybe perhaps relocating the misting pad to be, be, being at what's called a misting garden. I've seen that coined in just some random research that I've done from features in other cities. And that can maybe tie into like the pollinator garden, which is labeled number eight. A lot of kids, so there's, we saw, heard some kids last time that expanded to a bunch more. Our emails got blown up today. Looks like a school assignment. So they, so they're providing different feedback. I think like that seating, that covered seating for nine, that's on that, that sloped hillside, maybe finding a different position up, up north. But I think the, the ultimate thing here, and kind of going along the lines of our vision that's laid out in our master plan for our Parks and Rec, I couldn't, for some reason, I can't get internet. But the, in the vision statement, it says experiences in nature, adventurous play, exercise opportunities, sports, diverse class opportunities, and so forth. So with respect to the purpose and the vision, the vision that we have that's laid out within our master plan, I think some of the comments that were reflected within commissioners' comments, some within the community, was that it's still, it's still, it's missing something to where it can be something that really sets our city apart and in a community, in a neighborhood that in itself is unique and different within our city. And I think if, if our goal, and I've heard it in different ways from the, of my fellow council members, if our goal is to think big, have big visions, and create a, a good, a really good community, a robust community that's kind of on the leading edge of many different things, I think there's relatively small, small, small investments that can have true high value beyond just what, beyond just what, you know, we can, we can lay out or say that we, you know, quote unquote, or criticism that we check the box. This comment I'm going to make next, you know, I hear a lot of comments about, you know, a rising tide raises, raises all boats. The, the problem, one of the problems with that analogy is that if you have boats that are at different depths within those tides and you're raising it, you're always going to have this, this pointed out disparity where people are compared, trying to do a comparison between apples and apples. And the, and I, and I, and I question that. In some cases, it would make sense. In other cases, and in our cases of our parks, I don't think it, it makes sense. So what I, and this message really for the community, rather than looking at it saying, oh, this park has 30 benches, this one, we only have two, which is a comment from my son. Rather than looking at it from that perspective, look at it, what, what's you, something unique that we can create that, again, encompasses and welcomes and, and really incorporates the vision that's laid out in the master plan and something unique that can embrace within the cultural diversity that exists, particularly within this, this existing neighborhood. So the number four, just for everybody to know, like, so there won't be like a soccer field there. It's going to be a flat field. At first, when I saw that, I didn't care for it, but the more I think about it, I, I think it's that area just because of the, the landscape, the divots, you know, there's always been, since, there's always been issues with, with that particular area. I think in many ways, it makes absolute sense just to kind of, so what I'll, I'll just say, cover it up. So, and that also complies with requests from the neighborhood. But for the community to know, and council members, there's talks on the Brown Street spot will have a, a flat field, a large flat field that can accommodate that request. There's another talk that I'm hoping to get some movement on in the coming year or so in collaboration with Supervisor Raskes on a, a, a public, a private partnership on a possible amenity that can, rather than having, similar to the concept of batting cages where you maximize a small amount of space within a, within a small footprint, that same concept be, but be applied to soccer to where you have a different goal set up where kids and families of all ages, they can just practice shooting goals. And then, you know, it's trying to find a way to work that in for that large request for the, from the community in this area. So I think for number four, one of the things, and it's reflecting a lot of the, the emails we got blasted with today and in the past, I think for, for number four, rather than what's the concept of what's being proposed there and what I'm kind of hoping to get maybe a general, a general comment on the cost. So I've heard, and please correct me wherever I'm wrong on this, but I've heard that there's consultants that you can hire, and then their job is to go out and get the donated labor, the donated supplies. And then, and in return, we maximize the amount of contributions that we can make within this particular lot. And that's something that Winners has done within their park, a zip line, I got to throw out there because that came up. Zip line, merry-go-round, something that's safe. I know there's issues with that. Swings came up quite a bit in this feedback. But I'm curious to see if there's a way we can work that into this particular proposal specifically tonight. But in general, another thing that, when we talk about culture, I think, you know, we can work out the color scheme in, in future. But something that came up was Alabrijas. So, so that these mystical creatures, these, these folklore creatures in predominantly Mexican culture, but it's been something adapted where you have, there's these, creating different sculptures that in itself can be strategically placed. That is something that I, I don't, at, at first, I wanted to be incorporated into this, but I think we keep that separate since it involves more of an art component to it all. And that's something that I'm hoping to actually use my district funds to at least kickstart or do some type of matching thing to where we can get some commissioned art that would really embrace the cultural diversity component into this park and help create its own unique theme, along with different lighting, different color schemes. And kind of going back to that one part about commu-, about where the community comes together to build it, that's really what's needed throughout this, throughout, not, not just this neighborhood, this particular. Throughout this, throughout, not just this neighborhood, this particular neighborhood, but throughout the city, more opportunities for us to come together, work together, create something, take pride in that, take, be able to care for it and be able to pass that on, that responsibility, that pride on to the next generations that would come through. So I think there's multiple benefits in that particular aspect that I'm, have high aspirations to work into this particular request here.
All right, so I did hear one specific question about the potential consultant. That's something that staff hasn't had a lot of opportunity to look into, but I did look into a potential grant, kaboom grant. I'm not sure if any of you are familiar. This is something that is very similar to what you're talking about in terms of kind of community fundraising and then it matches it with $15,000. And so that's something that could potentially help supplement. It really is focused on playground, but maybe that frees up some funding for other areas.
So in, so within this, so I guess, so in this, so what would it, how much would it cost, how much would additional cost be to work in something that had more play structures? Because when, when, like if you, like for a lot of folks, when they sit there and they immerse themselves in this environment, other than the misting station, the natural play area, sorry, skipped the whole thing, the natural play area. I've seen wonderful examples of that, that allows kids to tap into the park core concept where they can climb, hop logs and do whatever. Have that creative, innovative element. I think that's something that I think if you tie in the nature and the cultural component over time would be pretty awesome. But I guess if we were to pay for the full amount, how much would something like that be? Not to the scale of what Andrew's park is, not to the scale of what Winters, their park is, but.
Yeah.
Good evening, council members. So I'm going to chime in just because prior to becoming a park planner, I was a landscape architect, so I've got a little bit more experience in development than Mel here. The way the cost estimates typically work is they are generated using historical data. So the more projects that you work on, you build a sort of inventory of projects that you've worked with, contractors, relationships. And so what we're finding in the last couple of years is that is not sort of proving to be true. As these projects come to fruition, the costs are escalating substantially. And so when you're working on a master plan and then as it proceeds into design development, where you're selecting the features and then construction documents, the cost estimates become more accurate with the additional detail that's added to the plans. So we, the outreach or, or the phone calls that the consultant has made to vendors, he's gotten some general numbers, so we, we feel relatively comfortable that the numbers that we're providing are accurate. What we don't know is whether those vendors will have those same prices in six months, because what we're finding is that they're updating their costs on a regular basis. And so six months from now, it ends up being another 7%. And then a year from now, when this is actually constructed, once the construction documents are approved by the city, it goes out to bid, that's a few months. You know, an award is, a contract is awarded, it's possible that that particular cost is substantially more than what we're sort of allocating for at a master plan level. So that's the only thing that I would keep in mind, and there is a contingency built in that's consistent with what Tim Burke has sort of directed us to provide. But it's difficult to give you an accurate cost and it's going to be, it takes some sort of back and forth, sort of working through the process to come up with really accurate numbers.
I'll just add that the consultant is prepared to really kind of look into that nature theme and some of the things that we've discussed and some of the offline meetings. And, and that will come into the, in the design development phase of the project, which is where we will move to next after this. And so that's something that we can get into, all those little fun amenities and different changes. Right now, there is approximately 200,000 allocated for the new natural play area. And so that's, can be spent on, you know, making that a themed natural play area. They could kind of touch on some of those things. Is that what you're looking for?
I think, I mean, just look, so I don't know how, so it's going back to the other picture of the flat, the top area. So I question. So yeah, so that right there, so that would be all leveled and filled with grass. So I guess my proposal and what I'm seeking is rather than fill that with grass, which one requires more water, let's go ahead and flatten it. But let's fill it up with the wood chips and actually make that, that particular area that has a lot, fill it up with different amenities that's coming from the kids. The request that is coming from the kids.
We can definitely look into it. I will just share that this area was identified for the flat turf because it is already flat. As you know, Trower Park is sloped. And then the area where the current natural play area is proposed, the idea was that we would use that natural existing slope to help guide any slides or things of that nature. So kind of, and then have a cost savings of not having to flatten that area.
Yeah, and I think, so like, and that's why I think the natural, the natural playground structures, I think, will fit really well within the, will fit as better than I think many other parks in this particular, in this particular park. I guess I'm still stuck on, because to me it sounds that's going to cost additional funds in order to meet that request, to be able to make number four on the bottom right more robust.
It would just take away opportunity to use that existing flat space for the flat turf, but you're saying eliminate the flat turf?
No, it's already flat, right? So rather than making it grass, we make it a large area that allows for more of the natural play area. Preferably something, just more play structures, something that includes the zip line, something that includes the merry-go-round, if it's safe.
Public comment?
Felt like I just wanted to join the conversation. This is my park. I, I have a lot of the same concerns that Michael does, but I remain adamantly opposed to the skate thing. I just don't think the skate thing is something that belongs on a neighborhood park, especially since our neighborhood park is very small. It's four acres, very small, and there are apartments directly behind where they want to put that skate park. I would hate to live in that apartment and listen to the noise that's created by skaters going back and forth. Or if somebody has a baby, or if somebody has to sleep during the day, they're not going to be able to, especially in this heat, if they have their windows open, not going to happen. I'm concerned about that. I mean, I remember that we, we had a few meetings and a lot of people wanted flat space, they wanted soccer. But a lot of people wanted toys too, they wanted updated toys. Those toys that you just had in that picture are so old. People wanted updated toys for their kids. And what happened to that? I'm not, I'm not sure about that. I, you know, I kind of don't care whether we have soccer or don't, but I do care that people have good fun toys for small kids. I mean, that's what a neighborhood park is for to me. And I don't have kids, I just want to support that. The other thing is that we talked about in one of the early meetings with a lady from Sustainable Solano about things like natural ecosystems, rain gardens, non-invasive and drought tolerant plants throughout the park. Not just, I like the pollinator garden, but it's like, okay, so we're going to put everything in the middle and there's just going to be grass and block top in the rest of the park, you know? I mean, our vision was to make it pretty and make it enjoyable for everybody. So can we have some of those things that we talked about throughout the park, spread out in places? And I liked, I liked your idea, you know, I don't know what you're talking about, about the mystical creatures, but it sounded like a unique thing. I'd like to know more about it. I like the misting pad, kind of glad you went for the splash pad from Brown Street instead. If we can even have one, I'm not convinced we're really going to have water ever again, like we're used to. So we'll see, but it'd be nice to have at least a misting pad for kids. That's it.
Thank you. I might go ahead and close public comment and open it up to Councilmember Stockton.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I, I have, I think, the west side of Markham Avenue in my district, and so I could see a lot of people using this park. You know, if we're going to do it, do something here though, it really does seem like the majority of the play area is on a super sloped area. And I just don't think you get around that. I think it has to be leveled. If you're going to do something that's going to benefit the people that are there, that's what's going to allow them to kick a ball or throw, you know, play baseball or something like that. To me, that would be important because it just really makes the whole space more usable. That being said, I, I am interested in seeing kind of how these parks can maybe connect to Centennial through Rocky Trail, Rocky Hill Trail. I think that there should be a clear connection, right? If we're trying to connect the community and we're trying to kind of maybe share amenities and access to amenities, I think that could be a key component of really making this a successful little neighborhood, little park. Almost like an experience of just walking through and seeing some of the art on the trail and, you know, Michael's, Michael's ideas for kind of giving this a unique stamp for the neighborhood. I think that would be good too. I know there's a lot that we plan on doing with Measure M. Is that where the money would come from?
Correct.
Okay, so I would almost like to see some of this stuff be included in that discussion with, if we have this three by three. Because I do think that the public is expecting us to really put some money into the quality of life. Sorry, bug, into the parks because it affects our quality of life. And this is, these are places where they can congregate and they can go easily after work and spend time with their children. So I like what you've come up with, but I think we're kind of selling it short, to be honest with you, Michael, to not address the big humongous elephant in the room, which is a hill, right? And then if you, if you level that, there could also be some mitigation that might even make it safer for the kids so that if vehicles are traveling, you know, you get a lot of vehicles that travel on Markham Avenue there. We might be able to put some stuff there that might add some, some protection for them as well in case somebody is going too fast or something like that. So those are my comments.
Open up to Councilmember Sullivan.
I think the confusing part about this process, or the part that confused me during the Parks and Rec meeting was there was a lot of talk about the scope and desire of the project, but also the budget. And, you know, the grant didn't come through, so the budget was technically reduced. And there was a comment that someone made something along the lines of, well, the budget that was set, you know, that exceeds it. But there was never really a budget set from, from council's vantage point. We had three options that were kind of thrown out for a couple of million bucks each. And I don't think there was a lot of robust discussion or kind of depth to that discussion at the council level. So what I think is really needed, I mean, honestly, like, we could go to the details all day long, it's Mike's district, it's his park. I, not that I don't care, but I feel like it's inappropriate for me to go through and tell you about the color of the bark and the, but what I do want to know is like, what is the economy version of this park budget? What is the standard version of the park budget? Like, what is the Cadillac version? With the features that we're talking about, including the Sprinter, Mister, whatever we call it. So, so we can as a council make a decision where we're going to shift other measure of funding from or not. Because, you know, this goes back to the discussion we had during strategic planning session. This neighborhood has been under-resourced for a million years. I believe they deserve better. I believe they deserve a great park. And I'm willing to cut and sacrifice other areas, but I don't even know what that's, what that number would be. So I think to even move this discussion forward, we need to know, like, what, you mentioned the construction costs seven months from now could be double. Okay, well, let's build in a 30 or 40% contingency or whatever, and unfortunately, that's, you know, the environment we're in right now. But I think that's where we need to push this discussion forward and really kind of move. Kerry gave me some great data today. This park has, it's not the highest, it's the second highest out of all neighborhood parks in terms of users per square acre. So there are more little kids' feet or butts on benches or kids trying to use this playground based on the density of the neighborhood than any other park in Vacaville. And I think they deserve some love, but to give them some love, we have to know, like, what, what does that even look like a cost? And that's the area that I think we're missing from the discussion. So I don't know where Mike wants to go with this tonight, but like, I want to hear, like, what's it going to cost? So we can make some decisions, just shuffle some stuff around and then actually kick this thing off is kind of where I'm at. So anyways, those are my thoughts. Thank you for the presentation.
I have a quick comment. I could, Councilmember Sullivan just said, yeah, it's two different, like, real scopes, so like, how you want to do this for schools of thought. You could either build a specified budget or build a vision, and if it's kind of high, then that's where you come back to council and say, hey, do you want to spend this much money on a park? And let us be the bad guy and say yes or no, and not leave it up to you guys. So yeah, there's, if you build a park or design a park that you like, if it's a little costly, bring it to us and let us tell you no or let us give you a window of money to work with for it and try to make what works best. But yeah, you don't have to be the bad guy and tell him you can't have something, you can leave it up to the panel and he can be mad at us, so. So I had, yeah, the comment, Mike?
So, here we go. I think, so my concern is that we push stuff off, we don't get things done. So that's always like, you know, some type of balance that I think we always have to weigh. I 100% appreciate council's support for 1.8 million. It's crazy that, what that gets you these days on this line of work. So what I'm, what I would like to make a motion for is to request the additional Measure M funds to the total amount of 2.5 million that would include a recirculation water feature. I would embrace the natural playground structure. Those structures on the bottom of the hill, relocate those to number four. However, we gotta move, rearrange all that. That includes the zip line and the natural park playground element theme. And depending, the first thing, if anything gets crossed off is the skate park, number two. I do question if this is appropriate place for that. That's what my motion is, just to add a comment. I think these other elements can be things that we continue to adapt and kind of piece in. But I'm thinking, I think that's a reasonable approach. The original request from the state was three, what, 3.6?
3.5.
Oh, 3.5.
Inflation.
But the original question is 3.5, 2.5 gets us a little bit closer to creating something pretty cool. And then the culture element, any staff, any help staff can help out with as far as soliciting structures, you know, statues and whatnot that are, that are unique, different, colorful, would be really key. And then we'll talk about the details later. That's, that's my motion.
Mr. Vice Mayor, so just to, just to jump in here real quickly. So thank you for the robust conversation. Tonight is limited to just discussion, so if there, so not to throw out the motion, but I think if there's support for the concept of what Councilmember Silva identified, then that can be made in the motion to say that I'd like to see that package brought back, excuse me, for consideration by this council to receive supplemental funding. And we can bring that back at the, at a next meeting.
I like the motion to bring that back for future consideration, for future meeting. I'll second. Councilmember Wiley had a comment?
Just one question, did this include any of your district dollars or are you asking for this?
It's just over and above your district dollars.
This is Measure M. This is Measure M.
Total.
Yeah, this is Measure M, in my opinion, what Measure M is supposed to go for, to help our community, it's Measure M. The district dollars, I'm happy to support, looking into cultural art, some type of art, some type of public art component to get that kickstarted.
And so this is also in addition to the money that was originally said for the district parks when we were going to do one in each park, right? So there was some money set there, but they couldn't do much with it. So then we need an additional 2.5 whatever.
A total of 2.5.
Total of 2.5.
It would be increasing from 1.8 to 2.5.
And we're just discussing it. And we're just discussing it. It's not a motion. So, I agree, too. It was literally nice to have, let's look at, here's this plan or this plan so we can see, here's where we're going. Here's the one at this point with the contingency built in because you know if you plan it for that, it's gonna cost, you know, 30% more than that. So, you have to not plan it for that.
And if I could just get a point of clarification for, I heard what you said about Area Four and kind of bringing the play elements into there, kind of that natural play, the zipline. But then, and just to clarify, then the expectation is to put in the flat turf in one of the current hillside areas?
I think the cost to flatten that slope is gonna be pretty big. And I'm not sure. Yeah, you could, yeah.
Show like, kind of community come together.
No, no. No. No.
The church site? The hillside, actually, residents actually like. I mean, a lot of people, they're asking for a flat field because they want to play soccer. There's no way for them to access a flat field to play soccer. Markham Elementary School used to be that, but we fenced it off because of the tragedies that unfortunately keep happening. We have Centennial, but that's literally chained off if you're not, if you don't have access to it. And I, even as a one-time soccer coach, still didn't have access for my team to practice on those fields. That's why they're asking for a flat field. So, we're looking into, there's other talks going on to try to find other ways to accommodate that request.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes, thank you, and thank you for your comments. I just want to make sure, I guess with Aaron and the council, we've talked a lot about a Measure M three by three. Is this what it's gonna come to for, I mean, am I gonna make a motion at the end of the meeting whether we're gonna add more lights at Centennial or more amenities at another park? Or are we going to look at things collectively and make a decision as a group? Or are we doing this like onesie-twosie? I just need to know so that I can be prepared for the next meeting.
So, as far as this type of level of park improvements, being the subject of the three by, the proposed three by three, I would suggest that it not be included in that. The three by three was originally identified to address larger funded projects that were over 25 million or so, okay? Admittedly, this type of improvement project was identified in the Parks and Rec Master Plan. The budget was in part of that. So, these improvements, as well as the cost estimates, were reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Commission and reviewed by the city council. I understand the council's comments to have more input on that, and we can absolutely bring that back for greater conversation in terms of equity at the neighborhood park level. But the three by three was really intended to be for the community park and the regional park improvements, not this level of park improvement.
Okay, and I guess what concerns me is that we don't know what, did you say six or seven million dollar park or grant for another park on Brown Street, correct?
6.7 million was awarded by the state.
Right, different funding source, totally get that. But, I mean, I don't know what that looks like. And then I don't know what Rocky Hill Trail is gonna look like when it majestically goes over Bennett Hill into Centennial. So, I guess I'm just trying to get the lay of the land here so that way, because all of us want to do, I mean, I agree. I love this idea. I love what they've put together. I just want to know because all of our constituents are gonna be fighting for these funds if this is the way that we're going about it.
So, this is why I've delayed the three by three conversation. Because council has introduced the concept of revisiting neighborhood park improvements, whether they're minor or major revisions to existing park facilities. And I think it's a worthwhile conversation. Because if the council decides, and I'm just gonna, you know, as an idea, if the council decides that it's more important to reinvest Measure M money in bringing up the level of improvements to our existing neighborhood parks to a certain level, that could easily take the majority of your Measure M balance that was intended to be part of the three by three conversation. So, before I, and that's what I said at a prior meeting, before we had that, we send this three by three group off to talk about spending money that this collective council hasn't taken a formal position on yet, I think is premature. So, I think because of the hour given tonight, what I would encourage that we do is, is that, you know, we address the direction that's provided here tonight for this particular park. We have a great opportunity to build upon the successful approval of the Parks and Rec Master Plan, bring back to the council, you know, some discussions about the process, and then have, you know, a focused conversation about Trower, and then talk more about, you know, the whole equity across your neighborhood park program. And then, once council comes up with the, you know, collective decision about that, then it would be appropriate to have the conversation about the potential formation of the three by three to talk about community and regional parks.
Can I address, I just want to, so, I think everybody knows, like, I'm very passionate about certain areas. Has nothing to do, well, I can't say that. Again, I did grow up in this area. A lot of people know that. This, I'm passionate about it because I see, there's folks throughout the city that are worth it. And I don't think anybody here is saying nobody's worth the investment. What, the feedback that I have from always trying to look at things from different perspectives ties into another agenda item that unfortunately, however, we're gonna look at it, got pushed off to next meeting. And in that, I think it'll help lay out what is the bigger vision, and not just from my perspective of collecting the feedback and filtering it, but from a third party's perspective of what is reasonable, what is doable, what is, what can we actually achieve within this timeline? And that's what a neighborhood plan for this particular area can be in finding ways, exactly to your point, Councilmember Stockton, of how do we interconnect our communities to where we benefit? And I think we all shared and realized the benefits to that as we can continue to move towards that, so.
And my questions are not that I did... Right, it's procedurally, right? Is making sure that we're being good stewards with the taxpayers' money, that we're considering everything? I mean, because we got multiple projects that are happening pretty fast, I would say, in that location. I think it's good. I think it's needed. But I also think, for me, you know, and I'm only speaking for myself, that it wouldn't be, I don't want to make a rushed judgment, right? I don't even know what the 2.8 million dollars will get you, right? And if that's gonna even make the impact that we're hoping to have with renovating this park. That being said, if we can look at, you know, the plan for this other park and see what amenities are there, and we can look at it kind of like a 3,000-foot scope or, you know, just see a bigger picture of the Google map of what it's gonna look like and what amenities are gonna be where. I think it would be easier for me to make a more informed decision about what we're seeing here and whether that's the best use of that money. Or, and then procedurally, I would want to know, okay, you know, clearly, if we make spontaneous decisions, not saying they're not needed or good decisions, but sponta, I mean, it's pretty fast, is that going to eliminate opportunities where, you know, because like, I see Centennial as kind of the heart of connecting seriously, you know, our districts together and all of, bringing all of our community together for a variety of different amenities. And that's not to say that these neighborhood parks are not important because they are. They clearly are, and I love that you want to have the identity in there. But I also recognize that it's probably gonna cost 75 to 80 million dollars to finish Centennial Park, to get those beautiful walking trails where kids can look at, you know, 56 different species of birds and monarch butterflies and, you know, all of these amazing things that really connect our communities. And so, I want to weigh all of that. It's not that I don't want to do this. It's just that I want to weigh everything because I think if we can focus more on some of these community, communal areas where bring everybody together, right, then that's accomplishing our kids playing together, growing up together and doing things together. You know, we were just at a Little League thing the other day. And we got to see, what, 800 to 1,000 people in one spot enjoying Centennial Park? And I just want to make sure it all connects, and I want to make sure that we're doing a good job. So, that's it.
So, I'm gonna, just last comment. So, Disneyland, right, I don't think is the happiest place on earth, but a lot of people do, right? Happiest place on earth, and in there it has, you have your different, what are they called? Like, different lands or whatever, right? So, I don't know where they're, so you have these different lands that are in there. So, each of them have its own unique identity, and each of them have, again, it's not comparing apples to apples. It's apple to oranges. And in that sense, they found a way to interconnect that entire community or that entire experience to where people go to and invest in. And that, in my opinion, should be our efforts on how we invest, particularly Measure M funds and whatever additional grants that we can have, to make these unique centers that allow for people, not just within our city, but throughout the region, to be able to visit Vacaville and to find ways to build wealth, particularly within areas that statistically have a much higher concentration of a quote-unquote marginalized community. And in that, we create a unique market that allows folks to invest, that allows people to come out of poverty, allows people to start their small businesses. And we create our own, you know, now this name is gonna stick forever, but we create, in essence, like that concept of a Disneyland or a theme park. But in itself, we have all these unique things. And I think in many ways, it can tie in to what Centennial Park has great potential to provide our city and the region, as well as these different neighborhood little gyms that will create throughout the city.
So, Councilmember Ritchie made a motion earlier before all this. To follow city manager's guidance.
Okay, so, just to recap, just to recap, given the late hour, based on Councilmember Silva's suggestion for the modifications, which I believe our Parks Team has identified, we'll bring that back with the discussion for incorporating other amenities and suggestions by Councilmember Silva to the point of 2.5 or 2.8 million for council's discussion and consideration for additional, allocating additional Measure M funds to that particular park. I think we can bring that back sooner than later. I do think it's worthy, after listening to the dialogue tonight, that we do need to bring back to council a Parks Planning 101 discussion for you all. I think, you know, we've had that conversation with our Parks and Rec Commission. I think it's, will be a valuable discussion with this council because of, you know, all the different thoughts that are being thrown out. And I think that that would help give us some clarity on what you're looking for throughout that process. And how do we use your desires to help complement what the Parks and Recreation Commission is there intended to do as well? So, we'll plan on doing that, and then that will help lead into that bigger conversation about how do we treat neighborhood parks versus community and regional parks as well? So, if that's acceptable, we'll make that happen.
And then, special request, can, when are the Brown Street community feedback sessions expected to kind of roll out?
Are we talking about a different item now? Can we ask a favor? Can we close, get a second on that motion and wrap that one up?
All those in favor?
Okay.
For item 9K, no, that's gonna be a discussion, so would somebody like to motion to continue that to the next council meeting?
I motion that we continue that item to the next meeting.
Second. All those in favor? Item 10, reports to city manager.
I'll make it very, very quick. Sticking in that neighborhood, on June 9th, we will be unveiling the Rocky Hill Trail Art Project. Stay tuned for press release on specific details for that event. And thank you for everyone's contribution to that. That's all I have for tonight.
Item 11, reports to city council. Councilmember Silva?
So, any, do we have a projected time to roll out community feedback based on the Brown Street proposal?
Again, are we talking about the new park project? Are we talking about...
The Brown Street development.
With the one that got the grant, the 6.5 million?
Yeah, no, that's something that staff is still working on, a projected process for that. We'll try to bring that back to you at your next meeting.
Okay. And then, just general comments, I know it's graduation week. So, congratulations to all the 12th grade and 12th grade plus graduates from Vacaville. Go on and do great things. Make sure you go out and experience life, and please come back and make our community better.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes, thank you. I'll be brief. I wanted to thank everyone who came to my first town hall meeting out at Centennial Park. Michael and Greg, you both showed up. Thank you very much. I appreciated it. Thought it was exciting to talk about all these parks. I'm excited about the parks, too. Ready to get moving on the park stuff. I also received a plethora of emails regarding one of our citizens here in Vacaville, that Mark Rippe, who is at risk. You know, I would implore, you know, Chief Schmutsler and staff, if there is anything that we can do to advocate as a unified city council for better care for Mr. Rippe or people who are in similar predicaments as he is. I do believe he's being left behind. He's kind of just left to wander around with no one to really help him or provide him with the help that he needs. So, I just wanted to let, I don't know if they're gonna watch this long meeting, but certainly I'll follow up with an email. No, if there is a way that we can help, you know, the most vulnerable of our community, I think that we should. And so, if there's a way that we can advocate on his behalf with the, with some of our state legislators or, you know, even higher, if we have to, please let me know. If police and fire need help or if there's things that we can do within our authority to help folks in similar situations, please let the council know. We want to know how we can help those individuals and not just leave them there to, you know, get hurt by others or in their situation. So, thank you.
Councilmember Wiley?
I just want to say I encourage all the residents of Vacaville to participate in fests today's this weekend and to spend time on Monday at many of the Memorial Day services that are throughout the district.
With that, are we continuing to close session? Was that the...
If you can manage your way through it, we'll be brief, but it is important that we get to those items if we can. We can take a quick break to get set up.
And there will be nothing to report out.
All right, so we're gonna go ahead and adjourn, open session. We're gonna continue to close session. Good night.